I'll call this meeting to order for February 6, 2018 of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 9, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call your first item.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 44. For item 5, you are reintroducing an ordinance adding Chapter 2.28 to Title II of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Veterans Advisory Commission, waiving full reading of the ordinance and continuing to February 27 for adoption. For item 6, you are adopting an ordinance amending various sections of the Sacramento County Code authorizing the Department of Personnel Services to process a salary resolution amendment and delegating contracting authority. And you waived reading on that on January 23. You're also adopting an ordinance for item 11 to revise Section 2.61059, Chapter 2.61 to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Sacramento County Code relating to the award of construction contracts in excess of $100,000 and less than $5 million. You waived reading and continued this on January 9. You are also continuing to February 27, item 26, and I'll need to have a motion on that, authorize the execution of a First Amendment to the agreement with Pride Industries for debris removal at the American River Parkway. And that concludes my notes for your consent matters. And so for item 26, we'll need a motion to continue.
Second, please vote. Oh, sorry, were there any questions?
I'd like to speak on that one.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Sikki.
Thank you. You know, I don't have any problem with continuing it, but I just want to, you know, voice my support for item 26, should we hear it later. Pride Industries has done a great job. They've been a great partner, and, you know, you could even put it in the category of our homeless programs, as far as the work they do to keep people employed that otherwise don't have an opportunity to be employed. And so I want to say that while I support continuing this, I also wholeheartedly support going forward in the future with this contract.
As do I. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, does anyone have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Ms. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. I'd like to speak to a couple items if I could. First, to item 6, we received correspondence from, he was here at our desk this morning, or...
We have a speaker on that, so I was planning to pull it off anyway.
That's fine, okay, good, all right. Then, item 11, we introduced this in January. I just wanted to note for the record that, having thought about this, I did talk with, in my briefing yesterday, the county executive. And I understand the, well, maybe have you call Adam first, we would, we'll leave it on a consent, but I want to make a comment.
Item 11, you're adopting an ordinance to revise Section 2.61, Chapter 2.61 to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Sacramento County Code.
And I know we introduced this last month, and it's before us today, for the adoption of the ordinance. I did express some concerns after having thought about some more, that, I know this is for reasons for efficiency, and it has certain parameters to it, and that as a part of this, that if staff were to reject bids, they would notice aboard the next agenda, but there could be gaps in that, and it was, basically, it's a done deal once that's had, has been done. You know, it's one thing to delegate the contracting authority, but to reject bids, and there are actually, there's an item on today's agenda, and I know it may add a bit of time, but I think this board should know and should have a public discussion about that, and so I don't intend to support item 11. I think that, for the reasons for efficiency, I think we compromise the ability for this board to have conversations about what the marketplace may be showing, or why a certain project didn't fit. We get that information, basically, after the fact, and I think we ought to retain that authority and that discussion for board items. Recognize that may add a bit of time, but I think it's important to do that, so I wanted to point that on item 11. And then, if I could, if we could just go to one more item, item 18, question?
Do you have speakers on that item as well?
Oh, you have speakers on that one, too? Okay, then I'll hold my questions till we get speakers. Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, so, anyone on this side? Mr. Serna?
Yes, thank you. Just want to make a few comments relative to item 22.
Item 22, delegate authority to the deputy county executive for public works and infrastructure to approve and execute a Second Amendment to agreement with College Oak Towing for vehicle abatement services, and approve appropriation adjustment in the amount of $100,000.
Thank you. I think, as many are aware, especially Mr. Chamberlain, who I see in chambers here, know from, comments from all five of us, that the issue of abandoned RVs in particular in all of our districts continues to be a growing problem, and comes at great expense in mediating the vehicles due to the fact that there's toxics and other unique challenges associated with RVs. So with this action today, I guess what I'm asking our CEO or other appropriate staff to maybe shed a little light on, because it's not clear from the board letter, is what will this do to assist us specifically on abandoned RVs?
Supervisor Serna, what this will allow us to do is to continue to remove, tow and remove the RVs that are abandoned in the public right-of-way through the balance of this year. So it'll just continue to provide support to the program that we've had in place for the past year, year and a half. Essentially, it takes us until, through the summer on this contract, and then we'll be going out for another RFP for subsequent services for both boats and RV towing for future years, so.
What, so what, thank you for that explanation, but what can we expect to see in terms of a difference in response in the next few months?
I'm not sure that I can tell you that.
The reason I'm pressing is just, as many know, I do a lot of 3-1-1-ing, others do as well, and it's just, it's become an incredibly frustrating situation for many of the neighborhoods across the county, and it doesn't seem to be abating at all. So I'd like Mr. Chamberlain to speak to that.
Barry Chamberlain, Chief of Code Enforcement, Sacramento County. It's, as far as our process goes, Supervisor Serna, it continues, we try to get rid of them as quick as we can. We have a process, also working with the sheriff to also have a contract, which they have greater authority to remove immediately. So I'm working with the sheriff to help assist them in getting a contract, but as far as our services go, we're trying to expand. With our new contract, we're going to hopefully get more than one contractor. We're also looking to assist with issues with boats on the right-of-way that don't have trailers, because at this point, if they have trailers, we tow them, if they don't, it's, there's, we're working with Waste Management to control those. That'll all be included in our new contract, but hopefully, we hope to get more than one contractor so we can have a quicker response.
Well, the next opportunity we have to consider how much we appropriate for this specific purpose B in June?
That is correct, but if we, Barry and Mike, think that we need more appropriation during the fiscal year, that option's also available to us.
Okay, I think what I'd like to see, maybe as we get closer to our budget deliberations, is a report back, at least on how today's action actually materialized as additional, whether or not it had additional impact, and some of the details around that, where, how many vehicles, and, you know, maybe treat it as a preface to our conversation about whether or not we need to have a conversation about increasing the budget specifically for RV, abandoned RV, RVs and boats in our budget conversations.
Supervisor Serna, I have stats for you today, if you'd like to know what we've done so far in this existing contract. We've towed 74 RVs, 20 boats and boat trailers, 14 utility trailers, and six oversized vehicles.
Do you have the numbers of complaints versus the ones that we've actually abated?
No, I don't.
That's the kind of detail I'd like to see.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. Just quickly, to the point here, I know I asked in briefing yesterday, that I'm a little skeptical that this is going to be sufficient funding. We're only six months and now almost seven months into the year, and I assume, since the staff report's been prepared, that we probably, at 99% of budget, we're only adding 50% more, and we've got five months in the year remaining. And so if I do the math and I think about that, it doesn't seem to pencil out. I know you have the ability, as you said, now, to come back, you know, although it took a while to get here, we knew we were running into this issue, and so I want to be sure that as we budget, one, for next year, but secondly, that if in two months, we got a major cleanup going on and we're, you know, we're out of money, I know you'll bring this back to us, but I just, well, obviously, the magnitude of the problem is greater than our ability to, at least with what we budgeted amount, to keep up with it. If we get a little competition in the marketplace, maybe that cost comes down, but at $1,800 a tow, I guess that's an average, some of those cost more or something less, because I imagine, you know, depending upon the nature of the vehicle and what the disposal costs are, that there's a fluctuation, but on average, it's $1,800. It doesn't take very long to blow through, you know, $50,000 or $100,000, so.
Well, this will put us at about $300,000 for the total.
Total, right, but you've already gone through $200,000.
Supervisor, one of the things is that we've been in that contract now, we're coming to the end of the second year, so.
It's a two-year, oh, it's a two-year.
Yeah, so the cost that you're seeing, that's what I was noting, that you're balancing it over a different duration. So we do believe we have enough to get to the end of this fiscal year.
That helps, that didn't come out in briefings. Okay, thank you very much, thanks.
I would just say, I'm really glad to see you doing this, because we've been complaining for a couple years about the RVs and boats that are left on the streets, and evidently, the people that dispose of these vehicles want a lot more money, because they're in worse shape, and the materials that they strip out of them aren't worth as much, plus the waste, human waste that's left in them makes a very difficult and expensive procedure to take them apart. So this is great, glad you're doing it.
Anything else?
Any other comments for Barry? Okay. Any other comments for the consent items? Okay, so we'll take a motion for everything but items 6, 18, and 19.
So move.
And Mr. Natoli's voting no on?
11.
On item 11. Do we have a motion? Mr. Second? Chair will second, please vote. Okay, Ida, would you read item 6, please?
Sure. Adopting an ordinance amending various sections of the Sacramento County Code authorizing the Department of Personnel Services to process a salary resolution amendment and delegating contracting authority.
Mr. Lake, are you going to discuss this? Or do we, I guess we'll hear from the speaker, that's Jason Jasme, Jasmine?
Good morning, Chair Peters and members of the board. My name is Jason Jasmine, and on behalf of the Sacramento County Management Association and hundreds of county managers represented by Schema, we feel obliged to speak out regarding the county's best interests, not merely the personal interests of Schema's represented employees. Thus, Schema is opposed to the proposed split of the Department of Health and Human Services, not only because of the potential adverse impact on employees represented by Schema, but because of the likely adverse impact on the line staff, but most importantly, the likely reduction in services to the community members who are supposed to be served by Sacramento County Social Services. First, we'll say Schema is uncertain of the potential adverse impacts on it and its members, because the meet confer process has been an awkward one. Let's be clear, labor relations has appropriately met and conferred regarding the intent to reorganize, but just how the reorganization will be accomplished has been a moving target. And in fact, even at our very last meeting, there were changes in the nature of the proposal itself. So we have not yet had the opportunity to even discuss any of the details about how the reorganization would actually be implemented. At no point during the meet and confer process was the county ever able to explain the urgency with which this proposed reorganization is being moved forward, or why it had to move forward before we know how it will actually work. In addition, and perhaps more importantly, to Schema's knowledge, the proposal has not been presented or explained to community stakeholders in any meaningful way. No community outreach has occurred. If it had, there likely would have been more public comment in response to this item, both when it first appeared on the January 23 agenda and today. We echo the comments of Dr. Troche from the initial reading on January 23. The title of the item is incredibly misleading, and in fact, even though I've been involved with this process for months, I couldn't find it on the agenda until I went and opened up the attached documents, because the title makes no sense in relation to what we're doing, so we don't believe that's proper public notice. Also, there is little or no evidence that the splitting of DHHS will result in increased efficiency in delivery of services to the community, certainly not to the extent to justify the increased cost of over half a million dollars annually. Given DHHS's very tight budget and the vulnerable population that it serves, Schema believes that this half a million dollars annually could be spent much more usefully than to fund three new upper management level positions. Many of our members have been told that as a result of this organization, reorganization, they're going to have to do more with less. We're rushing forward with a reorganization that's going to cost over half a million dollars annually, yet the result is they're being told they're going to have fewer resources and have to do more work with less resources. This is counterintuitive. Thus, we believe that this proposed reorganization is likely to reduce rather than increase cooperation among the various DHHS programs, such cooperation that is vital to serving the population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Natoli?
Yeah, Jason, before you leave, could I just ask you, I was going to ask about this in light of your correspondence that was at our desk this morning, but, so, who was told they were going to do more with less? I'm curious about that particular...
We've had a number of individuals, again, we represent managers, and so, for example, we've had, the one where it's come up the most has been in correctional health. We have heard multiple times that in correctional health, there's going to be new duties that are going to be tasked to our members specifically, and less staff to accomplish those new duties.
So if you haven't had details of the reorganization, how has that come out in the conversation as relates to what's being proposed here? Because you said there wasn't enough, on one hand, you're saying you were told, that's what I'm trying to...
No, and that's precisely the problem, is the individuals that we represent are coming back to us and telling us that their supervisors are telling them that as a result of this reorganization, here's what's going to happen. That's not what we're reading, that's not what we've been presented with at the bargaining table, that's not any information that I've been formally provided by anyone with the county, but it's the people who are tasked with the reorganization are being told that's what's in fact going to happen once the reorganization goes forward. And that's concerning to us, that our members that we're representing are hearing this and we're not.
If I could, just, if I could just ask, so who's been the messenger at the table? Has it been you, Paul, has it been Nancy, who's been, and again, what sort of outreach? I know we met with, under meet and confer, met those obligations that's been stated here, and we already understood that, but, so, who's been the messenger on this? So this...
The departments have been the messengers in talking, the departments, the various departments, so in terms of correctional health, Mr. Brewer would be communicating with his staff. We would also have, Sherry Heller's staff would be updating folks on what the discussions are. With regard to the messaging of having to do more with less, I don't know what the source of that is. We're not reducing staffing, we are actually creating some, we divided the central support staff and the appropriate management staff among the two departments. They're, the people who report to them will be the same, their responsibilities will continue to be the same, so I don't know where the messaging of doing more with less. You know, when you go through a process like this, oftentimes, there are people who will speculate, what's the impact on me, and that's certainly natural, but there's no change in the jobs that people have to do. There may be changes in who they report to, that is going to change in some respects, but the notion that we're going to be providing fewer resources, I don't know how that is justified, because that's not the case. We're not cutting resources as a result of this restructuring to any function.
Okay, if I could, ma'am, Chair, just, so Jason, any other thoughts on that? Because again, it was concerning to me when you put that forward.
I do have some thoughts on that. The proposed cost, again, of approximately half a million dollars per year, we've been told, again, and it's our members being told by their supervisors, which is not the best way to get this information, of course, is that that money is going to have to come from their budget in other ways, other places, and if that money is found in their budgets, that necessarily means reducing, whether it's hours, whether it's, you know, other things that they need to do their jobs, they're being specifically told that that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
No, ma'am.
Then we have Mr. Jaski on items 18 and 19, if you want to read those items.
Item 18, I'll read both of those together, if it's the same person. Items 18 and 19, additional authority to complete the application and approval process to receive $150,000 of No Place Like Home program technical assistance grant funding, and execute a standard agreement with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Item 19, authorization to amend existing agreement with First Step Communities allocating an additional $171,367.05 in general fund for the continued operation of the Winter Sanctuary program, for a contract total of $606,367,005, effective October 17, 2017 through April 30 of 2018, and approve the appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $171,367.05.
Mr. Jaski?
Chair Peters, Supervisors, for the record, my name's Mike Jaski, representing Sacramento area congregations together and its homelessness local organizing committee, and a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church. I wanted to express our support for items 18 and 19, and provide greater visibility of them to you and to the public. Let me start with number 19, expanding the funding for Winter Sanctuary. We're part of the way through the winter season. As you may recall from your October 17 meeting when you approved this, there were insufficient funds to cover the entire period out through the end of March. Staff was to come back with a proposal for solving this problem. We support the additional funding that is proposed, and based on the nine nights that our congregation has hosted Winter Sanctuary so far this season, we think you should be aware that this is a vital effort. These people are, many of them in very poor condition, we're seeing more wheelchairs, more medical equipment, more people with obvious mental health issues. The problem with Winter Sanctuary is it doesn't provide services. We need to transition from this program to something, a centralized version of this, or a shelter that is able to provide the services these people need, and I hope you will strongly consider that in future years going forward. Regarding number 18, as you know, this is a sort of pro forma correction of the application that county has already made to the state to get these monies, and therefore, the purpose of implementing No Place Like Home. The RFP for the use of these monies is already on the street. We are very pleased at the way that RFP is structured, it focuses on the planning aspects as opposed to the other things that it could be used for, and we look forward to the participation in that process once that effort gets underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that leaves us items 6, 18, and 19 for a motion.
Move the items.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 45 is the present... Item 45 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming February 25, 2018 as Spay Day 2018.
Mr. Nattoli's going to present this?
Yes.
If the representatives from Spay Day would come forward? No. There you go.
Well, good morning, and this is Jillian, correct?
Yeah.
And I think she's been here before, and I know, working with the chair's office, thank Supervisor Peters and her staff, we're going to, once again, join with the broader community, and certainly not only proclaiming, but I think a call attention to, and certainly a call to action, to support Spay Day USA here in our community, in the Sacramento community, on February 25th. And I'll let Jillian, if she so desires to, you know, talk a little bit about the day's activities, the proclamation, or board resolution, does talk about the importance of this, certainly as it relates to animal welfare, but also to dealing with great numbers of animals, particularly cats and dogs, that come to the shelter system, both in the county, but certainly within the city, and within surrounding jurisdictions, including the SPCA as well. And so, for many years, through a really coordinated effort, where funds are generated locally and the support provided by the Sacramento area Animal Coalition, Sacramento Animal Care, Sacramento-Yolo County Boards of Supervisors, and the Sacramento and Yolo County SPCA's, teaching everyone, teaching everyone Animals Matter, our team program that's affiliated with the Sacramento County Shelter, Red Rover, City of Elgro, this year, the Humane Society of the United States as well, Sacramento Valley Veterinary Association, which is a very important partner, obviously, to assist with the spay-neuter efforts, and of course, some of the private donations, C.R. Printing and Office Supply has been one of those, has given dollars and donated in-kind materials. 300-plus volunteers come together on a Sunday, and they've done this annually, and I don't know for how many years now.
Yeah, over a dozen.
Okay, so for more than a dozen years, and so this year on 25th of February, people assemble very early in the morning, and animals are brought in, and it's quite an effort, but one I think that ultimately pays many dividends, because there are less unwanted litters of animals, and it certainly helps with the, support the efforts that we do in our shelter system, and appreciate the leadership certainly of our Sacramento County Brown Shaw Shelter, and Dave Dickinson, Rob Leonard, who works very closely, and others on that effort. But, so we want to just recognize this is the 13th anniversary of the Spay Neuter Day and Spay Day USA being celebrated and certainly being carried out in our community, and it's hoped that this year will do, I think, over 600 spay-neuters, and that will complement the nearly 7,000 low-cost spay-neuters that have been provided over the past dozen years. So, want to thank Jillian and certainly her efforts to reach out to this board and to, again, publicize this in our community. I know volunteers are welcomed, and there are a number of sites where people can volunteer at, and so with that, this board certainly provides this resolution of support and our acknowledgement of the good work that goes on, both, you know, on this particular day, but certainly throughout the year, and the difference it makes in the lives of our companion animals, but obviously the quality of lives in our community for people and their pets. So with that, Jillian, present this to you, and I'll let opportunity say a few words, if you'd like.
Thank you so much. So we're really, really grateful...
And between the microphones?
Sorry.
No, just between them.
Oh, between them. Good.
Then we get in both ears.
Wonderful. So, my name is Jillian Hacker, I'm the Sacramento area Animal Coalition Board President. Last year, I was secretary, I think, when I was here, and received this very important resolution last year. We're really, really grateful for all of the support that we've received from this board over the years. Last year, both financially and in way of this resolution, we are an all-volunteer board, so this is just something we do out of our, out of our passion and our heart in trying to improve the community and provide low-cost spay and neuter for families who can't otherwise afford them. So we're really lucky to have so many collaborators with all the vets and municipalities and other nonprofit organizations who help us, so we're just really grateful. Again, Spay Day is February 25th, and if you're able to support us again this year, we're really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for protecting all our pets.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item 46 is the state of the county's single-stream recycling program.
Okay, you're not Doug?
Okay, good morning, Board. I'm Doug Cole, Waste Management Program Manager for the Department of Waste Management Recycling. Back on October 31st of 2017, this board considered two retroactive contracts for single-stream processing of the South Area single-stream materials, and at that time, the board also asked that we come back, the department come back and report on the state of the single-stream recycling in the county, and so that is this presentation today. Okay, I'm going to cover several topics today. Talk about, just a reminder of what our curbside program, how it's structured, what kind of tonnage as we collect, get more, a little more detail on our curbside recycling program as a whole, talk about the commodities market, because that is a significant part of what's going on today in our market and driving how we're going to be changing things, and then what are we going to be doing to respond to these changes? So for what we collect at the curb, single-stream recycling amounts to about 15% of the total collected, so it's not a huge fraction, but it's a significant fraction as far as cost or revenues to the county. As you can see, and this is kind of a reminder from January of last year, when I talked about these numbers, then I have updated them for 2017, so, but anyway, we're, single-stream has kind of stayed flat for most of the years that are displayed there, and our garbage has gone up a little bit that we collect, and green waste has stayed relatively constant, it's fluctuated with the drought. Okay, our curbside program, so in 1990, we started this three-bin process for collecting recyclable materials, getting them out of the waste stream, and so up in the corner of the screen, you see the three bins, that's what we were using up until 1998, when we implemented single-stream recycling for the first time. That contract in 1998 was a market-based contract, and for the first year, 1998, it actually cost us, on average, $10.12 per ton. This information is also in the staff report, if you're interested in seeing the details. Then the next year, we actually made some revenue, $0.90 a ton, and then it's gone up since then, and it's been staying pretty consistently in a revenue form until recently, which I'll get into later in this presentation. In 2006, we went out for bid, or actually, in 2005, we went out for bid for replacement of the contract. I will talk a little more detail about what type of structure we created for that 2005 RFP, and then again, in 2012, we went out again because of expirations of the other, of the older contracts, so, and today, we're operating under several different agreements, which I'll get into in more detail as well. Another part of our curbside recycling program is we do a lot of public education to try and encourage our residents to put the right thing in the right bin, make sure they're not putting trash in the recycle bin, not putting organics in the recycle bin, so that we can keep the material as clean as possible. That comes typically in the form of either a handouts or utility bill inserts, or even the annual services calendar. For the curbside recycling program, fibers, which are paper, cardboard, and newsprint, makes up a significant portion of what is in our single-stream materials, more than 50%. The next largest constituent to our single-stream is actually our residual. We're running around 25% residual. This is the material that is not accepted in the program, is not recyclable, and ends up at the landfill. And then the materials go down from there, you can kind of see from the chart where most of the materials are. Glass is the next largest contributor to the single-stream, that material is getting recycled today. And then finally, the containers, which have probably the most value in the single-stream, are the least represented just by the nature of what they are, and because they have California redemption value funds tied to them. Also in our curbside program, as I discussed a little earlier, we started at a negative cost to the county, and over time, that built into a revenue, so this chart here is just to give you an idea of where we've gone recently as far as our revenue. So you can see they've been declining, they've climbed up in 2013 and 14, probably the highest they've been, and then they've been falling off steadily since then, until 2017, where we actually have seen our revenues go into a negative, where we're actually paying again now for the recycling, and I'll get into why we're doing that in a few moments. And then finally, we're doing a projection on what's going to cost us this calendar year, 2018, and it looks like we're going to be about a million, a little over a million dollars in cost this year to process our materials, and that's going from that high of 1.1 million. So we've seen a complete reversal of this stream. This chart is really busy, I apologize, but, and I'm not going to go through the details of this, except for to show you that this is what the county and our processors deal with on the recycled market commodities value. You can see it's all over the board, and so that first segment there with the kind of purple dots, that was our first contract where it was market-based, and that was with California Waste Solutions. And you can see, we actually started, again, in the negative, we dipped it low to almost zero, and then we climbed back up. So, because of those fluctuations, and because of the status of the intercell waste enterprise fund at the time, being not as stable as we had liked it, we decided, well, maybe we should avoid these market fluctuations, go to something more consistent, so we went to a flat price, asked those processors to give us their best guess for seven years, what would they be able to pay us, or charge us, for those seven years? And they came back with a dollar amount, you can see there, it averaged about $15 per ton over the whole life of those contracts. Finally, because we missed those big bumps, and you can see those big climbs in the market value, we decided, well, and the enterprise fund was more robust and more solid and stable, we decided, okay, well, we can handle those budgetary fluctuations in revenues, and we went back to the market-based. And as soon as we did, we saw a huge climb right away, the first few months of that contract, of those two new contracts, and, but of course, now, as the market has come down, so have our revenues, and then they went right back up again, so...
Could you pause for a second?
Sure.
There are so many lines on the graph, and the print is so small, could you at least refer to colors, so we know which line you're talking about?
Oh, certainly, sorry about that.
Sorry to be so basic, but...
Oh, no, that's okay.
It's nonsensical to me.
So, again, the purple dotted lines near the bottom in the lower left, that is that market-based value that we were receiving as either cost or revenue from the California Waste Solutions contract. Then we transitioned to that yellow line and the blue line right below it, those were the two flat-price contracts that we had for seven years, and then finally, we get into the purple and the light purple and the light blue, which is, again, fluctuating, those are the lower end of the graph, that are our market-based contracts again. Now, all the lines above Chair Peters are the actual market values of the paper, the news, and the mixed paper, the newsprint, and the cardboard. And so those, that's where we're seeing those fluctuations, then, when those contracts were following the markets and when it was the flat price.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, another one of those busy graphs, I apologize, but the whole point behind this graph here is to demonstrate the trend of what the markets are doing. Right now, for the most part, cardboard has continued to rise over the years displayed by this graph.
Which color is cardboard?
Okay, so cardboard would be your dark brown and your kind of fuchsia color, and the reason for the differentiation in the two colors is, the dark brown is what our contracts are based on, they're based on the domestic market value, and so you can see that has gone down slightly, but then the light is the actual export value, and that is the value that typically the recyclers that take our material get paid on, they get paid on that export, if they are exporting out of country. So you can see that's gone up, the light blue, my apologies, let me look at my, to that chart. So the blues, the light blue and the dark blue are the mixed paper. That one is the one that has been declining, it is the biggest represented fiber that we have, is the mixed paper, and this has been the one that has actually been driving the value of the material down. So, again, this was just to display the difference between what the exports are doing, which primarily for the export market has continued to go up over time, and the domestic has either stayed flat or gone down a little bit, but mixed paper has gone down for both domestic and export, but has significantly gone down for export, which is what is affecting our processors the most.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm going to talk a little bit about what's been going on lately in the market. So in 2005, the Chinese government enacted...
Excuse me, Mr. Nattoli has a question.
Yeah, just before you launch into that, I just am curious about, to kind of follow on some of the questions from Supervisor Peters, but the, you talk about the contamination, and it's hanging about 25% or so, so what of the, beyond product price fluctuation, where does contamination affect the ability to then, to offload those recyclables? Is it in the papers? Is it in the plastics? Is it in the cans? When you get this mixed contamination, whatever that is, and maybe you'll tell us the constituents of that, so where does that have its biggest effect? Beyond any market price fluctuation, if there's contamination in it, whether, and you're going to talk about it in a moment, I know, but, so whether they accept the load or not, where is that having its greatest effect? And all of those...
In most of them, but primarily in the paper, and it also depends on whether they're doing, what type of source they're doing, because they have two different types, it's positive or negative. One is they're picking materials off, all the residual off, and what ends up at the last conveyor is typically your mixed paper, so anything they miss, the recycling facilities' workers miss, may end up in that paper bale, and if it ends up in that paper bale, it's baled and it's off to China as garbage in that bale.
So, and what would that, for example, be then, if it's missed? So you've picked the metals out, you've got the glasses, glass and the plastic, and you've got paper, and what else?
Well, so that residual might actually have film plastic in it, it could have cans they missed, that should have gone into the aluminum or gone into the steel, just because it was happened to be in such a situation that the paper didn't allow it to get picked up by the other processes beforehand. So it's a number of different things. We do have some folks in the audience who are here today that are processors, three of our local processors, who could certainly speak better to this than I, as far as the process.
Okay, so what's being mostly affected then are the loads of paper that then have contaminants in it versus loads of plastic that might have...
It's in both.
It's in both?
They're seeing it in both.
Okay.
And then there's quite a few type of materials that get in there that shouldn't be in there, textiles are a big problem, a lot of textiles get in there, and they're not currently accepted in our program, cords get wrapped up in their screens, cause problems for their equipment, so there's quite a few things that don't, shouldn't be in there, but get in there anyway.
Since other people are listening, explain what textiles are.
Oh, sure.
I mean, I think this is an opportunity for you to explain to the public what goes in the recyclable. I don't think we do a very good job of telling the public what goes in recyclables.
Certainly, so we accept the papers, the cardboards, your cereal boxes, your corrugated cardboard for, like your Amazon boxes, and then newspapers, those are our fibers, our typical fibers we accept. Then we have metal cans, which is your chili cans that you might get, or your...
Cans.
Soup cans, exactly. Then you have all the California redemption-type materials, which is going to be your aluminum cans, your glass bottles, for your beverage, basically beverage containers, your high-density polyethylene, which is either your milk jugs, which are the clear high-density polyethylene, or you have your Tide bottles for your detergent, you have your dishwasher detergent, those can be in color HDPE or high-density polyethylene, so those are accepted in the program. We do also accept other plastics, three through seven, except for styrofoam. Styrofoam is one of those misleading types of materials that is labeled as recyclable, but it really isn't, but, and so folks unfortunately get confused by that, and they see that recycle symbol, and they toss it in the bin anyway, because they think it's truly recyclable.
Where should it go?
Unfortunately, right now, it should go to trash, because there is no options right now for styrofoam, so, for polystyrene is the actual technical term for it.
And the cans, the cans and containers, should they be rinsed, or, you know, when you finish your milk carton, do you just toss it in?
Thank you for asking that question, absolutely. A quick rinse is always good, especially for like milk, or if, we'd rather not see any chili sitting in that can before you throw it in the recycle bin, if you can do a quick rinse. I've had customers call me and say, well, gee, do I need to put it in the dishwasher? Or they are actually putting that in the dishwasher? We don't need to do that. It just needs to be a quick rinse, just if there's a little greasy film on there, that's okay, especially in the metal cans, because they're going to get exposed to high temperatures, they're going to burn that off anyway.
Oh, thank you.
So, and then finally, to answer your earlier question, Chair Peters, on textiles, that's your clothing, your t-shirts, your jeans, shoes, socks, it's, we see it all. your clothing, your T-shirts, your jeans, shoes, socks, it's, we see it all. It all ends up in there. I know, again, the folks that are in the room here.
Again, that should go in trash.
That should go in trash currently, because unfortunately, we do not have any good avenues to get rid of it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Nattoli, just to follow on. So then, as you're looking at this, because most of this is received through curbside, I trust, and are you able to identify routes where there's a higher propensity for contamination or when you, you know, when you bring it back or bring it in? And again, you know, so you know where you might target some of your, to the questions that were being asked here that would help explain it? Because again, you're pretty dependent upon people's cooperation, understanding, and participation. And without that, unless you're going to have somebody before they dump it in the truck, check every can, and you know, dump it out in the street and sort it, you're going to get in with contamination. I know you're trying to get this down to 10% or less, in some cases, I guess a half a percent when it gets shipped overseas. So are you able to do that? I guess that's my question. Are you able to identify by route? So maybe you do something, maybe you provide an additional can. There's a lot of garbage going in there, maybe there's not enough capacity. And that may have a cost, but it may be less costly to target and working with a particular neighborhood or a particular community than it would be to try to, you know, blanket and just put a bunch of stickers on cans where people are already doing, you know, doing the right thing, or there's enough capacity. Because very frankly, it may be a socioeconomic issue as well. I mean, you know, we, they get a small garbage can, or even they get the 90 gallon, and it's not enough. And so not my problem, I'm throwing it away, you guys got to deal with it. And yet, you know, when I see the impacts here, we have this swing of almost $3 million in one year is pretty significant.
Supervisor Nattoli, you're exactly right. We've experienced all those. To answer your question about whether or not we can tell by route, we can tell by route day. In 2012, we changed our survey methods for our characterizations of our single stream. And we actually went in where we are sampling in the neighborhoods, we're sending a special truck that picks up every specific randomly selected can, or the next one if they couldn't, if the customer didn't put theirs out. But so we're getting the entire can in that load and we're getting it random for that entire route day, bringing that back and then hand-sorting it with staff from Castadia Consulting, who's been our typical characterization contractor. So in 2012, we were able to identify north and south by route day where the issues were. We had seen contamination from 11% to over 50%. And absolutely, some of the neighborhoods that have social economic issues were some of those neighbors that we have a challenge with, and we need to work with them and see what we can do to make it better, make it easier for them. We've also changed our can structure. I think you folks have seen the new can scheme, color scheme we have now. So we have black for garbage, light green for green waste, and then blue for recycling. They're springing up all over the neighborhoods as we replace cans through natural attrition. But we believe that that is helping for the residents to identify what is right. We have a variable can service that we offer to our residents for those that recycle really well, do the right thing, and should be rewarded for that. But unfortunately, you're right, there are going to be folks that are going to reduce their can size, and then when they exceed their 30 or 60 gallon service in a week, they have other cans to choose from. Unfortunately, that's not where it should go, but that's where it ends up. And so we do have to wrestle with that on a regular basis as well.
Okay. Thanks.
I think I've seen statistics that say that 25% is the contamination percentage on recyclables, in that range.
That's our average, yeah.
Is that a, is there a primary item that is causing the contamination? I mean, is it food contamination? Is it 25% is batteries or, you know, what?
Yeah, no, it's a, probably textiles would be a big one. Again, our processors will be able to answer that question better than I, because they see that firsthand. But the materials we're seeing is the textiles that are coming in. There are, you might see a big unrecyclable piece of equipment that just ends up in there. It's too many different pieces. It's got plastic and metal, et cetera, ends up in there. If it can fit in that can, we tend to see it in there on time, on occasion, so.
Okay.
And so, but again, our processor would have a better feel for that.
Thank you. Back to China.
Okay. So again, the National Sword was initiated actually in 2005 and implemented in 2006 by the Chinese government. What that basically said was that materials coming imported into China, the recyclable commodities, could not have more than 1.5% contamination or rejects by weight. Well, while they had that policy, they actually didn't enforce it very well. They weren't aggressive about enforcing it. They needed the raw materials to develop the products that actually get shipped back here to the U.S. So that went on for a period of time, until finally in 2012, the Chinese government felt that they were getting too much residual, too much trash in their country. And so they decided to start enforcing that original policy. And that was called the Green Fence. And they went to the processor, to out to the commodities market, to the brokers and said, we're going to start splitting bales, we're going to start seeing what's in this and tell you when you exceed our threshold, and we're going to reject containers. And so they did it with some modesty. They went ahead and just rejected a load per se, maybe a container that had bad material in it, in a hopes to send a message to the recycling industry here in the U.S. that they're not going to take the trash. And then they relaxed again. So they did that for about a year. It was called the Green Fence. Then they relaxed in the hopes that the industry would respond. Well, come 2017, 2016, 2017, they wanted to send a new message, because again, because they relaxed, they started seeing more contamination, more residual in the loads. So this time, when they went in and inspected a bale, if they found one bale out of compliance, they not only rejected that container, they rejected the entire order from that supplier. And so to put in perspective, I believe in the folks in the room here that are going to maybe speak later can correct me if I'm wrong, but to ship a container over there is about $800. To bring it back is $8,000. Because they're competing against the new market, the new materials market, all those products that are coming back, for space coming back. Those shipping containers would normally go back empty. So it's an opportunity for the shipping companies to take advantage of those empty containers and send something back that direction. So that was, that's been probably one of their biggest issues with it. Now it's called the National Sword, and that's what it was implemented in 17, early 17, March of 17, they actually started stating that they were going to start to enforce heavily the 1.5%. Finally, towards the end of 2017, they had cracked down pretty heavily. This had had some significant impacts on the ability for our processors to send material out over into the Chinese market. China, by the way, China receives about 50% of our recycled commodities from the U.S. And of that 50%, 80% of that is the paper, the fibers. And so it's a significant part. And so the mixed paper, which typically had the worst contamination, was the one that they were targeting the most. Now, they're also targeting the PET bales, which is your plastic soda pop bottles. That's PET, the clear or the green colored ones. So the Chinese government also started not only inspecting over in the ports where they were receiving it, they were actually sending inspectors here, to the U.S., to inspect at facilities, break bales here in the facilities to see what was going on and see if they, and then that, because of those rejections, the brokers who take responsibility of this material, when they buy it from our processors, they were having to start doing their own inspections, because they didn't want to buy material that was going to be rejected at the other end, where they would potentially eat the cost or have to pass that back to the folks that sold it to them. So the Chinese government got really serious about this. And finally, and there was some speculation as to where they were going to go with the contamination rate, what they were going to, what level they were going to accept, were they going to ban our materials completely, which was one of the ideas that they had? They finally settled on December 29th with a 0.5% contamination rate. So the 1.5% was pretty difficult for our processors to meet to begin with, but the Chinese government wanted to make sure that they were not getting trashed on, so they've actually now instituted a newer policy, which is 0.5%. So this is the metric that all of our processors are now having to meet. And if they don't, they have to find other resources, other places to market their material. So and again, the folks in the room may want to speak to that. Oh, by the way, that 0.5% won't take effect until March 1. So they implemented it, or they issued it in December 29th, but it will not take effect on March 1. Okay. Finally, so as a result of what's been going on with the National Sword, our processors and the industry have had to react, they've had to change what they're doing. So that 25% that our residents, on average, put into our cans, that 25% of residual, is no longer going to be acceptable to our processors. It's too high, because that translates to residual that ends up in the bales that they try to market. And so they're asking us to clean up our act and send them cleaner material so that they can then process it and produce a product that they can actually market. So we're watching them make these changes. We've heard that there are some cities where the contamination rate in the single-stream container was more than 50%. And they've, and some processors have chose to cut that city off completely and tell that city out. It doesn't matter what you pay me, I'm not taking that material, because I can't market it. And so those folks are likely having to either find another source or dispose of their material. And finally, so what our processes have been implying that they'd like to see from us is get our residual, our average residual down to about 10%. So in my, next part of my presentation, we'll talk about that. So how are we going to fix our program so that we can meet the standards of what our processes are asking of us? So we're going to do a curbside enhancement program that is in place right now. We have a committee within the department that is also including several other folks in the county, Cubs, Communications Media Office. Those folks are involved in our committee. We're going to, I'll talk briefly about what we're planning for the request for proposals, and then what does this mean to the taxpayers? So again, the curbside enhancement program, we're looking to do it different, several different things. We're looking at, we have a media subcommittee that is looking, working closely with the Communications Media Office to try and produce more either radio ads, TV ads, paper-type cards, you know, get more material out there to our residents to let them know what is acceptable in the program, try and help them understand what they can put in the can and what they can't put in the can. We're also going to get out there on the street, and we're talking with the customers whenever we can, to let them know, when we find contamination in their can, we want to let them know, well, this is not what we're planning on, this is not what we need you to put in the can. We want to educate the public to get them better in tune with what they should be putting in there. We're actually going out and we're checking. We're looking, and we call it the Flip the Lid Program. We're actually going in and opening up the carts, and we're looking through it to see if there's contaminants. And if we are, we're going to be tagging those cans with a notice that says exactly what they put in that can that shouldn't be in there, so the residents understand better what they should be putting in those cans or what they shouldn't be. And then finally, we're going to be trying a few different things, because we need to identify what is our best strategy or strategies to curb the contamination and make this material cleaner. So we're going to be trying out pilot areas and different methods to try and figure out what best works in what neighborhood to help them to better clean up their material.
Could you pause there? I think I, if I heard you right, you're going to start going through the trashcans on the street with recycling trashcans? I mean, now we've got homeless going through the trashcans, and you're going to be going through it too, which I find disturbing.
You got to get there first.
Yeah. Yeah, get up early. So are you planning a substantial media campaign first to let people? I think people are really interested in putting the right thing in the recycling cans, but I don't think they really know what, you know, what you want to see in those cans and what the crisis is.
Absolutely. We plan, we can do mailers in advance to our, through our Cubs.
Are they mailers that are coming on their own? Are they mailers that's going the utility bills?
Likely in the utility bills, but we've also been talking about doing.
Those are useless.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Just let me, I'm telling you, they're useless. There's so much stuff that comes in those bills. I think most people just empty it over the garbage like this and pull their bill out. I, that's what I do too. So, and I don't think I'm alone, at least some of us. So I think you need to do something different that gets people's attention, because I do get, it's interesting, I get a lot of questions from people about what's supposed to go in the recycling bill, and you know, should we put the cans in the dishwasher, or should we rinse them out? Or they don't know. I think people are very aware of recycling now and, but they, you know, lose track over time. Maybe it's some kind of postcard that they could, you know, stick on the inside of the cupboard or keep in some way. I don't, I'm not a media person, but I don't, I don't think we do a great job at letting them know. And I can tell you, I object to the utility bill stuffers.
Okay. Totally noted.
About anybody else? Mr. Kennedy wanted to comment too.
Sure.
I completely concur with the chair. What about, because I've been told that certain neighborhoods are, you know, much more violative than other neighborhoods, and it can be broken down that way. What about areas, because I've got areas in District 2 that are, and incorporated that are purely multifamily? What do we do about multifamily?
So multifamily is part of the commercial stream, and so that's regulated by the Sol Waste Authority.
Right.
And they're under their own mandates to recycle based on AB 341, which was passed several years ago. It was something we actually implemented first. The state actually followed our lead for the Sol Waste Authority and actually took our ordinance and our program and made it statewide. So we're pretty proud of that, that we actually did something that they use statewide. So they're under those requirements to provide recycling. There, it's prescriptive to some materials, they must accept. It's the obligation of the apartment complex owners, managers to subscribe to a service. It's the obligation of the commercial haulers to offer the service. And so we do have folks that are working with the authority, Barry Chamberlain and his group, city code enforcement are working to make sure that those, that ordinances are followed. And so that's on the multifamily residential side.
That's, we adopted those two years ago, the new standards at multifamily, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's incumbent upon the contractor to actually at their end do the sorting.
Right.
That's how it works.
Yeah, they typically collect and they'll deliver to one of our processors. And some of those processors are also collectors.
Okay.
It occurs, when we were talking about Pride earlier, maybe you hire someone like Pride or someone else to go door-to-door with a door hanger that says, you know, what you can recycle and what's not recycle. I mean, really, it has to stand out. There's so much junk mail these days that it's hard to stand out, to get people's attention that this is something you can keep.
We've, as the committee, there's the media subcommittee has been working on that, Supervisor Peters. We are, that is something we are looking at right now. What we're trying to decide is do we do 155,000 of these packets, which would be actually a clear plastic hanger with a bunch of information in it that we would hang on the doors? Or do we do it in our pilots and see how it works? Because one of the things is we can do it a broadcast approach and dump it all over the entire unincorporated area and hope that we get good response, or we can maybe look at the strategies as well, and do we go ahead and target an area, sample the material in advance and see what the contamination levels are before we target that area? Then we go in, do the different strategies, and come back after the fact, maybe six months later, and see how effective it was by characterizing that material again. And so we are wrestling with those. We're working with the Communications Media Office to figure out what is the best approach.
How long before your committee makes a recommendation?
I would hope in a couple, next couple of months. I'm working quickly. I'm in charge of that committee. So I'm going to drive it as quickly as I can to get us to where we need to go. So I'm hoping within the next couple of months, we would be implementing things. And we'll certainly keep the board's offices informed so that you know, because like you said, the Flip the Lid Program, absolutely, we've got scavengers out there that are going through the cans. Our staff are in safety vests. They are a little more clearly identified as county folk. So hopefully that will deter some of those calls you may get when our staff are going through those cans and hope they don't think that they're getting their identity stolen or there's scavenging going on. But so we're cognizant of that.
You had any comments from residents about having county staff go through the trash? I don't like that idea myself.
Doug Sloan, the director for the department. So far, we haven't had any comments from the public. It's been a very limited program. And again, we're trying to really gather some, some information in terms of what's out there and how the best approach is, and what media we use to get a hold of the folks. And the one piece that I also wanted to comment on was that we haven't firmed up all the educational materials yet because, as we've learned in this process of working with the processors, some of the processors can take certain materials and others can't. And so I'll use pizza boxes as an example. If the processor can take a pizza box in the recycling container, then we want to make sure that our literature and outreach reflects that. If it's a trash item, we want to note that, too, before it goes out. So there's a little bit of a timing issue here for us in terms of the mass outreach to everybody, because we want to make sure that the processors that we, that-
So to get back to pizza boxes, because I bet there's a lot of those, what you said was a little confusing, but basically some recyclers take pizza boxes and some don't?
Yes. So the City of Sacramento, for example, goes in the recycling container. In the county, it goes in the trash. Yet the processors will tell you that they still get pizza boxes because it's cardboard.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
I wanted to ask if you have, if you can email us something concise, whatever your email marketing material is, so that we could maybe include those in our newsletter to help get the word out to our constituents.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see your committee move along a little faster than a couple of months. If you've already been working on it, I'm not sure how long that should take, but it doesn't seem like a year or something is really necessary. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, and so, and then finally, as a close on the pilot programs, and that's where we'll be trying different strategies. Okay, one of the reasons we're here today, the board wanted to have an opportunity to see what we've been doing, what's been changing before we issue a new RFP. Because right now, we're operating under two contracts with two of the processors in town, and we have a third contract where we're sending the material actually to the Bay Area, to San Jose. So, but these are short-term contracts, we need a long-term solution. So we're looking to see what can we do in these next RFPs to make sure that the, our ratepayers are protected, that we get the most bang for the buck on the material that we're sending to the processors, but that the processors are comfortable taking the material and don't want to execute their early termination clauses in order to get out because of what's been going on with the market. So we're listening to our processors. We've met with the current contracted vendors, processors, to find out what they'd like to see, what are the stumbling blocks for them, the breaking the deal points for them, so that we make sure this RFP goes out and is comfortable for all the processors to propose on.
You said something about you sending it to the Bay Area. I mean, is there a possibility that we'll have trucks on the road between San Francisco and Sacramento every day to pick up trash? Or would they have to have a local presence?
We're currently sending some material that we take from the NARS facility that's collected on the curbside routes, and it's sent down to the South Bay under a contract.
Oh, you're sending it to the South Bay?
Yeah, yes.
I misunderstood that.
There's a processing plant down there that will take the material.
Why couldn't you drop it in the North Area?
We could. We had actually, before we were at the board meeting last, they were part of the RFP process we went through, and we were waiting until this board meeting to go back out for the large RFP. We certainly, again, Doug mentioned that we are working with the two local processors in terms of what they'd like to put in the contract. We do have a third local processor that we want to engage in those same discussions because one of their facility happens to be real close to NARS, and so there's an option there down the road. We want to, again, want to make sure that we have a home for all the material that is collected in the curbside program once we get it cleaned up. But that's really the goal, is to make sure this material, once it's collected, is diverted from the landfill.
Okay, Ms. Natoli.
A question I have, kind of goes back to what your next steps are here, I guess, in this, recognizing that in, you know, 2012, you had seven-plus-year contracts. Is that, in light of this change in marketplace, obviously, there's amortization and other considerations, but is it reasonable to expect you're going to, somebody's going to want to take this on for 10 years?
So that's what we're exploring with our processors now, because the reality is, with the Chinese situation, the question on whether they can market the materials, the timing of the RFP, we intended to go out in the spring, this spring, but we may need to delay that. If we're not going to get responses to the RFPs because we can't get commitments, they don't want to commit to the long term, then we'll need to likely delay that and continue these temporary contracts. Our hope is that the way we structure this next RFP, we're going to leave in so many flexibilities that should the market tank, should paper, mixed paper actually have to be landfilled for a period of time, it'll be reflected in the market indexes, or in some fashion where we can make sure that the processor is not going to want to just get out of the contract because it's no longer tenable for them. And removing the floor was one of the biggest ones because we had that floor $15 a ton on our last contracts. So when the markets dipped below that and they weren't making as much money, they were still obligated to pay the county. So we've, that's one of the things we want to get out, is get that floor out. And then we're also looking at changing what market index we use, maybe go to the export markets, since that's where our processors are using, that's where they're sending most of their material. So we should be reflecting the index that they are typically using. So we're, again, looking at all these different ones. We do intend to try and get a long term so we can get enough confidence in the processors. If they want to site a brand-new facility in, say, the North Area, South Area, they'll have the ability to do that, go to the bank with a long-term contract that'll allow them the stability in order to get the financing they would need.
Well, what concerns me, and certainly it kind of underlies this, that if we can't find a place for it and you can't hold it long enough, then you landfill it. That comes at a tremendous cost. It's not just the environmental aspects. We have the Kiefer landfill asset. It's very expensive to hold on to that, whatever goes in there forever, and all the costs that go into monitoring, to preparing that for landfill. I'm going to say right here and now that, you know, both with our folks that are our partners in this and for our staff, that is not an acceptable alternative, that we're going to find some way to deal with this because those are sunk costs that will, everybody in this community for generations to come will own that. And if we can't find a way to recycle it, then we need to do something else. Again, we don't control, we're not, you know, we're not a nation-state, and certainly, you know, we're at somebody else's mercy a bit. But landfilling paper that would otherwise be recycled, that's nuts. And I'm just going to say that right here and now, having sat on this board for the years I have and having gone through that with discussion about that, that asset is too valuable, and it doesn't make any sense to me that we can't find a way, and if we have to do more, and you've heard that, and again, I appreciate your presentation, Doug, and certainly Doug and Doug both, but we've got to be better at this. And so if you have to make some other initial investments, but to say we're going to bury it and hold on to it for the rest of eternity, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. And so we've got to find another way, and if we have to be creative and maybe even have some upfront costs, then we need to have those options at least presented to this board because that doesn't, that to me is not a very viable nor feasible alternative. Doug?
No arguments from us. We absolutely are on board with that.
Okay, thanks.
That is our last resort. We do not prefer that. We will pay more money than the cost of disposing.
I know that. Pay more, we have to do something else, find a place, you know, build some storage to hold on to it or whatever, but, you know, even incineration in the proper format is better than landfilling this, so, thanks.
Okay. What does this mean to the ratepayers? So with this shift that I talked about earlier of going from about a $1.2 million a year revenue to a $1.1 million 2018 estimate of costs, looking at what our, increasing our public outreach, what we believe where our estimates are going to be for that cost, the cost to do the enforcement to try and bring down the contamination, we're looking at about $1.67 per household per month. That does not say that we're going to be going for a rate increase anytime soon. We are absorbing that through our reserves, but we just wanted to let the board know that these are some of the real costs that we're experiencing as a shift in this, the single-stream program because of what's going on today.
Any additional questions from the board?
Just want to follow. Yeah. So have we looked at, as relates to the, and again, we have folks that we have contracts with, but to having some premium attached to the additional costs that are incurred for sorting? Because again, the contamination, if you can get it at curbside, that's great. I mean, that's, you know, that's the best of all worlds. But once it gets to the processors, and if there is now this requirement that you get it down to, you know, one-half of 1% overall, if it's being exported to China, and I trust other nations will follow suit, and I would agree, you know, why should they just take our garbage? I mean, you know, when we're disposing, you know, sending them recycles and they're taking them. So I guess my question is, are we prepared in looking at this RFP and our conversations to look at that premium that, you know, would require the additional level of precision and the attention to sorting so that at the end of the day, when it's all done and said, that you have clean material that meets whatever particular standard is required? So that's my question. Are we prepared to consider that?
Supervisor Natoli, we have actually already incurring that now. We're incurring that because about a year ago, the cost for processing would have been about $60, $70 per ton, but the processing cost before you look at the value of the material. We are now up to $110 to $125 a ton. Our processors have had to slow their lines down to 50% of what their production was before in order to pull those contaminants out. So we are absolutely already experiencing that. It's reflecting in the pricing, hence why we're now paying to recycle this material.
Okay, and let me just turn my question then back around to what I talked about a moment ago at Kiefer. And if I take that your processing per ton is about one-third to more than one, one-half of what, or less than one-half of what, you could actually just dump everything into the landfill. Is that right?
If you look at processing alone, before the value of the material.
Right, but if we were to take a load of, using the previous example, a paper out to the landfill, it's, it's what, $40 a ton to tip?
Thirty.
$30 a ton. And so that needs to be reflected, too, because then the cheaper alternative, to the point a moment ago, from an economic standpoint, I could take three tons out to dump for what it cost me to process it, to recycle it and everything. And so we need to take a look at that. That doesn't come without some effect, obviously, to haulers and to customers. But then, but we're going to get ourselves back into, because of the evolution of this, is where it's going to become potentially, and there are other laws that dictate certain, you know, calling out of the waste stream, we're going to get back into the situation potentially, though, where it's going to be far cheaper to landfill it than it will be to process it and do the right thing and recycle it. And I think we need to take a look at that aspect, too. Again, it doesn't come without impacts. But, you know, if in fact, doing the right thing, but also keeping in the spirit and the intent of the laws that govern us, then I think we need to take a look at that as well, because otherwise, I can see potentially where this heads if we aren't, you know, more adept at what we do, because it just, you know, it's three times as cheap to bury it as it is to process it potentially, right?
Yes.
Supervisor Natoli, you've hit the nail on the head with the dilemma that we're headed towards. It is going to be more expensive to recycle material going forward, both green waste and the recycled material. It will, absolutely is cheaper to landfill it, and that's absolutely not what we want to have happen. We are working very hard to make sure that those materials get diverted away from the landfill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Would you have a speaker on this issue? Thank you, if you want to stand by. Dave Vacarezza?
Hello, my name is Dave Vacarezza. I'm with Cal Waste Recovery, 175 Enterprise Court in Galt, California. We're one of the processors for Sacramento County. We process for a number of counties surrounding Amador County, Calaveras County, San Joaquin County. We do a number of different programs that we process at our facility in Galt. We do about 220 tons a day there. And what Doug is speaking about in terms of the marketplace, really, we're in crisis right now that, you know, the paper market has done a 180-degree turn in the last 10 years in that most of the, most of the domestic plants that were on the West Coast have all closed as a result of, you know, cheaper costs in China, water pollution, siding, all different, all different environmental reasons why we don't have plants here. But the reality is, we don't have a domestic market here, or one that will only support about maybe 15% of what we're able to produce. So subsequently, we're at the mercy of the export market. And, you know, with the Paris Accord and cleaning up the environment, China's bought into it, and, you know, they're tired of us shipping them bad material. And subsequently, they've put these standards on us that are extremely difficult to achieve, one-half of 1%. That's almost unheard of. I mean, in the state, there's probably a half a dozen people that can make it to, you know, .07. So the standards are very difficult. We have them coming in our plant every day. They bust open the bales, they inspect us on a regular basis. You know, we're not getting our shipments okayed in big lots. They want to check every load that goes out. The cost to slow down the plant is, as Doug said, is costing us in big ways. Things, little things, you asked like, you know, what is this contaminating? Well, if you take a, if you take a brown bag and you tear it up as it goes through the machinery, and it gets in with the newspaper or a newspaper-type grade material, one-half of 1% of those little pieces of paper, which people have to physically pick those pieces of paper out, with an escalating labor force that's going to go to $15 and a half dollars an hour in the next year and a half, the costs are just, of labor is skyrocketing. The market is closing up, and I don't know, I have a warehouse right now full of paper with the Chinese New Years coming onboard. They shut down for two weeks. The whole state is in a state of crisis, and nobody really wants to own up to it because we think recycling is great, and everybody feels great about recycling at your house. And the, and the contamination goes up and up and up because we get excited about all the, the great commercials we get about recycling on TV, you know, it's a great thing. Well, people get so excited, they throw in their trash, and it's like you said, it's an economic issue that if they don't have the space, it goes in the recycling cart. And then we're, we're the ones that have to put as much work into sorting that material out as you put into combining it all together.
Dave, can you wind up your remarks, please?
Yes, I'll wind them up, and, you know, there is a need for a facility in this county. We're willing to make a commitment to that, to move a facility here, to build something that can take on excess tonnage, but we have to have a long-term contract and some commitments from the county that allow us to, you know, put out the kind of capital that's going to be needed.
Thank you.
And, you know, we're talking about a $20,000, $30,000, $30 million investment. Thank you.
Dave Kuhn?
Morning. My name's David Kuhn. I'm General Manager of Recycling Industries. I was wondering if this overhead was going to be on, so I could show you a little overhead here.
Go ahead.
This is a, this is an example of what we deal with on a cut bill. We get inspectors, I know it's a little hard to kind of read, but we get inspectors that come in and look at our material every day. This is an example of a, I highlighted it in red right here, 1.7, 1.07% contamination. I hit the one and a half percent. But on that particular day, I had a piece of wood and a latex glove. So there's my latex glove that was in there, and there's my little piece of wood that was in that cardboard. I'll flip this around. That was a rejection. That rejected 10 containers, okay? And fortunately, it happened on this side. If that load had left and it was caught in China, that would have been an $80,000 bill to our organization. We struggle, I mean, we recently canceled our contract with the county because it was just too costly to do what we were doing. I'd like to see more materials removed from the recycle program. I brought a favorite item that was mentioned here a long time ago, the plastic bag. The plastic bag needs to be removed. Anything that's bagged up in plastic, folks, is garbage. China won't take it, the rest of the world won't take it. It just needs to get removed completely.
Why? Why won't they take it? It's plastic.
They have banned it. China has banned plastic. You can't take PET there. You can't take any plastic. It is gone. We don't even, we don't even ship our mixed paper and cardboard and anything to China ourselves. You can't do it. That, right there, that little tiny little thing will reject 10 containers. It is that troubling. And it's part of your stream. It's not part of any other stream. I know City SAC doesn't do it, City of Folsom doesn't do it, but loose plastic bags need to get removed from the system.
That's like a vegetable bag or something like that?
Any grocery bag, anything.
So the heavy-mill plastic bags that the grocery-
Throw it away.
That goes in, that should go in garbage?
Garbage.
See?
It just, it needs to go in garbage. It's too much of a contaminant.
Hold on.
Wait, Ms. Frost, Ms. Frost has her name up first.
It can be reused, I just want to correct you.
Might be, but just, at least for our process, for our process.
Supervisor Frost?
I just want to mention that during my service on the city council in Citrus Heights, we did a pilot program with Dow Chemical and American Chemistry Council and several other entities in partnership with our city, and it was separating out the soft plastics. I mean, by the time those of us who participated in that pilot program separated out our soft plastics, the food waste that was left for the landfill was in, I had to move my bathroom garbage can in the kitchen, because that was my, that was the entire amount of the landfill, and then there was soft plastics, and then there was recycle. The point I want to make is, at the end of that program, we were all so disappointed to have to discontinue it, and we felt awful putting the soft plastic back in the landfill garbage can. But the reality was that they needed, and I talked to the folks at Dow Chemical, they needed approximately 165,000 households
Wow.
in order to bring a plant to Sacramento County that could cost, that could pencil out and make that reasonably doable. And so, the point I wanted to make is, can we have a conversation, can we begin to have those conversations to try to attract a local resource, a way to, a local resource? The soft plastics that they were taking to Oregon, they were trucking to Oregon to convert soft plastic into crude oil, and then making other products with those. So this is jobs in Sacramento County. If we can have those conversations between other public entities, cities and counties, and these people that are so smart, that can actually help us make this happen, maybe in collaboration, we could bring our own local resources to expand, so we're not driving to the Bay Area to get rid of, and send it to China.
I just wanted, if you give me a few seconds, real quick.
Answer her question, and then Mr. Cernha had a question.
I just had that one comment. I've made it.
Well, you have the infrastructure here to process this material. Unfortunately, the market has changed, and it just won't take this stuff right now, the way it is. It just needs to come out, and it can clean up. Anything that's bagged in the recycle program should be eliminated. That should be a major part of the education, is to stop bagging things. It just messes up the whole recycle process. To the staff report and everything from Doug Cobal, Doug Sloan, I agree, no floor, there should not be a floor. I would disagree, though, in the long-term nature of a contract. It is too unpredictable right now in the market. And unfortunately, the, no matter what gets put in a contract, stuff keeps coming up that neither party could seem to predict, and it just hasn't been very forgiving as far as getting changes to those.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yeah, so I'm just wiping up that I'm here, we'd like shorter-term contracts until we get some stability, instead of a seven-to-10-year contract. Thank you.
Alex Sosa-Guerra.
Good morning, Chair Peters, Supervisors. Alex Sosa-Guerra with Waste Management, 8491 Fruit Ridge Road. I want to echo Dave Vacarezza's comment. There is, there definitely is a crisis. The crisis is the markets. It's about quality, quality, quality. No longer will other markets take our trash, as Supervisor Natale mentioned. So that has created quite a bit of havoc in the marketplace. An issue to that is the difference between what is recyclable and what's marketable. And the example's glass. Glass is recyclable, but it costs to process it, and we pay to process it. There is no value to that product. And so, in terms of a contract, we definitely agree that there should be no artificial floors. They definitely are not sustainable. Rebate mechanisms must allow for fluctuations in the marketplace, and they have to be, and for commercially viable products. I think there would have been some excellent comments by the board. And Chair Peters, I think, you know, for you, the comment of, it's difficult to recycle and what should go in there, we hear that a lot nowadays. At Waste Management, we've been looking at the right of self-help to help with that. Education, unfortunately, warning, charging, and then upsizing. We've been running a number of pilots to try to resolve the contamination issue, some of them with very good results, others that still need quite a bit of work. In terms of looking through the trash container, we don't look through the trash container, it's really through that recycling container, it's just observing it. So it's not really rummaging through it, but looking at the habitual contaminator, the one that throws the diaper bags, the full trash, whatever into that container, and that's been happening. So, once again, we want to echo the industry, but also, you know, we hear it at Cal Recycle and we hear it from municipalities, there's a tremendous amount of now concentration by all markets. And we're looking to expand markets in not only China, India, New Zealand, Australia, local markets here in California as well, and local producers, but there's quite a bit of need for investment, and it's costly. Waste Management recently invested $8 million more in terms of our Fruit Ridge facility, and we continue to make additional investments. So, I just want to leave with that comment. I would like to spend some time with you folks, also talking about, you know, what we've experienced with our pilots, and what we're seeing in the marketplace. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cernha?
Thank you. A question for our executive staff, I don't think it was made mention of yet, but what is our association, State Association and National Association, doing to affect a legislative agenda, whether it be nationally or statewide, to find us some room to breathe here on this issue?
Supervisor Cernha, so, we do have a lot of our staff as members of the Always Association of North America. I believe that's the organization you're referring to. Solwa Swana, is it better named, is fully involved in this. They've sent letters to the World Trade Association, our organization, to try and help China develop standards that can be met by the marketplace. Because while this is more a West Coast problem, because the Midwest and the East Coast have found more domestic markets, they're not as dependent on the export as we are, it is affecting some of their members on, in those areas as well, but primarily California. California happens to be the biggest state in the nation as we know, and is also the biggest member of the chapter, or of the organization Swana. So, absolutely, they're involved. In California, we have a legislative task force, I'm actually on that task force for Swana. We represent all three California chapters. We actually were so big, we had to split into three. And we are working with not only the state, but also as we can with Big Swana, national, to try and make sure we can fix this problem to the best we can.
Is there, so you mentioned that the East Coast doesn't have necessarily the magnitude of the challenge that we have on the West Coast due to a different marketplace, I guess?
Correct.
What is it about that marketplace that's, you know, reproducible here? Is there anything that we can, is there anything we can glean immediately from what's happening in other parts of the country that we ought to focus on here to help us get out of this predicament?
Well, part of it is the level at which they recycle. California is leading the nation in recycling rates, and so, by nature, we're producing more material, we're collecting more material that's being recycled, so we're going to have a bigger challenge. They, because their magnitude is smaller, they're able to rely more on those domestic markets. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, about 50% of what is collected and recycled goes to the Asian market. That means the other 50% is staying domestic. Now, that's a national number. For the West Coast, that, those numbers are higher. So, that's part of the problem, is that, I was at a conference in Chicago back in August, and that, this was a significant subject, was talking about what is going on with the Chinese market, and how are we dealing with this? And one of the presenters, one of the keynotes, mentioned, this is a West Coast problem. And they were right, because we are so dependent on the export markets. And so, the speakers that came up here from the industry are absolutely right. We need to develop more infrastructure here in California, so we're not so dependent on exports, and getting the material recycled here. I believe I heard recently that there may be a cardboard manufacturing plant coming online, either in Sacramento County or here in the Sacramento region, that's going to produce a significant amount of cardboard, which is great. So now we have, finally are starting to get some markets here locally. And hopefully, as Supervisor Frost mentioned about the plastics, if we can get someone interested, to answer your question Supervisor Frost, we have 155,000 households we collect from. City of Sacramento has 120,000 households. All the cities combined within here are about another 100 and some odd thousand households. Between all of us, that certainly meets the metric that you were talking about, and so, could we do something there? I wanted to remind the board that in 2005, we implemented the plastic bags in the bag, and also the shredder paper in the bag, for a couple of reasons. Primarily, the plastic bags, there was no other option, it was throw it in the trash. And so, at the time, plastic bags had a market. They had value. And so, we were able to, because there was no bans, statewide or local, eventually we got to a plastic bag ban, and now we're getting the much heavier plastic bags in the stores or the paper bags. But there was no option, so we wanted to give the residents an option of how to get rid of their plastic bags without even just throwing them in the trash. Now, we may be looking at, there may be a time for a change. But that will be removing a product from the stream that we have been allowing our residents to put in there, much like, I think Alex made the comment about the glass. Our residents love being able to recycle the glass. So, this will be a difficult decision to make. What do we take out of the stream, so that we can meet what we are, the needs of our processors, but also offer our residents as much flexibility in the recycling program as necessary?
Thank you. Mr. Natale?
Yeah, I know you're going to be back to us, but if you're considering taking certain things out of the stream, I would want to have a full discussion about that in this forum, and obviously with, you know, invite folks to come in, and we've got other topics today. So as much as I'd like to talk more about this today, I guess I would just want to be sure that we have a very focused and have the opportunity to talk with, you know, our customers, but certainly with those that are going, you know, that are our partners in processing and, you know, in collection, and obviously the recycling end of it. I would just also offer, I think, using Supervisor Frost's example, and I think you may have mentioned in your comments, just as being one of those parties who ships a lot in cardboard boxes that comes encased in those plastic air, you know, the insulation, and so protect the items. And now that, you know, Amazon has, I'll just say, Amazon has a fulfillment center here, maybe part of the fulfillment ought to be helping this community and others that are receiving distribution of goods that arrive within two hours to your doorstep, if you subscribe to that, that, you know, ways to, not only the cardboard and plastics, but other items. And so, maybe we look to them as a partner, and I guess I would suggest maybe now that we, through Economic Development, reach out to them, get our Solwa Swana folks, connect with them, and ask them to, you know, be a partner with our waste processors and haulers and recyclers and sorters in this county. And, you know, and again, there are only one, there are others and many other, but it just seems to me that we've got to really begin to, I think, push out and push back. Otherwise, we're going to be swimming in recycled materials, and again, the last thing I want to see us do is landfill those things, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a lot to digest. Good luck with that, or recycle, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is on transient occupancy taxes, and we're going to move that on the agenda to 2:00. So, then we'll move to item 47, 8.
Item 48 is the Healthy Partners Program Status Update, Recommendations for Changes to Program Parameters.
Before you start, Sheri, just wanted, we have a lot of speakers signed up for this item. I'm going to be changing the amount of speaker time to two minutes, or if you want to speak for a group, that would be great, so we can hear from everyone. So, I just wanted to let you know, so you can adjust your comments. Thank you. Sheri, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. My name is Sheri Heller. I'm Director of the Department's Health and Human Services Department. Forty-seven of the 58 California counties currently provide some level of healthcare service to undocumented residents. The programs vary in different counties by size and the range of services offered. And of course, starting in May of 2016, the State Department of Healthcare Services began providing full-scope Medigal to undocumented children under age 10. In our county, our program for adults is called Healthy Partners, and it has been a source of very high-quality care, a source of great pride to all of us who have anything to do with this program. It's been welcomed by the patients, by the medical staff, by the administrative staff. We have gone cautiously, stepwise, into implementing this program, because we did not have prior experience with a limited benefit coverage. In other words, some kinds of healthcare are covered, others are not. Last June, during the budget hearings, there was substantial interest in expanding the enrollment parameters of the program, because some of the money that we had budgeted the program was unspent at the end of last year. At that time, the department was not recommending expansion of enrollment in the program, because the service was new. The program had been operating about a year, and in fact, some of the specialty services that we were offering in the program were quite new and just beginning to roll out, and we did not know whether the level of spending could be sustained. So we committed to come back to you with a report and mid-year. I can now say with certainty that we are sustaining the level of spending that was happening last spring, even with the services fully rolled out, and we do have additional funding in the budget. Before I get into exactly what we're proposing to do, I just want to comment briefly on, a little more on the success of the program, so that you know why this is worth doing. I've already told you that there's a great deal of patient and staff satisfaction with the program, but I also want to just tell you, as your Director of Healthcare, what a difference it's making. We had a few patients who presented initially with very debilitating arthritis, who had been treated with, for pain with opiates for a long time, going to federally qualified healthcare centers, never been told what kind of arthritis. In our program, we were able to diagnose four of these with severe rheumatoid arthritis, got them on the correct medication to control their disease. They are off opiates and now walking and participating in their lives again. We had many patients with severe depression, who had developed other kinds of symptomatic complaints, who were going to the emergency room, who are now getting counseling, they're on mood-stabilizing medications, and engaged with long-term providers. We had many, many new diagnoses of diabetes, more than we can count. That improved with education from the primary care doctor and pharmacy interdisciplinary care. Many of the diabetic patients are now not even needing medications, because they've learned how to be healthy. A common cause of stomach pain is a specific kind of infection, which I won't even attempt to pronounce, the name of the infection, but it's chronic and it's painful. We've treated a large portion of our Healthy Partner patients after they've tested positive for this infection, which if left untreated, puts people at risk of stomach cancer. A few of our Healthy Partner patients needed anticoagulation after having a stroke and had abnormal heart rhythms, and they're able now to come to the clinic and get their medications, and be followed up by our pharmacy team. And of course, just to wrap up, something you might expect, but I want to confirm to you, that now that we're doing diagnostic screening for cervical, breast, and colon cancer, we have caught a few early cancer diagnoses in our programs. So I don't think there's any ambiguity about the impact that the program is having. The proposals we, the staff are making at this time, is to expand the enrollment of the program at this point, from 3,000 to 4,000 members, and additionally, to allow up to 200 of those members to be enrollees 65 years or older. Previously, we had capped the age limit for eligibility for the program at age 65, because we didn't know what the cost would be for the older population, and we were moving in a stepwise fashion into this program. We want to make the cost predictable. But it has, it has been traumatizing for all of us, that we have so far at least 10 enrollees who aged out of the program, and so we're no longer providing their healthcare. And we project an additional 10 enrolled in the program who will hit their 65th birthday. So we are recommending an expansion from 3,000 to 4,000 members at this time, and a small pilot in which up to 200 of our enrollees could exceed age 65 years. So we would reach out to the people we disenrolled, to see if they're still otherwise eligible for the program. And we would allow people who are in the program to remain in the program past their 65th birthday going forward, but we would not recommend a policy of older applicants coming into the program at this time. The financial implications of this are that we would take some $280,000 a year that is currently budgeted in the specialty care or medical treatment account, and move it into our clinic services and pharmacy, and provide some additional staffing, and an initial $300,000 worth of specialty care that we project will be needed to, for this 1,000-member increase. our clinic services and pharmacy and provide some additional staffing, and an initial $300,000 worth of specialty care that we project will be needed to, for this 1,000-member increase. Having interacted quite a bit with our stakeholders and advisory group, I know that there's a substantial need out there that's unmet, and the advocacy folks are eager for us to not have caps at all on this program for enrollment. At this time, because we are stepping in a very deliberative fashion, we are recommending the 1,000-member increase for medical, administrative, and budget reasons. The medical reasons-
Could you pause for a second, Sherri?
Certainly.
We have a couple of questions up here.
Okay, I'll pause.
Yeah, Dr. Ho, I just wanted to go back to what you said a moment ago. So, you're not recommending, and obviously it's in the staff report, but for enrolling those that would be 65 or older, obviously there are some limitations on the enrollment anyway. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you do that? You're going to do this kind of pilot of up to 200. We had 10 disenrolled. You expect another 10. So, you're going to hopefully capture those folks back into the program, but why wouldn't you, again, I know what the basis was in the past, but if you're going to do this on this limited, where you would extend, why wouldn't you consider at least some limited enrollment, maybe based upon certain health assessments or so forth? So, I guess I'm kind of curious about that.
I think we want more information about what the costs are going to be and also how we are going to coordinate care for services that are needed but are not covered by our program. We want to understand what the medication costs are going to be, when medicines are not on our formulary. I think the medical team is a little, wants some experience with the older population to determine how they're going to coordinate care that's not covered by our program, whether we're going to get appropriate specialists to volunteer through the Spirit program and so forth. I think it's just a question of getting more experience and getting our hands around it, and our determination to live within the current budget. If that's some-
We're doing that. We're showing up with the surplus the last two and a half years. Obviously, we're going to reinvest that, your expanding enrollment. I mean, it's not like that's been a problem thus far, so, right?
That is correct. So, this is our recommendation, recommendation at this time, and as I was saying, for, for medical, administrative, and budgetary reasons, we're not going farther at this time, and let me just explain what I mean.
Okay.
For medical reasons, as I said, the staff wants some experience with coordination of care for covered and uncovered services. Are we going to get specialists to come forward? What pharmaceuticals are going to be needed, and are we going to have to add them to the formulary? Those kinds of medical questions are on the table. Administrative, we are having more turnover in the enrollment than I think we initially projected. In other words, people move away or they get full coverage elsewhere, and so, we're having quite a bit of turnover, and that is, we want to see what happens to that, that as we expand enrollment. And then, in terms of budget, I think it's just, it's more a question of timing than anything else. We're recommending that we make these program eligibility parameter changes in mid-year. If we made changes that, that we thought might go beyond the budget, we would no doubt take those up at budget time, as opposed to in the middle of the year, we wouldn't ask for the commitment of new funds outside the budget process.
Right. If I just want to follow on then, just as it relates to those 65 and older, I mean, the coordination with specialty care exists for those that are 65 and younger that would be covered, assuming they would enter the program. It may be that there are, you know, compounding factors with the, you know, progression of age, but I guess, why is that seen to be potentially a bigger challenge? I mean, we have that challenge anyway, getting specialty care even for folks that are in the program and even for folks who are covered under, you know, Medicare, Medicare, you know, both. I mean, it's just a challenge in the whole healthcare market. We have professionals in the audience, obviously, and yourself as well, but I just, why would that be? I recognize budgeting maybe going slow for the reasons you've pointed out, but we don't cover hospitalizations under this, and is it, well, my question is why?
It is certainly true that when we initially went into the program, we capped eligibility at age 65 out of concern for hospitalization and pharmaceuticals are the large drivers of cost for the older population. Hospitalization, as you've said, is not covered. I think we want some experience with the pharmaceuticals and specialty care that older individuals require. And, and to be honest, I'm at my limit of medical knowledge here.
Okay.
I'm not that kind of doctor. And there are, there are members of the medical staff here, and perhaps some of them could, could answer your question on that specific point-
Well, anyway, a lot of folks want to speak.
About what their concerns are with coordination of care.
Yeah, thank you.
Have one more question up here, Sherri. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So, I don't, I don't think you answered this, but in the board letter I note, it says unspent funds in the account will go to the county general fund balance. Does that mean it goes just back to the general fund in its totality and not necessarily earmarked for this particular program?
That is correct, but it's my understanding that's the case, not just for this program.
I understand.
But for any county program, if they're unspent funds, they, they may be reallocated to this program in the subsequent year-
Right.
Or not.
Right. So, I guess what I'm asking, or where I'm going with this, is that if we know that the program is successful, we know that the demand is greater than the ability to, to serve, why, why wouldn't we, or why can't we make it a, a decision by this board to have whatever unspent funds there are at the end of the fiscal year go back directly to, to the program to achieve the, the objectives of increasing the availability of the services to even more besides the 4,000 now, and also to, assuming the pilot is going to be successful for those that we would be treating, serving 65 years or older, to expand that, that base as well, and thirdly, to explore the provision of specialty care that is not currently offered.
I think I am not alone among county department heads in saying that there has been some advocacy for that position generally in the past, that if there are unspent funds in any given program's line item, they ought to be reallocated to that program so in the subsequent year, creating an incentive to economize and make the most of the resources. But it's my understanding that the county's policy is that there's no automatic reallocation of such funds and that it's within the board's discretion when, when a budget is adopted.
Supervisor Serna, if I may, Paul Lake, Social Services Agency. When this program first started, we made our best estimate as to what it would cost with really no real knowledge of what it truly would cost. And so, so we, the board allocated our estimate to fund this program, and as we've seen over the course of the few years, within the parameters that we designed the program, we basically overbudgeted. Each year, when we didn't spend that money, it went back to the general fund, as any unspent general fund money does at the end of a fiscal year. And then, if the program is funded at the same level as it was the prior year, then that money effectively becomes reallocated at that level, but it becomes part of the larger general fund pool. That would be the case again this year, if the board wanted to maintain the level of funding and explore how to actually spend that money, that, that would be an option in front of the board. The discussion that we've had with Sherri in the course of developing this recommendation was clearly not made in a vacuum. We wanted to make sure that we looked at it in the context of what the board was going to be looking at in its upcoming budget with regard to potential uses of general fund balance, including this program, which is why we're recommending, let's expand it, let's see how much that expansion costs, see how it impacts, you know, relative to what we've thought it would cost over the past few years and found out that it didn't cost that much. So, all those things were taken into consideration and certainly, you know, through the process of the budgeting, looking at the, the overall fund balance in the general fund, this, this would certainly be something on the, on the discussion list.
I, and I appreciate that. I fully understand it's kind of a broader policy question in terms of how we budget, but here's what I can't reconcile, is that we have the head of our Health and Human Services Department that just got done explaining that the program is so successful that it's catching by way of screening that is now in place, that wasn't in place before the program, indicators for cancer or, you know, full-blown cancer. So, and that's just one example, one disease example. So, I would argue that this is such a needed, required program for an unmet demand in Sacramento County that this board ought to make the, the decision. I'm not sure we can do it here today. I would hope that we could, but I don't know whether it's part of what, what can be acted upon based on the noticing of the item. But it seems to me, if, if we're having that kind of success, and it's as profound a success as keeping people from dying, why the heck would we not want to set for ourselves a policy objective to make sure that we are maximizing in any fiscal year the use of funds to continue that success? It doesn't make much sense to me that we wouldn't do that.
The best I can do to address your point is to say that we've noticed an item having to do with changing the eligibility parameters, but not with changing the budget level. It's kind of a breakthrough, actually, that we are coming to saying, let's optimize the use of the budgeted funds by making the eligibility changes at mid-year. But, but within that, the eligibility parameters decisions have been noticed. The, a budget augmentation has not been noticed, and so, the only thing I would caution you is that if you make eligibility parameter changes that risk exceeding the budget, there's no provision for that.
No, I think, all I'm really saying, and I don't think it's a lot, is, or asking for, is that we acknowledge that we're going to spend our budget every year, down to zero, to maximize the access of the, of the program, the, the access for folks perhaps even above the 1,000 and perhaps more than the limited number of 65-plus that we're going to set as a pilot objective. I don't think that's unreasonable. I'm simply saying, let's spend what we budget for.
Certainly, the board's discretion.
I'd like to move on with the presentation.
I think I've finished what I prepared to say. I'll stay around if there are other questions that come up. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. And we have over 25 speakers on this issue, so I, as I mentioned, it'll be a two-minute limit. If you are here with a group and you can speak for the group and ask them all to stand and say they support your position, that would allow us to hear from everyone today. So, thank you for your efforts towards that. First is Amy Williams, then Ben Hudson, then Farah Shaheer. Amy Williams?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Williams, Deputy Director of Legal Services of Northern California, also one of the attorneys working with Building Healthy Communities, 90,000 strong in South Sacramento. I think most importantly, we're a part of the Healthy Partners Advisory Group and Board, and we've been in front of you numerous times, including your Chief of Staff. We suggested this program, the BHC did, in June of 2014, so we see ourselves as experts, as folks that suggested it, and then attend the advisory group meetings, and we hope you see us as such. We have looked at the budget, the enrollment, the demographics. We've heard from the medical providers, the hospital systems, EHS, and this is helping real people and alleviating pain. And twice, the Healthy Partners Advisory Group has suggested this change. So, we did it in 2016, and nobody seemed to care, and then we did it again in December, where we suggested as a group with hospital providers, the actual community said, this is what we want to do. And we have said over and over again that we think that the cap should be lifted, and I will tell you why. So, the cap should be lifted because this is a limited benefit program, so there's no risk that we're going to have overspending. The Healthy Partners staff should have the ability with the Healthy Partners Advisory Group to adjust enrollment as they see fit and not oversee their, overspend their budget. So, responding to a little bit of what we've gone through, we are against any sort of discriminatory cap on folks over the age of 65. I think we share some of the same concerns. We would never agree to any sort of compromise on that. It just doesn't make sense to us. And the pilot idea of 20 people showing spending for the program is just not a good pilot. 200, if you want to get to 200 for age 65, you're going to have to open it up to new enrollees. And finally, I, I, well, finally, I'm done, sorry, but I want everybody who's here in support of this to actually stand up. Maybe they'll cut down. So, all the folks that are here with BHC and other organizations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ben Hudson, Farah Shaheer, Sarah Teasdale.
Hi, my name is Ben Hudson. I am an organizer with the Health Access Action Team and also Executive Director at Gender Health Center here in Sacramento. First, I want to say that, you know, I want to uplift those living at the intersection of oppression in our society, including transgender and queer folks who are, who may also be undocumented and then are experiencing further health disparities. Next, I want to say, you know, what you already have in your hand, I'm one of the signees to the letter that you, that you have. Clearly, we support that we need to, I mean, add 1,000, but if we're talking here today about lifting the cap, let's do that work. And, you know, it's, it's an act of disrespect to the elders in our community that we would create somehow an arbitrary 65-year, you know, marker when it's, we know that these are folks who are left out of Medicare and won't be aging into getting care under that. And so, I'd also like to say that, you know, you've had a year off from this. You haven't, this board has not done anything on this subject in 2017. In June, we were here and we had a discussion. We showed up with just this many people or more, and we spoke as passionately as you're hearing from us today, and not a single comment from your board was had on the subject. Instead, it was spoken much more about, about dogs and cats, as you were hearing about the county shelters at that time. I hope that you'll take this much time, as you did, to discuss trash and recycling. And I'd also, you know, like to point out that because of that year-long delay, you keep saying we want to gather more and more information, and that's what you're hearing today. And, you know, we cannot continue to do that on the backs of folks. When you hear the word cost, I want you to hear the word cost of lives, not cost of money any longer, because that's what's clearly happening. There's no more research that has to be done, other than understanding that people are dying on the waiting list and their health concerns are compounding. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Farah Shaheer, Sarah Teasdale, and Jesse Boitia.
Hi, I'm not Farah. I'm Sarah Teasdale. I'm going after her, but I'm going to actually take a moment. I'm one of the primary care doctors at the Sacramento County Health Center. I'm also faculty at UC Davis in the Internal Medicine Department. I'd like to take a moment to point out Farah and six of her co-internal medicine residents who practice and have their primary care clinics at the Sacramento County Health Center, and their patients are in the Healthy Partners Program. This program has been instrumental for their training and for helping them to develop, become the advocates for the underserved in health in the future. I'm going to let each of them tell their stories, their stories of their patients and how this program has not only impacted them as physicians and citizens, but also as advocates. So, there you go.
Farah Shaheer?
Okay, yeah. Hi, so my name is Dr. Shaheen, and I'm one of the second-year Internal Medicine Residents here at UC Davis. And as Dr. Teasdale mentioned, I'm also part of the primary care track and have had really the privilege to be able to work with the medically understaffed population. Truly, to be able to build connections with people from all parts of life has been a joy for me. And as part of my commitment to the medically understaffed, I'm here today to request the expansion of the Healthy Partners Program so that more individuals can have access to care. Really, by being able to expand primary care services to all, together we can promote healthier communities, and I think at a different level, also save money and improve outcomes over the long term. So, as an example, I had a patient, a 39-year-old woman, who I admitted to the hospital about a month ago with abdominal pain, and she had also been having ongoing blood in her bowel movements as well. And eventually, during her stay, she was found to have stage IV colon cancer. So, what that means is the cancer had spread all over her body, past being the point of being treatable, and she would die from this cancer. And so, upon talking to her, I learned that when she first started to have blood in her bowel movements, she knew that something was amiss, but she didn't have health insurance to be able to see a doctor. She went to the emergency room a couple of times for this, but her symptoms were not considered significant enough to warrant further testing at that time. So, if this patient had access to primary care and subsequent care via health insurance, she would still be alive today. And it really broke my heart, not only hearing her story, but to be telling this to all of you. If we expand Healthy Partners, more individuals who are truly just like you and me can have access to doctors, and not only can together we can save lives, but again, at a different level, it'll ultimately save money, because people will be able to be seen sooner for their health concerns, rather than going to the emergency room, which, as you know, is more costlier. And so, overall, I do appreciate your assistance in hearing me and all of us in expanding Healthy Partners to be, to enroll more individuals, so that together we can work together to make truly a difference for individuals from all walks of life. And again- And again, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Jesse Guaytia, and then Melody Tran. And then Annie, either Tat or Taft? Taff.
Thank you all for having me today. My name is Dr. Jesse Guaytia. I am a third-year resident at UC Davis Medical Center, also working at the Primary Care Center on Stockton and Broadway. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of my patients, and I'd like to just share a brief story of a patient that I saw recently in clinic. This patient, Diana, 46-year-old woman, mother of three, arrived to the U.S. several years ago as an undocumented immigrant, had been to several free clinics in the area but had never really established with a primary physician, and she came to me with mostly complaints of fatigue, excessive thirst, frequent need to go to the bathroom for urination, and really having to get up in the middle of the night multiple times to use the restroom. Ultimately, through routine screening, we diagnosed her with diabetes. And I know that diabetes is a common disease, but maybe a lot of people aren't familiar with the complications related to it. Working at the Med Center, I see lots of patients that are hospitalized, either on the regular general medicine floors or in the ICU, people who end up on dialysis, people who need limb amputations as a result of poor control of this disease. And the cost associated is tremendous, as you all know. Thankfully, these, these things can be prevented through routine care, routine screening, and medical therapy. And I'm proud to say that my patient is achieving good glucose control and has no evidence of end organ damage at this time. But I come before you today to ask that you expand the eligibility to the Healthy Partners Program and utilize these funds that have already been allocated to the program to reach more members of these vulnerable communities in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Tran. Annie Taff, and David Ramirez.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Melody Tran, and I'm a third-year Internal Medicine Resident at UC Davis. Three years ago, I stood before you as a graduating medical student and advocated for the implementation of the Healthy Partners Program. And since then, I've had the precious opportunity to be a primary care doctor for many, many undocumented patients, so thank you for making that possible. And today, I wanted to share with you a story about Teresa. Teresa had uncontrolled diabetes, and she worked three jobs just so that she could afford to pay out-of-pocket for her insulin, which was about $500 a month. Sometimes she would run out of her insulin on those weeks as she just couldn't afford it. And during that time, she would end up in the hospital, in the ICU, with diabetic ketoacidosis, which is a condition where your sugars are so high, you start to have all your organs shut down, and she could die. Teresa had watched her mother die of a heart attack and her father die of a stroke, so she knew the risks of having longstanding uncontrolled diabetes, and she didn't want to leave her four children without a mother. So, when Teresa first came to clinic for the first time and found out that the Healthy Partners Program would provide her with insulin, with needles, with test strips, and with an entire care team to help take care of her health, she was just crying, tears of joy. And for the first time, she felt empowered with the tools and the support to take care of her health. And I know that there are more people out there who are just like Teresa that we can help. So, I urge you to lift the enrollment cap for the Healthy Partners Program and the age restriction as well, because together, I really think that we can not only save money and keep people out of the hospital, but we can save lives.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Annie Taff. Then David Ramirez, and Alexandra Fernandez-Garcia, and then Rhonda Rios Kravitz.
Hello, my name is Annie Tat. I'm a registered nurse working in Sacramento County, and as a healthcare provider, I feel like in many ways, I'm also a public servant, because I have a moral obligation to do the best I can by my patients, by the people of Sacramento County. Healthy Partners is something that we've been fighting for, for a long time. I was here in March of 18, 2015 workshop, when we had over 400 people show up for this program, and we're so happy that the county had passed and it's been thriving. We now have two years of data worth, and it shows that this is saving lives, that this is benefiting the county and all, and all of our, and all of your districts and all your constituents. And so, I'm hoping, and we're, we're all here, to hope that you'll lift the enrollment cap, because other county departments allocate a set budget, and they serve people until the money runs out, just as Supervisor Phil Serna was asking previously. So, currently, at least one person has already died on the waitlist, and many more are there waiting to be served. And so, as, as a healthcare professional, as a public servant, I hope that you will continue on and lift the age cap and make sure that there's no age discrimination for Healthy Partners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Ramirez. Then Alexandra Fernandez-Garcia, and Rhonda Rios Kravitz. And I just wanted to say before you start, we are going to move items 49 and 50 to 2:00 if anyone is here on those items. 49 and 50 will be at 2:00. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you. I'm David Ramirez. I am the Treasurer on the Board of Sacramento Act and also on the Healthy Partners Advisory Group. And I have come before you on numerous occasions to advocate for this program, and it is one of the great thrills of my life to see how very well it has worked out for so many people. It is a, a very important program, and you see people behind me who are a testament to the importance of this program to the Sacramento community. And second, it is a, it is a quality program. It has worked out to be a very good program despite its limitations to 3,000 people. But it's been explained to us by the administration of Healthy Partners that they may not see the 3,000 first person or the 3,000 second person regardless of, of their staffing and the money that they have left over in the budget without your authorization. And I, I ask you to lift the cap. I'd like to see it just gone, but an additional 1,000 people is a lot of people. We know there's a need for them. We have a waiting list of over 300 people anxious to, to get the benefits of this program. And secondly, as to those 65 and over, and coming from the perspective of Sacramento Act, which is Area Congregations Together, a faith-based organization, I find it unconscionable to deny people age 65 and up these basic services, these public services that restore quality of life, that in fact save lives, literally save lives of people who are seen for the, the sin of turning 65, or 66, or 67. And I'm sure they use a little more or a little different drugs, but when you're 66, 65, they're not that much different than when you're 64, 63. We need to see the people. That's what the program is for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Alexandra Fernandez-Garcia, and Dr. Rhonda Rios Kravitz, and then Shira Johnson, I think.
Hi, buenas tardes. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge the indigenous land that we stand on, namely the nations of the Pomo, the Mewak, the Maidu, and other First Nations peoples, whose memories have been attempted to be colonized out of our collective memory. I honor them. My name is Alejandra Fernandez-Garcia. I work for the Sacramento City Unified School District as a youth and family mental health advocate. I work with students and families. I want to tell you the story today of a mother who is dying currently of ovarian cancer that works two jobs to support her three children, or the father whose fingers were severed off during work building the very infrastructure of our city, who went to an emergency room and whose fingers were discarded and who left the emergency room patched up and sent off on his way. And then we wonder why our students in our district are chronically absent or are having serious health concerns themselves. So, I ask that you please play your part in stopping the intergenerational trauma, that we value our elders, and that we value the very families that build this very place we call home. These families deserve human rights. Health is not, access to health services is not a privilege, but a human right. Lifting the enrollment cap and ending the age discrimination will not just impact individuals and families, but generations, generations in our community. So, I ask you today, what will your responsibility be to those future generations? Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Rios Kravitz, or Rios, I'm sorry, Shira Johnson, and Gabriel Agueyo.
Thank you, Chairwoman Susan Peters, and Board members for allowing me to testify today. I represent Alianza, which is a Sacramento immigrant rights group, and I have to say that a number of our members could not testify today for fear of even stepping into a building like this. We strongly support removing the 3,000-patient hard cap as well as the age 64 hard cap. Healthy Partners administrators can allocate their resources to more fully serve the community if authorized to do so. There is no need to constrain Healthy Partners with an arbitrary cap on the number of their patients or discriminate against seniors with an arbitrary age gap. These caps have become an impediment to maximizing services. Also, the lack of access to health care for undocumented immigrants is first and foremost an ethical issue grounded in the humanist view that all human beings have a basic right to health care. Undocumented Sacramento's are students, mothers, fathers, neighbors, and community members. Overall, in the state, undocumented members contribute $300 billion to our state's economy and are essential part of the state's workforce. We strongly urge the county to follow the lead of the Health for All campaign, which is helping to drive a dialogue to move our health care system to one that is inclusive of all Californians, regardless of their immigration status, one that provides better access and quality of care for undocumented immigrants. The future and well-being of undocumented immigrants and the nation as a whole lies in the hands of policymakers like yourselves, whose influential roles can establish health policy reform to expand equitable access to health care for all. We urge you to do the right thing by removing the 3,000-patient hard cap as well as the age 64 hard cap. This will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. China Johnson, Gabriel, you're going to have to help me pronounce that, Agueyo, and Juan. I'll have to get to the last name in a minute. I'm sorry.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. Shiva Johnson. I'm a third-year resident physician at the UC Davis Medical System, and I am internal medicine-trained. I've worked with the Healthy Partners Program since inception over two years ago, and I want to describe why we should expand the program and eliminate the age cap of 64-years and older. So, I currently care for a husband and a wife, and the husband is 64-years-old and is at risk for losing his eligibility. In the past, he suffered a stroke, and as a result, he no longer can use his right hand or arm, and he cannot speak either. I am currently treating his blood pressure and his anticoagulation for his atrial fibrillation, which is vital to preventing another possibly even more debilitating stroke. And I'm worried, because in the next few months, he could possibly lose his eligibility and not have access to the blood pressure, or blood pressure monitoring and anticoagulation that he needs. Another stroke would result in a long hospitalization and would increase the care burden on his wife, who would then no longer be able to work or pay for his medications. Expanding the Healthy Partners Program and eliminating the age gap would allow for me to continue caring for my patients and their family members and prevent medical complications that result in expensive hospitalizations with elderly patients. So, I urge the consideration of continuing the Healthy Partners Program and eliminating the age gap. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Gabriel Agueyo, then Juan Malaspin, and Guadalupe Ferreira.
Good afternoon. So, my name is Gabriel Awayo.
Awayo, okay, thank you, sorry.
So, no, it's fine. So, I'm a community health worker with Pathways to Health and Home under Sacramento Cover. I am actually sharing a story today about a client. He and his wife suffer from diabetes, and they're unable to see a doctor, and their health is affected. They are parents of three children, and their poor health have had an impact on their children. Their lives depend on receiving access to health, to the Healthy Partners Program, and that's why I'm here. For Sacramento, it's better when all Sacramento families have health care. Please lift the enrollment cap on the Healthy Partners Program and end the age discrimination on our elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan, then Guadalupe Ferreira, and Claudia Martin, and Adela Recio.
Good morning, still good morning. My name is Juan Malaspin. I'm a patient navigator for Sacramento Cover. I work in the hospital, Mercy Folsom, and what I do is we help patients with education and providing guidance about encountering, you know, finding a provider, a health care provider. First thing I want to say is, I want to thank you. I want to thank the board, because you have taken the right decision two years ago. A right decision of being part of this beautiful enterprise that we would call Healthy Partners that has helped so many people. So, I want you to feel embraced by all of those who have saved their lives or has been able to be alive because of your decision. So, I want to be positive in that sense. Also, how much is too many? Do we ask that question sometimes? For the Holocaust, they say, how much is too many? How many were we able to save? We have the power to save with so little, and it makes sense, like Mr. Serna said, makes sense to expand the program. It makes sense to include people who are 65. I have many stories about patients that have been going to the emergency, losing their limbs because simple, they don't have anything, they don't have medicine. But thank you so much, and I know you're going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Guadalupe?
Good morning, this is Guadalupe Ferreira, ED Health Navigator, and I'm here to share with you a story, as many stories have been shared. I'm in the frontline seeing the real struggles. So, I have a patient being in Healthy Partners Program. She was able to receive and manage her diabetes, but then she went over the 65, she passed the 65, 55, 65 years, and now she wasn't able to afford her insulin for $500 that she had to pay now. So, that stopped her care. So, Sacramento is better when all Sacramento families have health care. Please lift the enrollment cap on the Healthy Partners Program and end the age discrimination in our elderly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Claudia. I'm a patient navigator at, with Sacramento Cover, and I work at a local ER. I'm just going to speak briefly about a patient. I'm always worried and scared about becoming seriously ill. I do not have access to see a doctor and no coverage of any type. I wish to get into the Healthy Partners Program so I can finally see a doctor, receive regular checkups, and no longer carry the fear of being, being at risk of something serious. This is a story of, this is just one of many stories that I hear every day working in an ER. Preventative care is key, and it's difficult at times that I do receive these stories, and knowing that there, that the Healthy Partners Program does exist, but because of the enrollment cap, I can't, I can refer them, but they're put on a waitlist. So, for today, I do ask that, please lift the enrollment cap and age the discrimination on elderly. Thank you.
Adela? Then Dushania Adams, and I think it's Karina Garcia?
Good morning, I'm Adela Recio. I'm a health navigator with Sacramento Cover, and today I want to share a story of one of the clients. He's been sick for three months, and he hasn't been able to see a promoted doctor. He has missed much work due to his health problems that he lost his job. His quality of life and the life of his family has been affected both financially and emotionally. Access to care with the Healthy Partners Program will allow him to manage his health and find employment. and find employment. Please lift the enrollment cap on the Healthy Partners Program and end the discrimination on elderly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dashania. I'm a health navigator with Sacramento Covered, sharing a short story about a client. She didn't have any health insurance, health coverage, and ended up in the emergency room for back pain. She had no way to see a doctor, no other options. Access to care with the Healthy Partners Program would have prevented her from using ER resources for what would have been a minor issue. Sacramento is better when all Sacramento families have healthcare. Please lift the enrollment cap on Healthy Partners Program to end age discrimination on our elderly.
Thank you. Karina Garcia, Keiko Torres, Steve Orklin. Now Steve, I have only three more comment cards, so if there's someone who hasn't signed up to speak, now is the time.
It's afternoon now. My name is Karina Garcia. I'm a health navigator with Sacramento Covered, and I'm sharing a story today about a client. He has a number of serious conditions that have caused him to lose his job and depend on his girlfriend financially. His pain is so crippling that it prevents him from looking for work. Access to care would make him feel whole again and give him the independence to support himself. Both his physical and mental health has been affected by his struggle to receive proper care. Sacramento is better when all Sacramento families have healthcare. Please lift the enrollment cap on the Healthy Partners Program and end the age discrimination on elderly. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. And Keiko Torres?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Keiko Torres, and I'm a community activist, organizer, and certified enrollment counselor for the Gender Health Center. As an enrollment counselor, it is disheartening when I have to tell community members that they do not, that they have limited options. The enrollment cap makes it difficult to even refer community members to Healthy Partners, knowing that they will be on a long waitlist and not get access to care. It is soul-crushing to then tell them that there are no options for their elderly mothers, fathers, grandparents. In addition, let me tell you about a new mother who just gave birth to a happy, healthy baby. Not only is she concerned for her child's well-being, but she is concerned for her own health. She lives with a fear of getting sick and not having the coverage to see a doctor. She has no sense of security and stresses the possibility of not being able to be the best parent to her child. Access to care with the Healthy Partners Program would truly ensure that she stays in good health. I'm here to ask you to lift the enrollment cap for the Healthy Partners Program and end the age discrimination so that we can have a healthier and more compassionate Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Orkin, Miri Valdez, and Linda Kuruhara, and Pamela Anderson. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Orkand, and I'm a chairman of your Public Health Advisory Board, and I'm coming here also to support the proposed expansion of the Healthy Partners Program. Our board has been very fortunate to hear updates on Healthy Partners since its inception, including the annual report from fiscal year 2016, 2017. At the beginning, we were inspired by the creative thinking at the core of this project. It was clear that you, the Board of Supervisors, recognized that a large undocumented population with no regular access to medical care was a public health problem impacting the entire community. Though limited in scope, your success in providing care to 3,000 individuals has been admirable. We've also been impressed that this is a community effort calling upon diverse segments of our medical community as well as advocacy groups, such as La Familia and Sacramento Covered. Healthy Partners, which is a public health experiment for the County of Sacramento, has functioned well within budget, supporting the thought, the idea that thoughtful, stepwise planning can minimize the risk even in an area as complex as medical care. The current proposal from the Department of Health and Human Services continues that tradition of thoughtful and measured programming. We believe that Healthy Partners has the capacity to expand, that the financial risk is low, and that there is a continuing, clear public health benefit. We are particularly happy that DHHS has addressed the need to allow continued coverage for participants once they reach the age of 65. We understand that there is a cap proposed, and have you heard that cap is quite controversial? My understanding is that the cap should accommodate patients who are currently aging out of the program and perhaps some more. Ultimately, you'll need to consider the larger question of what to do about the elderly. And there is plenty of research out there in the various medical groups that will give you some indication of the cost of providing care for those in that age group.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
I will. On behalf of P Hab, I just hope that you will support this proposal.
Thank you. Miri Valdez, then Linda Kuruhara, Pamela Anderson, and Lindsay Coat. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Miri Valdez. I'm here representing Health Access California. We are the statewide consumer health advocacy coalition fighting for quality, affordable coverage for all Californians. Our diverse coalition is made up of consumer groups, faith-based organizations, organized labor, communities of color, seniors, persons with disabilities, among many others. Several state audits have found challenges and barriers to access stemming from a lack of access to primary and specialty care and limited investment from counties to provide care for those ineligible for federally funded programs. Sacramento's low-income and undocumented populations have the worst access to primary care providers, among the worst access to primary care providers in the entire state. Health Access California is here because our county programs are the state's safety net for our vulnerable communities who don't have access to care through other programs. And as discussed by advocates and community members before me, expanding the program is cost-efficient. It's a limited benefit program, and it will not cost the county additional monies. Our health system is stronger and more cost-efficient when we detect and prevent conditions early. As you know, we should not have people resorting to emergency rooms for care. It's the most expensive form of care, and it doesn't appropriately treat the conditions that people have. Expanding the Healthy Partners Program is essential to ensure a healthy Sacramento and ensure everyone in our state, including the most vulnerable, have access to healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Kuruhara?
Hi, I'm Linda Kuruhara, and I'm representing Sacramento Act. I'm a member at St. Arch United Methodist Church in Sacramento. I'd like to give a personal story, not in Sacramento County, but of an undocumented immigrant who was a member of our church in another county. And she thought she was pregnant again. She had 12, she had eight children and thought she was pregnant again, and lived a mile from the hospital, and because of the emergency, did not go, thinking she was pregnant and died of poison from appendicitis. A year later, her husband died and left these eight, nine children to fend for themselves from five years all the way up to 21 at the time. So, it's important. I applaud all of you for starting this program, and it needs to be expanded. And the three points I'd like to ask for you today is to lift the enrollment cap, and the enrollment cap, and also to not have any age discrimination. We would like to see this implemented as soon as we can, and to spend the budget that we have. And if we have to spend more, then next year, come forward and say, "Let's add more to the budget." It's a very needed program. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Anderson?
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Anderson. I'm a, so did you call Pamela Anderson the name?
Yes.
Just wanted to check. So I wasn't, I couldn't quite hear. So I'm Reverend Dr. Pamela.
You're the real Pamela Anderson.
I am. I know. There you go. So there you go. So I'm Reverend Dr. Pam.
Gammers are rolling.
That's right. That's right. So Reverend Dr. Pamela Anderson with the Sacramento Presbyterian, I'm the moderator. I also work at Trinity Episcopal Cathedral, and I am with Sacramento Act, which is Sacramento Area Congregations Together. One of the things that's really important for ministers and clergy all across the board is we are at the front lines of people coming to us for their needs, and a lot of that at times is their healthcare. And to be able to direct people to get the services that they need, this would really help us if the cap were lifted, and also the cap lifted not also for enrollment, but also for the age. Before I was at the cathedral, I was a country pastor and working with a lot of undocumented workers in the rural farming territories. And there was a woman that came to me who was so excited because she said, "You know, I am 50 years old, and I finally got my first mammogram." So these are our brothers and sisters. They are human beings, so it is our moral right to be able to take care of one another. In the scriptures, it says, "Am I my brother's keeper?" And I say, "Yes, we are. We are our brothers and sisters' keepers." And it was, as what was mentioned before, is that these are mothers, these are fathers. These are, these are people who want to be able to live full and healthy lives with their families. So we're pleading with you to lift the caps on both. So being a preacher, I could say, "Lift the cap on the enrollment and lift the cap on the age." And we had asked for this. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Last speaker is Lindsay Coat.
My name is Lindsay Coat. I'm the Director of Programs for the Sierra Sacramento Valley Medical Society. We represent about 3,600 physicians in the Sacramento region, and I am also a member of the Healthy Partners Advisory Committee. We absolutely want to support the Sacramento County staff's recommendation to raise the enrollment for the Healthy Partners Program, and wanted to pledge to you all that our Spirit Program, our staff members that are here today, our volunteer physicians, we will continue to provide specialty consultation services, surgeries, vision exams, and glasses to patients in the Healthy Partners Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay was the last speaker I have. Don't see anybody waving at me, so we'll move to board comments. Anyone? Mr. Serna?
Thank you. First of all, let me express my gratitude to everyone that took time out of their busy days, especially the young doctors out of their rotations, to be here today. This reminds me of a few years back when many of you were here when this board voted unanimously to establish this program after a long drought of having absolutely no health care services for folks in Sacramento County regardless of their immigration status. I'm really very proud and very pleased with the program. We've heard from a number of the component parts that make it such a great success, including the Spirit representatives and folks on our advisory board, so I want to thank them as well. I'm certainly prepared to move the staff recommendation, reminding folks again that this is progress. Maybe it's not as fast as some of us would like, but this is measured progress. It's a 33% increase in the volume of those that would be seen, which to me is not incidental, as was conveyed by many speakers. There are a number of stories, and hopefully we'll continue to have more of those when we hear from you probably next year, about people getting early screening and catching disease before it progresses. And those are the most inspiring words and narratives that I can tell you do affect at least this board member. What I would like to suggest, though, a little deviation from the recommendation, and it goes back to my earlier concerns and comments, is that I would like us to, I'm going to move supportive of the board, the staff recommendation. I'm still very interested in adding to the action, though, making sure that we spend down the budget in its entirety for the duration of the fiscal year. And what I would suggest, unless there are other recommendations or suggestions by either staff or the board members, is that we prioritize the, any unspent funds to maximize over and above the 200 for the 65 and older that we're piloting. So if we, you know, we leave it up to our staff to measure this or to gauge it as we go through the fiscal year, but at some point, if we are up against the 200 limitation on the cap for the 65-plus that we are serving, and we have unspent funds available, that we don't let that restrict us. In other words, we can go, you know, 250 or 300 if we didn't have, if we had that much left. That's where I think I'm hearing certainly from the advocates, that there's many priorities, but that seems to be the one that is resonating with most, and I would agree with that. So assuming that that is legally something that I can propose, given the noticing of this item, I would like to make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Mr. Kennedy?
Well, as is usually the case, Mr. Serna, you beat me to the punch, and the chair beat me to the punch in seconding that, so I don't have a lot more to add.
Oh, keep it short then, right?
Yes. I don't have a lot to add, except for the fact that I am extremely proud of the work that we've done here. It's something that four years ago, you know, a lot of us promised to our community that we would resurrect. It's not nearly enough. We recognize that, but we're making progress, and thank you all for being here today.
Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know folks were in a hurry to make a motion. I was going to offer something a little broader. It may not find favor here, but I do think after certainly having heard only some of the stories, but certainly to have, you know, examined this, and I think one of the approaches obviously has been to, you know, do this in a way that is prudent but also reach as many people as possible. And with the large carryovers, and I think reflecting on the, because it's clearly in a resolution, and this is where I, again, I think that we at least have a little more discussion around the motion, that we're not proposing to change the practice of issuing automatic denial to anyone who's 65 years or older at the time of application. And I think that in looking at this, we should, as a part of the pilot, to allow for a number if we want to have a cap, that's one thing, but I think that to allow for folks to enter, that'd be considered entry. That automatic denial, from what I've heard, certainly concerns me, and I think continuing, obviously, so we don't disenroll folks, that is of great concern, and a couple of the physicians here spoke to that earlier about what that means to folks. But I, for one, think that, again, we have limitations. We aren't unlimited in the funding availability, but I would certainly be willing to entertain and would want to offer as a friendly amendment that we allow within that, and to your point, Mr. Serna, and it was seconded by the chair, that if there was funds, that we would be able to go beyond the 200, but recognize that 200 is a part of the 4,000. It's not an additive. And I guess I, for one, would be willing to certainly consider that pool of folks in a context where, and maybe we add it to the 4,000, and we talk about 4,200, but we allow for folks to make application. Now, there may be a cap, and there may still be a waiting list. We continue current enrollees and those that underfit the criteria, but I, for one, think it's time for us to look at admitting folks who are 65 years of age or older at the time of application. So I would offer that. Again, we can talk about how we do that. it's time for us to look at admitting folks who are 65 years, years of age or older at the time of application. So, I would offer that. I don't, again, we can talk about how we do that, the framework, again, not to have that unlimited, but I certainly would, would be willing to offer that today.
Yeah, I'm receptive to that. I do have a question, though, given that friendly amendment of Dr. Heller. So, given the amendment that Supervisor Natoli just mentioned, I guess my, my only concern, and maybe you can explain my concern away here, is if we were to do as he has suggested, how, what are the mechanics of that? How, how would it work? Would we have now a group of 4,000 that is just 64 or 65, and I guess 64 and lower? And what if we don't spend everything for the additional 200, that is, the pilot for 65 plus? Would we, if we had additional budget, would we just go past the 200 for that age group?
Well, I guess what-
I guess I'm just looking for some understanding about the, the amendment.
Yeah, well, what I was suggesting is that you, again, you re-enroll those that have been discontinued. Obviously, they would be the first in line. Secondly, that then we would take applications, and you would have this continuing population, so you wouldn't automatically be disenrolled. And I heard numbers of 10 and 10. That's what Sherry said. I heard, I saw some other numbers in the communication. But that's only 10% of the 200, using your numbers, if I correctly quote them, Dr. Heller. But I guess I would be willing to, as a part of this, what I've offered is that we take applications. And you can-
Just keep it so open. Basically, do away with the age limit?
Yeah, up to, up to, up to the, up to the cap. Basically, the folks can, will stay enrolled. You'll re-enroll those that have been discontinued and-
So, up, up the total amount to 4,200 and do away with the age cap?
Right, right. Yes, that would be, that's correct.
What, knowing what we know about the propensity of older patients to utilize the program, what, what can we expect based on two years, two and a half years of data in terms of any big C changes and who's getting, who's going to use it and who's not going to be able to have access to it anymore? Is that, is that a legitimate concern in terms of-
It's a legitimate concern, and I'm having difficulty answering your question because, in fact, we haven't served those people, and so we don't have data on the basis of which we can say what will happen. We don't know how many people above 65 will, will sign up. And we don't know the cost of coordinating their care. Now, that being said, it's certainly true that the 10 who have disenrolled and the 10 we project to disenroll will not approach the 200. And so, I'm, I'm not dismayed by, by the notion that it'll, it'll bust the program. But, but I wouldn't want to uncap it entirely above the 200 until we know what it's going to cost. And I, I feel obligated to say that, that there are implications for staff in going into next year's budget. Because with an older population, there's more coordination of care. There may be more pharmaceutical and pharmacy implications. And so, we're venturing into territory here that will have implications for the, for next year's budget that are not taken into account in the staff proposal.
Is there any risk that, for instance, with the limited data that we have, that, for instance, pregnant women, patients would, would have some limited access if we had a flood of more geriatric patients? I mean, I hate to think in terms of these trade-offs, but, but we're working with a finite number.
I don't, I'm not alarmed by that prospect, but we would want to monitor closely who is on the waiting list. In other words, if we're taking first come, first served on the waiting list, and there is a rush of elderly patients coming onto the waiting list, there could eventually be that problem. Probably not in the short term, given the size of the program.
I think a better option might be to wait, and this is a pilot program, and come back to us at the appropriate time and see about adding this many additional older patients, what it does, the cost.
Supervisor Peters, one of the items that we do have, we are going to report back in June budget on what the cost implications are, and we're going to come back to you again this time.
So, that's five months away.
Five months, and we're going to come back to you in six months again to give you status on where we are, what kind of trends the department's seeing.
We, we have a waiting list, do we not?
We do. It varies across time, but it's generally in the neighborhood of about 300 people. And, but I caution you that that's not an indicator of need. We have great partners, Sacramento covered, La Familia, and they're managing their referrals knowing that, how distressing it would be to be on a waiting list too long. So, I think we would, we would end up working very closely with those partners. We have a terrific relationship to, to manage the referral process so that we don't have to make the kind of choices you just suggested.
I was just going to ask, what do we know about the characteristics of those that are on the waiting list? Is it any different than the population that is receiving the service? Their age, just demographics?
I don't, I don't have that knowledge. We could, we could probably take a look and come up with some information.
If I could, it would seem to me that since you're going to be back at these junctures in five months in budget and six months from there, as you pointed out, Mr. Gell, that with the ability to enroll, again, recognizing we have strong partners, we're not just, you know, it's not just, you know, of folks, you know, showing up and deciding they want to sign up. There's obviously people who are looking at their, their particular diagnosis and what their need is and so forth, and recognizing that we would still have a cap, but I, but rather than just having an automatic denial because you're 65 years of age, I guess I, I see us having the ability, even in this five-month realm, to see what that looks like, to get some experience behind it, and certainly be back this time next year to, again, reexamine that, and-
Then what if we have to say that, bring people off the list? I mean, that's that horrible choice that Sherry was mentioning.
But you're not kicking anybody off. You're expanding in any way that we're being looking, looking at here. It's just you're saying that, that those that are seniors under the 65 classification would be now be entered into that mix. Now, and if, and if the waiting list gets bigger, then we're going to have to take a look at that, or we will take a look at that. But I, I think the time has come for us to not just do an automatic denial for 65 years of age, so that's my view.
Mr. Frost?
Dr. Heller, I have a couple of questions regarding the money flow. I, I wasn't here in 2016 when this was initiated, but my understanding is that this is a Medi-Cal reimbursed program.
It is not.
It is not. So, this comes from our general fund, all of it. And when you were talking about, you're talking about reimbursing for medical expenses at a doctor's clinic's emergency rooms. Are we, how are we calculating the amount that we would reimburse? For instance, insurance or Medi-Cal oftentimes doesn't reimburse the actual cost. So, how is that, how do we calculate that?
The, the primary care and, and integrated behavioral health care services that are part of Healthy Partners are provided in our own primary care center, as opposed to at other federally qualified health care. They have their own funding mechanisms. So, it's not a question of reimbursing for those services. The specialty services we are paying for out of our budget, or they are donated by the spirit and the hospitals and the volunteers who want to see the program succeed. The emergencies are not covered. We have certain pharmaceuticals that are covered on our formulary and others that are not. So, it's a partial benefit.
So, when you, you said you had, you didn't want to max it out because you were, you didn't know what the ancillary services would be associated with the primary care. So, there, there are out, there are other services like, like pharmaceuticals or vitamins or whatever education that's covered under this pot of money as well? Is that correct?
Yes, there are some specialty services that are not. And since we, we haven't had the, the experience with the senior population, you know, we are the health department. We do have senior and adult services. So, we have, we're not ignorant of the needs of the population, and that's partially why we're moving in a stepwise fashion. But there's, the, the wanting to have experience with seniors, to see who will step forward when they need services that we don't cover in our program, is certainly not intended to be discriminatory. It's depend, it's intended to ensure that we maintain the quality and the respectful treatment that our program is, is known for. We don't want to get in a position where we're overwhelmed and can't respond quickly enough. We have people waiting for service and we can't get them access. We're proud of the program, and we just want to move in a deliberate fashion so that we maintain the quality.
And so, just so, because in my experience, as an emergency nurse, we didn't turn anyone away in the emergency room. So, my understanding is that if someone did walk into an emergency room, they could receive care. They would just, many times won't because they're afraid they might be, they might run into problems with their immigration status. Is that why, what this is all about?
The, the population that we, that we serve and the population that goes unserved, who would be served in our program if it were larger, nevertheless, is entitled to emergency services, and there's a limited Medi-Cal emergency benefit that would cover many of the costs in the emergency room. The emergency room services are not part of our program.
But not part of this program, but if, we are the, the last resort for the indigent or the underserved, so if they did show up in the emergency, that would, we would also be helping with that, on that end of it as well, through the emergency room, through our work with UC Davis and, and our contracts with the emergency room.
The hospitals would be responsive in the emergency, and there would be a limited Medi-Cal and other kinds of community benefit services that pay for hospital care. It's not, it's not part of Healthy Partners. But, you know, the, the benefit of Healthy Partners, there's many, but the main one is to not have to rely on emergency care, to get people their preventive care and monitoring and early treatment and pharmaceuticals they need to take care of themselves so that they don't have to make that horrible choice when they're really genuinely in crisis and afraid to go.
Yeah. And I, I don't think any senior should be turned away because they're aged out. So, I, I support, I support the recommendation. I, I'm not sure where we're at with, are we, we're-
Oh, with that comment, I think I have a better idea.
Let's spend what we, let's spend what's budgeted, but don't go beyond the budget. That's kind of where we're at with our motion. Is that correct?
If, if Don, if Supervisor Natoli's offered up what he has, his suggestion as an amendment, I'm accepting the amendment.
And what I would say, just in response to your question, is I don't think we are running a risk in that case of over-expending this year's budget. I do think there are implications of such an action for staffing pharmaceuticals, coordination of care, and cost of the program in next year's budget.
But we will have a check-in, will we not, in just a few months to, I mean, we're going to learn a lot in the next few months.
I hope, yes.
Especially about that particular population. So, I'm hearing from you, Dr. Heller, that you're not too terribly concerned about what's been proposed as a, as a motion and amendment in the next few months, as we learned, then I, that gives me a better comfort level to accept, accept the amendment and look for a second with the amendment.
I'm, I'm always concerned with the diversion from the staff recommendation, but, but I'm not-
You don't even have to say that. You know that.
But I'm, but I'm, but I'm not projecting that we will overspend this year's budget based on that amendment. I do have concerns about next year.
Right.
I think the concern is that then we have to disenroll some number of people.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to do that.
But we're kind of doing that now, though, right? I mean, we're not, we're, in other words-
But they haven't come to rely on the services yet, though.
No, no, I understand, but we have a waiting list regardless, and I assume that some, some of those on the waiting list would be that population that we would now be newly introducing to the service, right?
Yes, I, I don't think we have a basis for knowing what's going to happen to the waiting list once we know that we can accept referrals over the current age gap.
I mean, in part, I'm, I'm hearing my colleagues, specifically Supervisor Frost, who, correct me if I'm wrong, I just heard say that you don't want to do anything that restricts the ability of seniors to have access to the program.
I, I'm saying I support staff's recommendation to lift the, the limit on the age, lift the age limit. I don't think we should be turning seniors away. When you become a senior, that's when you actually begin to have more problems, and it's a public health issue.
I understand that. But, but what Supervisor Natoli has suggested specifically, the way I understand, is it increases the total number to 4,200 and takes away the age cap altogether. Is that something that you think you can support? I guess is my question.
And what I've suggested for, for the 200 within the-
Right.
In that framework, that there would be, you know, no age cap. We could take new enrollees.
And in order to, to hit that higher mark, we're also being very explicit about an intent to spend down the entirety of the budget to do that.
I don't think the goal should be to spend down the entirety of the budget. I think the goal should be to serve as many as we can with what's budgeted and make sure we're cautious so that we don't, in the future, have to turn people away.
That's, that's, I read that as the same thing that I just said, but using different words.
Just so, just so I understand, though, we're, we're still talking about 4,000, not 4,200. We're still talking about up to 200 over age 65 enrolled in the program, and the change Mr. Natoli proposed was to accept applicants who are over the age of 65, as opposed to only people who began when they were under 65 and then reached that age. Is that, is that correct?
With one exception. I did, when I spoke to it, I offered that we could go to 4,200.
I see.
So, so that you could monitor that population. It didn't, you know, it didn't cut into, for I think some of the other expressed concerns here, I could accept certainly, you know, within the framework, if that was the, you know, you know, majority will here, within that 4,000. But I explicitly said that I took 4,200 and that we would-
I'm glad I asked you to clarify.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to get to the bottom of this here. So, so it sounds like there's two, two things, two options in front of us, given this discussion. One is whether or not we go to 4,200, take away the cap, spend down the budget to serve-
Take away the cap on the over 65?
Yeah, exactly. But it's just a matter of, do we hit the mark at 4,000 or 4,200, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's how I understand it.
He's asking, I think.
Well, but I, but what I'm hearing is a preference by Supervisor Natoli initially to go to the 4,200, but if the political will of the board is, or comfort level of the board is better at, or better set at 4,000, then you're good with that.
Because the most critical piece to me is to, to not deny people because they're 65 years old or so.
Well, then, let's, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we accept staff recommendation with the following change? That there, there's no, there's no age limit, that we're going to continue to look at that particular population as a pilot and gather as much data as we can, and that we are going to make sure that we maximize the use of the budget to maximize the availability of the service. That was part of my original motion. So, that's, that's the refined motion.
So, it's stay at 4,000, but don't have a cap on over 65?
Right.
And, and spend up to the limit of your current budget, examine the statistics before you come in for the new budget?
Which we, yeah, we would do that anyways, I would assume.
Okay.
And accept applicants.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so the secondary of the motion accepts those amendments.
Okay. Any further comments? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Our next, thank you all coming in today. We still have business, so if you'd leave the room quietly, we can move on.
But happy.
Items 49 and 50 have moved. We'll just wait a minute for everyone to leave. We'll just wait a minute for everyone to leave.
I don't think we're going to get rich today.
Yeah.
I figured you'd be going home as soon as. Yeah.
It does. I can reduce time. I can reduce him.
Exactly. So, I just think, Don, it's the program.
Okay. To get started on item 51, I want to mention, if you have something you want to say, you need to fill out a speaker sheet, they're at the back of the room. I already have probably 30 of them, so be aware, we're going to shorten the speaking time, so I want to let you know in advance so that you can be thinking about how to shorten your remarks, or certainly acceptable to say ditto to the person from before. Madam Clerk, would you read item 51, please?
Authority to enter into an agreement with Wynn Youth Services for $380,000 to provide prevention, intervention, and diversion services to youth who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and $160,000 to Sacramento Self-Help Housing to provide navigation and rehousing services in unincorporated areas of Sacramento County for unsheltered homeless populations from February 6, 2018, through October 31, 2018.
Good afternoon, Ann Edwards with Department of Human Assistance. I'm here today as a result of an action you took on September 26, 2017, approving an additional $540,000 in funding to seek proposals that further the objectives of the county homeless initiatives. Gaps in homeless services were determined by the Director of Homeless Initiatives in collaboration with DHA staff in the Homelessness Service Division. Consideration was also given to feedback received during stakeholder meetings and board hearings during the early implementation of the county homeless initiatives. As a result of these identified needs, an RFP was released on December 15, 2017, requesting proposals that met the following statements of need. First, to possibly expand capacity or enhance the services of our first initiative, which was to improve the family crisis response system. Second was to expand capacity or enhance services of our initiative three, which was to provide low-barrier shelter and rehousing services for those identified by the county experiencing long-term unsheltered homelessness. Or finally, to develop a program to address gaps in homeless services to address one of two needs. To strengthen services for transition-age youth, ages 18 to 24, who are experiencing literal homelessness or facing homelessness. Or to provide engagement and rehousing services for identified unsheltered populations in the unincorporated area of the county. On January 10 of this year, we received proposals from the following agencies. University Enterprises, Inc., part of Sac State, St. John's Program for Real Change, Wynn Youth Services, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and Sacramento Steps Forward. University Enterprises did not pass technical review. Three non-conflicted evaluators from other departments evaluated the proposals. The rankings of those proposals are as follows, with a possible score of 100. Wynn Youth Services, 99 points. Sacramento Self-Help Housing, 93.33 points. St. John's Program for Real Change, 89.66 points. Sacramento Steps Forward, 87.33 points. It was made very clear in the RFP that bonus points would be given for proposals that identified those aforementioned to identified gap areas. Therefore, I am recommending funding the full amount for the first-ranked Wynn proposal of $380,000. I am recommending the remaining $160,000 be awarded to the second-ranked proposal, Self-Help Housing, which is a partial award, as they requested a little over $352,000.
Ann?
Yes.
Just to be clear, when you said you're, you're recommending the full amount, that was the full amount of their request?
Of the request, thank you.
380,000, okay.
So, Wynn Youth Services requested $380,000, and as the first-ranked proposal, we're recommending fully funding them.
Thank you.
The 160 is a partial award because Self-Help Housing requested over $352,000. There's only 160 left of the 540,000 that was available, and so these two programs would fully utilize that $540,000. DHA did receive a protest letter on January 24 of this year from St. John's. The RFP states that protests are limited to the following grounds: procedural irregularities, conflict of interest, or the county proposing to award the contract to a proposer other than the proposer judged to be qualified by the evaluation committee. St. John's did not cite any of the above three grounds as the reason for their protest. The letter did contain additional information and clarity regarding their proposal, which cannot be considered after the RFP submission date. While St. John's provides a valued service in our community, the competitive process clearly identified two proposals with higher scores. I therefore request you fund the proposals as recommended in the staff report, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So, I think I understand the, the recommendation and the action that is before us. It's not dissimilar from other actions we, we take all the time in terms of contract awards. Is it accurate to think, though, that this, the recommendation, the action you're asking us to take is expressly defunding anything or any organization?
Absolutely not. This is, this is new money. In September, you all decided that you wanted to allocate an additional $540,000 to fund additional homeless services. So, these are additional services. It's not defunding anything or anyone.
That's all. Thank you.
Don Nativi.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question on the budgeted amount, because as you pointed out, that in your report, in the written report, as all, as well as your report just now, and you, 540,000 was the amount we set aside. That was assuming three-quarters of a year when we appropriated this, and then the annualized amount, as mentioned in the staff report, is $720,000. So, do I presume, then, that the budgeted amount, as under recommendation, would be annualized, and so that what's being recommended for the, the two proposers that you're recommending for, that they would get bumps in that, assuming that they had contract obligations through the end of the fiscal year, which is going to be a short run now, probably not going to, I can't imagine either one of the programs is going to spend 500 in total amounts between now and then, they probably won't have a contract before the end of this month, executed and signed and so forth. So, what, what's the expectation there, that the 380 and the 160 will be ramped up in the next fiscal year?
The 380 and the 160 are for partial years, and yes, the expectation would be, we would be presenting to you in June, the annual cost, so that they could continue the program for a year. We don't want them to ramp up a program now and then come July 1, have to ramp it down because they're short for full years of funding.
Okay. So, those, the annualized budgets are bigger than, than what you're outlining here today, I take from that, right?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask about, because it wasn't real clear to me, I know certainly in the board discussion, and I understand how the RFP was developed with the input from several different sources, but the navigation services, we had a lot of discussion about that in the previous hearings, about having navigators, but places for them people to be navigated to, so to speak, and again, you know, the proposals themselves are not included as part of this, and again, so this is no, I'm not trying to look at a particular program that's being recommended for award. I want to know the evaluation. I get the unincorporated area, that was discussed, but as relates to additional navigation, and I got to frame this in reference to another initiative this board took relative to the, the Parkway and Neighborhood, you know, livability initiative and cleanup and so forth, but as part of that, we funded sheriff homeless outreach teams that were supposed to be complemented by mental health workers, by social workers, and have all those sources available to them for the unincorporated area to do just that. One, to obviously deal with any types of issues that might relate to law enforcement, but as I understood that, that we were going to be spending a significant sum of money, on an order of magnitude of millions of dollars, and that was, you know, to be coupled with the Parkway enforcement effort and the cleanup there. What I read here in this report was, is that the, the catchment was going to be potentially for those folks that would be displaced from the Parkway, that we would have additional navigation services. We have Sacramento Steps Forward. So, I guess, I'd like to know from a staff perspective, the bonus points that were awarded with regards to that, how did that equate? And not so much about the points, but again, we, we're putting millions of dollars outside of social services and, and homeless services to work on those various issues, and we're paying sheriff's officers and others who already do those tasks, you know, are assigned to do that, so, so how is that being coordinated? I mean, there's not, it's not elaborated on here, so somebody needs to help me understand.
I couldn't be, I'm not the best person to speak directly about what the sheriff is doing and what behavioral health is doing. What I know is that the proposal by Self-Help Housing was not just for navigation services, it was for navigation services and rehousing services. And we currently don't have dedicated navigation services in the unincorporated counties. Many of the cities pay for their own navigators, and they have that resource, and that's not available right now to us in unincorporated.
So, we're not purchasing anything from Sacramento Steps Forward as we're leasing navigators? We have no navigators, zero?
Unincorporated area. That's correct. In unincorporated, that is correct.
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated, yeah.
There's no, they're not dedicated, they still work those areas, you mean, there's...
If I could just clarify one thing, I believe we have one or two that are tied to P-bids?
P-bids, yes.
Yes. But other than that, we, we defunded the, the navigators in order to pay for our homeless initiatives last year that we had contracted with Sacramento Steps Forward. Sacramento Steps Forward has other navigators that are paid for out of other, from other jurisdictions, out of other funds, but not for Sacramento County.
And the P-bids fund their own, we're not funding that.
So, replacing Sacramento Steps Forward navigators with navigators under another program now, is that what we're doing?
Yes, if I may, you know, navigation has become a, a term that we've used to mean a lot of different things over the course of the past several years. These are going to be outreach workers that have, have the ability to provide rehousing services on the spot and working with them. That's not anything that we, that we have currently, it's not, you know, I don't know that that's what the sheriff's department does with the money that we've given them. And so, this, in my mind, is a, is a new service that's going to meet a very important gap, because we've always said that the quote-unquote "navigation" isn't any good without those kinds of rehousing services, and we're, this proposal is to combine those two.
And Mr. Foley is here today, should you want to ask him?
No, I know, yeah, I wasn't, but I was trying to get from the staff perspective, because again, with the resources we've allocated for rangers, for teams on the river, for teams in the neighborhood, both law enforcement and others, to be coupled, as I understood, I mean, that was, you know, I go back and look at the record, but I understood we were going to have these additional resources to deal in the unincorporated area. And, and I appreciate what Paul says, but I guess I'd look to Nav or somebody to say, so what is the, how is that being coordinated? Because we've already dedicated 6.5 million to homeless services, we're supplementing this with this augmentation, we put $5 million in, $5 million plus into both Parkway cleanup, Neighborhood livability, working on a range of things, and so, how does that come together? And then here, there's really, there's no dedicated navigation part of that, because it seemed to me that we were, you know, that was integrated into certainly the Parkway and Neighborhood Initiative.
With regard to the, the outreach that's going on in the Parkway, tied to what the park rangers are doing and the sheriff's department's doing, we do have services that are tied to that. Those are the contracts that the board has approved in the past several weeks that are ramping up to provide rehousing services. We're working with the Department of Health and Human Services on its new Mental Health Services Act plan, it's going to provide mental health services to a variety of entities, and it will, it will also be, those services can and will be available to the folks that we're talking about that are going to be impacted by the various outreach programs that we're talking about. So, those services are, are either there, they're being ramped up there, or we're working diligently to make sure that they're provided. So, it hasn't been ignored.
No, no, I'm not saying it was, and I think it's to my point, and you've kind of hit on it, though, is that when we undertook not only the homeless initiatives, but with the Parkway and Neighborhood livability and cleanup initiatives, that we were going to have this concerted, because we were concerned. I mean, it was part of the reason why we funded additional HOT teams, you know, as a part of that, was that we were concerned that we were going to have this offsetting effect, and so we were going to try to work with businesses and neighborhoods in the unincorporated area, specifically, with law enforcement, with others, and, and I thought that, that was already intact, and so I guess I'm, not that you can't do more, and again, this is, again, this is not talking about Sacramento Self-Help Housing, is to try to get some understanding about where all that fits, because we're spending millions of dollars.
And part of what our conversation we had back then was, where are the gaps on this? We knew there was gaps as we went through.
Okay.
So, the direction you gave us is, look at all your initiatives, where are the gaps, and put an RFP out to get those gaps in there, and that's what we're bringing back together.
So, the gap is, is that when we funded the HOT teams and they work outside of the Parkway in the unincorporated area, we didn't put anything in place to do interim housing and to do navigation? Is that the gap?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying. What I said that there were, we looked at our initiatives, and there are areas that we can augment. I'm not suggesting that we put those things in place without thinking those items through. But it's very specific, you asked us to look at, what is it that you have out there in your homeless initiative? What else can you augment? That's what our RFP was. We knew that when the HOT team and the folks on the Parkway, that there were services that we were providing, how can we augment more of those? And that's what Paul's alluding to, that we're bringing this proposal back with that in mind.
And I would add that even this is not going to completely fill the gap that's out there.
I get that.
It's, it's an identified additional gap, and we, we recommend that this augments what is out there that the board has already approved, to continue to do outreach and provide these rehousing services.
Okay. If I could just ask one more question, Madam Chair, just goes to the staff report in it. In, on page three, Ann, and you talked to it in your, in your report, but there were three specific areas, and obviously the gap being the part that was, you know, brought forward in this proposal, but one and two also relate to initiatives, and so how are those given due consideration? And I'll just say number one, obviously, we're going to hear a lot about today, expansion or enhancement of services, which is for families. And so, how, how was it that one, two, and three got then evaluated, so to speak, in the, in the process? Because what I see here is that we, basically, you're proposing and recommending to this that we take number three, and that kind of, I guess, took the highest priority versus either one or two as they relate back to the homeless initiative, so could you just...
Yes, so the first two initiatives for one and three, those were initiatives underway that we know, you know, we probably don't have enough of, so that was one option to expand services in those areas. But we also identified gaps where we don't have enough services, or there's an identified gap that our first four initiatives didn't address, and the two areas that rose to the top in consultation with...
If I could just ask one more question, Chairman Chair, just goes to the staff report in it. On page three, Anne, and you talked to it in your, in your report, but there were three specific areas, and obviously the gap being the part that was, you know, brought forward in this proposal, but one and two also relate to initiatives. And so how are those given due consideration? And I'll just say number one, obviously, we're going to hear a lot about today, expansion or enhancement of services, which is for families. And so how was it that one, two, and three got then evaluated, so to speak, in the process? Because what I see here is that we, basically, you're proposing and recommending to this that we take number three, and that kind of, I guess, took the highest priority versus either one or two, as they relate back to the homeless initiative? So could you just...
Yes, so the first two initiatives for one and three, those were initiatives underway that we know, you know, we probably don't have enough of. So that was one option to expand services in those areas. But we also identified gaps where we don't have enough services, or there's identified gap that our first four initiatives didn't address. And the two areas that rose to the top in consultation with Ms. Kavanaugh and with my whole homeless team, the transition aid issue certainly rose right to the top. It was something that was missing from our four initiatives. It is a population that is very, very high risk, and we frankly have very little services for that population, and this proposal addresses that. So that's how those rose to the top, was conversations with the stakeholder meetings that we had in preparation for bringing the four initiatives to you, conversations with Ms. Kavanaugh and my entire homeless team, and their experience of working with the homeless community provider, and identified those as high need areas.
Okay, last point then, again, and this is not meant, maybe disrespectful, but those were staff determinations in the issue in the RFP, is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we go to call to comment? Thank you, Anne. Okay. I know you can all see, a lot of people here, so we have limited time. The speaking time for now will remain at two minutes, so please tailor your remarks to that. And if you're here for a group and you're speaking for a group, you could ask them all to stand up, and they might not have to speak. So I encourage you to do that. And we'll start with Mike Jasky, who's been here all day, and Clark McKinley, and then Scott Young.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Chair peers and supervisors, Mike Jasky, representing Sacramento area congregations together. So you have heard how the staff devised the RFP, and how they have chosen these two particular programs to fill gaps. It's clear that each of these, as we just said a moment ago, address a small portion of very large needs. And given the budget constraints that the RFP is operating under, that's all they can do. It's clear that the youth services are desperately needed, and Sacramento Act supports that unequivocally. As we understood the Sacramento self-help housing proposal, which is admittedly not described in great detail in the board letter, it was going to be focusing on rehousing services connected to one or more of the HART programs. And the HART programs is a faith-based operation now in several locations around the county that uses church facilities to house homeless people, and a degree of services offered to those homeless individuals who are within the scope, basically, of what congregations can do. Given the housing climate that we have, the more sophisticated rehousing services that Sacramento self-help housing can provide, obviously is going to do a better job in getting these people into permanent housing. And for that, with that understanding, we support that contract and urge that you approve both of them today. Thank you.
Thank you. Clark McKinley, then Scott Young.
Thank you. I'm Clark McKinley, I'm with Carmichael Heart. As already described, it's a collaboration of faith-based groups, we've got the Chamber of Commerce, we got P-Bid, we have lots of business groups who are also involved in supporting us. We're also in contact with the sheriff's office and the homeless team there. Right now, we're running Winter Sanctuary, it goes for two months, and we're finding that a lot of these homeless people in Carmichael consider Carmichael, Carmichael their home. A lot of them grew up in Carmichael, and they don't come downtown, for whatever reason. They won't come down here to get the services that are here. So we do have a gap in Carmichael, and that is the navigation. We don't have a connection. We're trying to move these people to the next step, to get them into resources, get them into rehousing. We don't have the way to connect them, and that's where the navigation comes in, and that's part of this proposal. And we're also trying to reach hundreds of school-aged kids who don't leave Carmichael as well. They don't go downtown either, their parents or guardians or whoever's with them don't bring them downtown, are not able to. And they're missing classes, a lot of absenteeism, because they're couch surfing, they're staying in motels, they're living in cars, but they don't get down here. So the issue is, how do you get the services out to them? And that's why we're really supporting this proposal for the navigation of self-help housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley. Scott Young, Barbara Farley, Manuel Hueso.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Scott Young, and I'm here representing Carmichael Heart. I'm currently serving as their president. I'm here to speak in favor of your decision to fund Sacramento self-help housing, so that they can provide navigation and rehousing services to Carmichael and other unincorporated areas. I've spoken previously before this board to advocate for homeless services and resources in Carmichael. Clark has already talked about some of the work we're doing in the community, so I won't repeat that. But it's been clear for some time that what Carmichael lacks is professional, consistent, committed navigation services. And we're thrilled that it appears that we're finally going to receive a navigator due to the funding awarded to Sacramento self-help housing. So on behalf of Carmichael Heart, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the Department of Human Assistance for their decision to fund services that will directly affect and benefit the homeless populations of Carmichael and other unincorporated areas. Thank you.
Barbara Finley, or Farley, sorry, Manuel Hueso, and Michelle Steebe.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Barbara Farley, and I'm a member of Carmichael Heart. And I, the main thing I want to add to what Scott and Clark have said is that we have more than 250 volunteers in the various churches in Carmichael, who are providing really a Band-Aid. Every night from 6:00 PM until 6:00 AM, we're providing shelter, a safe place, a warm meal, some clothing, other resources. Then we send the people out on the street. And that's where we need the connection, is that what we're doing for them needs to be reinforced with the expertise of a navigator. And so that's why we feel so strongly, and being an unincorporated area, we are not able to have, we don't have a city council to go to, we never will. And so we turn to you to support us in providing this navigator for our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Manuel, then Michelle Steebe, then Dawn Davison.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Manuel Hueso, I'm a school principal with Sac City Unified at Peter Burnett Elementary. And I have been working with kids from St. John's for about five years now, and of course, the families as well. You know, when I was thinking about what I could do with my two minutes, I was trying to figure out, okay, I don't, I know that the need is great, everybody else is deserving of the limited amount of resources, but I figured what I'm going to do with my minute and 23 seconds is to really highlight the things that St. John's really does well. I can tell you that in the past, I believe, these two areas I want to talk about have been thought of as weaknesses, one being the fact that they only admit women and their children. And you know, I got to tell you, that's obviously a real population with real need. And my belief is that St. John's is uniquely qualified to serve those kids and those families. I think that is not a weakness, I think that is a strength. The other area is the fact that St. John's does have criteria, and they have high expectations for those moms and families who are there. And again, I propose to you, that's not a weakness, that is a strength. And I'll tell you, I've sat across many, many families before who are very proud to be there, very proud to be able to fulfill the requirements that they have in front of them. And I think that's really what it takes for someone to break this cycle of homelessness and whatever other issues they may be bringing to the table. I feel that they need to understand that this is not something that they get for free, this is costing them something, and they're very proud of being able to do that. The kids are amazing, I'm very proud to be able to work with them. Every day I talk to them, and I just, I know you're between a rock and a hard place, but I would ask you, beg you that you think outside the box, and that you find...
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
That you find some way to be able to support St. John's as well. Thank you.
Michelle Steebe, John Davison, excuse me, Dawn Davison, and Jody Hicks.
Good afternoon. On behalf of St. John's Board, whom I'd like to ask to stand, and St. John's clients, volunteers, and staff, I appreciate you taking the time to hear us. Eleven years ago, my first week at St. John's, we were a 30-day emergency shelter. Within a couple weeks, I had a woman named Katie and her daughter Tori come in, and a couple days later, a woman named Shelley and her two sons came in. I had no idea that Katie and Shelley were sisters, because they looked nothing alike. But the bigger surprise for me was that 18 years earlier, they lived at St. John's with their mom. And that's why we evolved from becoming a 30-day emergency shelter to today, a program that serves these women and children over 12 to 18 months, and help them really change their lives. We have mental health services, drug and alcohol counseling, employment training, budget and finance, everything they need. We've been able to do that, we've been able to expand our services, we've almost tripled capacity. But the most important thing we've done in this last decade is we've given voice to thousands of women and children in this community, without asking the county for an additional dime, without asking your taxpayers for an additional dime. What we've done to grow our services and grow our capacity is we brought in the private sector and other public sector agencies to partner with us as well. The county's support, however, has always been the foundation of St. John's, and it's what has allowed us to grow and evolve into what we are today, the only provider of homeless services for women and children exclusively in this region. What we helped them to do is exit the system permanently, thereby making room for others, because there are so many others in need in the system today. It took us 11 years to develop our voice, and on behalf of these women and children behind me, we're not going to be silent until the county affirms that women and children who've become homeless, who have very unique needs, are again, a priority of this county, that they have a safe and sober and structured place to rebuild themselves and their families. Today, you're going to hear from several women who have this perspective on why the county needs to fund very unique programs for women and children, because their needs are unique. We have a saying at St. John's that there, which is also a life's truth, you don't do better if you don't see better. What do you, this board, want for these women and children?
No, I'm giving you some latitude here, but you haven't responded to the RFP situation yet. What's your request there?
I just am saying that we really want the county to understand that women and children need to be a high priority in terms of homeless services.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Davison, Jody Hicks, Monica McRoe, and Priscilla Navara.
Good afternoon. My name is Dawn Davison, and I'm the former warden of the California Institution for Women, also board member of the St. John's Program for Real Change. I'm going to be short with my, in my remarks, and I'm going to propose to you something that's a little bit out of the box, and talk about how the systemic problems leading to both the incarcerated population and the homeless population are very, very similar. So if we look at St. John's demographics, for instance, 74% of their clients have one or more substance abuse disorders, 68% have experienced domestic violence, 60% have a criminal history, 54% have suffered from mental illness, and I could go on and on. And these same statistics, we could say could be shown in the incarcerated female population today. In 2005, though, the Department of Corrections found out that just giving a bed to a female offender wasn't working. So they adopted what was called gender-responsive strategies, and I sent a brochure to all of you yesterday. You probably didn't have a chance to take a look at that, but I'd be happy to discuss that with you at a further time. But acknowledging that gender does make a difference in how we house and treat female offenders, as well as homeless population, does make a big difference. And that's why the program at St. John's is so successful. The CDCR found out that when they treated women this way differently, that their recidivism rates went down, and that's why the success rates at St. John's are so hot.
Ms. Davison, your time is up. Did you have a concluding remark?
Yes, I have a concluding remark.
Great, thank you.
The time really has come for all of us to understand that our homeless women and children really deserve no less services than the same women that are incarcerated, that experience the same systemic problems. They deserve the same level of services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jody Hicks, then Monica McRoe, and Priscilla Navara.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Jody Hicks. I am a partner in a government relations and advocacy firm here in Sacramento, and I want to speak quickly in favor of St. John's shelter and the unique challenges that women face in the services they provide. And I'll try not to be duplicative, but I did want to point out a few of those things. Women and families are the fastest-growing segment of the homeless population, 85% of those families are headed by single women. And to be clear, homelessness in and of itself is not a women's issue. But there are issues that women have to navigate, and those issues do deserve attention and action by the county. There are gender inequalities in society that affect all women in the workforce, gender pay gap, sexism, and all of those things you've heard of. But financial hardship and stable income is a big part of getting out of homelessness. And so this adds an additional burden, and providing services that are lifting women out of homelessness through education and job skills is an important service that we should be prioritizing. The burden of childcare is not new, and it certainly isn't new in homelessness, but that is an extra burden for women, especially of young children, and providing services that also take into account those young children is important. And in addition to financial stresses, we have just basic public safety for women that is unique in these populations, where the overwhelming majority is men in shelters and on the streets, and women have to navigate how to, we hear harrowing stories of sexual assault, harassment, abuse, all of those things that they have to navigate as well. So providing services that are specific to women is important, just in basic safety. And just quickly, in my past life, I did work with young girls in the juvenile justice system, and as was discussed, the issues for them, though they were a smaller population, it was 100% for those women that they had been abused in their past, and that's how they got there, very different from the young boys. And what we knew, and what happened then, is they didn't ask them questions about it because they didn't have the resources. And I just...
Could you make your concluding remarks, please?
I will. I believe that as any government entity, when we make our budgets and our priorities, it's based on our values. And I believe Sacramento County does have shared values in prioritizing women and children, and we need to do that as we move forward. Thank you.
Monica McRoe, Priscilla Navara, and Samantha Guthrie.
Thank you for having me here.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate it. My name is Monica McRoe, I'm the homeless program coordinator for Sacramento City Unified School District, and I've been the coordinator for 28 years, so I'm very familiar with all the wonderful programs we have in this city to serve homeless families and students. I'm here just to express my support for St. John's. It is a very unique program in that it does serve women and children. And I've seen St. John's through these 28 years, as the program's evolved and changed into the program it is today. One of the things that I've noticed in my capacity for 28 years is that the program really instills a sense of empowerment in the mothers. I see a really heightened sense of concern for their children, stability in the family, parents who are involved with their children's education. We're always happy when we find out a family, a mother and her children have gotten into St. John's, because we know that they tend to be very confident, very hopeful about their future. And I think St. John's is a program that looks long-term for these families and tries to find the success for them down the road that maybe other programs don't. So I just want to say, I'm very supportive of St. John's, and ask for your consideration. St. John's because we know that they tend to be very confident, very hopeful about their future. And I think St. John's is a program that looks long-term for these families and tries to find the success for them down the road that maybe other programs don't. So I just want to say I'm very supportive of St. John's and ask for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Priscilla Navara, Samantha Guthrie, Guthrie, and then Christopher Barton. Priscilla Navara?
Priscilla's not here, but I'm going to get my pen. Samantha?
Priscilla's not here?
No, she's not here.
Okay. Samantha Guthrie?
Okay. Hi, I'm Samantha Guthrie. I work in childcare at St. John's Program for Real Change, and so my, I really have great experience through Birth and Beyond as well, which I've seen you guys before through them, helping the families there. And since then, I've been, I've come to St. John's and have seen kind of that child abuse prevention go in the same direction with St. John's. However, it's all under one umbrella, where you have the women escaping domestic violence situations and their children, and other services such as job readiness and help housing those families when they move on. And so the women and children are so important, and I think, just looking at, I've only been at St. John's for seven months, and I've seen 11 or 12 families be reunited already versus two in the last two and a half years with Birth and Beyond. And so I just, I was sitting here just thinking about all the families and the mothers that I have seen come and tell me, so excited to tears, that they, that they are getting their kids back. And it gives me goosebumps, like, just now, I see it. And just please consider them as a priority in moving forward and we look forward to continuing working with you, Board of Supervisors and the county, so that these children and these women can have a whole life of success ahead of them and not have to depend on any of the homeless poverty systems any longer.
Thank you, Samantha. Christopher Barton, Julia Burrows and Minnie Santillier, it looks like.
Thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Christopher Barton.
Good afternoon.
I want to concur with Scott Young about Carmichael Heart. Thank you.
Miracle of electronics.
I want to support Carmichael Heart in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County. There needs to be navigators to support the homeless in those areas. I'm actually a volunteer with Winter Sanctuary in Carmichael, like Barbara mentioned. I'm one of those hands that go out and help the homeless. I pick them up and see them, when I pick them up at the morning from the churches and drop them back off, then all they can do is wander to the streets. There needs to be navigators in the unincorporated areas to help these people get back their lives and get back in the housing. So there needs to be the Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and I like to, I would like to propose support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Julia Burrows, then Minnie, and then Paul Kiefer.
Just lower it. Good afternoon. I'm Julia Burrows, a proud resident and chairman, chairwoman, student in Peters District. And I'm here for three reasons. The first is that I volunteer with the National Charity League, which is 300 mothers and daughters, 7th through 12th grade, and I am in particular the liaison between NCL and St. John's, so I spend a lot of time on the campus. And on behalf of that group, I just want to offer my support. The second is not to protest or contest the recommendation in your staff report. It's very clear that the recommendation will be go to the two organizations that are recommended for funding, but to plead with the board to find a way to support this organization with other dollars from other funds. If it's not a defunding issue, then hopefully that means the foundational funding will come to St. John's another way, the $60,000 a month that keeps these women and children off the streets. And the third reason I'm here is because in my day job, I work and I run the Governing Institute. We publish Governing Magazine, which covers local and state politics across the country. So my job is to travel around the country and to advance good government. And the national model that's represented with St. John's, when I'm traveling in Washington, DC and other state capitals, and they ask me where I'm from, I say Sacramento, and they say, "What do you do in your spare time?" The first is I walk and run the Parkway. The second is I volunteer at St. John's. It is a national model for public-private partnership, for them to have a dollar from the federal, the state, the county government, and $7 in volunteer time and private sector support. I brag about this organization when I go on the road. When we do a Health and Human Services Summit from public health directors across the country, and we talk about leveraging services, I use St. John's as that national model. So I do hope you find a way to fund this. I do hope we can continue to keep their services going. I do hope there's a way to work with staff to make the funding possible, and I thank you, thank you, thank you for your investment.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Minnie Santillier. I apologize if I'm-
She had to leave early.
He doesn't look like a Minnie. I'm just saying.
I appreciate that.
Okay. You must, yeah, you're Paul. Yeah, I can see you now.
Paul Kiefer with Carmichael Heart, and I support staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Susie Dotson, and then Daniel Davis and Brian Jensen.
Hello. Thank you so much, Chair Peters and the rest of the board. Susie Dotson, Executive Director of Wind Youth Services. I'm sure you all know that I support the recommendation, but I do want to point out a few things. First of all, this is, this recommendation is not just about Wind. It's, in addition to Wind, you're funding two other agencies. We are not going to do this on our own. We really believe in the youth field, that we have to do things together. And so when we read our, when the county, in their infinite wisdom, decided to release this RFP, the youth providers, we got together and we said, "Okay, how can we make this the strongest, first of all, grant proposal possible, but also how can we make our services really, really fit the needs of the young people that we work with?" And we know that intervention works. We know that we can get young people off the streets really quickly. We can prevent them from becoming homeless, and then we don't need to worry about first services in the future. We won this competition through a very fair process, and we really think that the county's investment in youth through this grant shows a commitment to stopping the pipeline of incoming people experiencing homelessness and lets us work to prevent them from ever becoming homeless or from spending years on the street, becoming older and sicker and chronically homeless. Thank you to all of you for your support of Sacramento's youth. As youth providers, we believe that we can, with your help, end youth homelessness in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. And thank you for saying, it's the first time I've heard in this board chambers that the county has infinite wisdom. I've never heard that before.
I was waiting for a punchline after that, though.
It's fleeting.
Daniel Davis.
Hi there. My name's Daniel Davis. This is my identical twin brother, Jacob Davis. We are both in the Wind-
Anyone tell you you look alike?
We're both in the Wind Youth Program, in the housing, permanent supportive housing. Before that, chronically homeless almost our whole lives, didn't have a really good childhood. But this program has helped my brother get a job, which he just lost, he got laid off, but it's helping him get-
Which program?
The Wind Youth.
Wind, okay.
Yeah, we see you, Susie Dotson. And dude, it helped us get employment counseling. Tomorrow, we're going to ARC, signing up for school. I mean, I've been sober off of drugs the entire time I've been in this program. I mean, like, totally-
They connected me with health to get my hep C treated, which I caught from being on the street, and-
I'm getting mine treated as we speak.
They've just, not only just connected us with health, but mental health services, and especially just a job, and teaching me about just the community and how to reintegrate into society and the community. It's just, it's done wonders, and we just really support the program.
And without it, any youth that would want to get housed or sheltered has to walk up 12th Street to the Salvation Army, and just to get there, you have to pass people just basically throwing you drugs and stuff. And it's just, it's so much better to have something youth-oriented, where we can talk about our issues and feel safe and not discriminated, or feel like there's-
A threat or danger.
A threat or danger. And so it's just nice being able to have a safe place, a safe little yellow brick road, I guess, where, you know, I don't feel like I'm being encroached upon, upon predators and the community. And it's, that's the worst part of our community, is the drugs, the sex work, all the stuff that just, it isn't the beautiful part of Sacramento, which we're beginning to see.
Right.
Because we're participating in all the beautiful parts now, and so it just, thank you. It's a helpful community. I support you.
Do you guys know who the Smothers Brothers are?
Yeah, I know. Take that show on the road.
Brian Jensen?
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you. In fact, I'm a proud Sacramento County resident. I say proud because I look around to so many friends from so many worthwhile organizations advocating for solutions to one of our community's worst-growing problems. I'm here as a volunteer with Carmichael Heart. And as a resident of the unincorporated portion of our county, I want to just give voice to the feeling of angst that people I know and live among have felt for years as the increasing problems of homelessness become more apparent, and the feeling of excitement at solutions starting to emerge in our part of the county. Just in the last couple of months, as I've helped coordinate hundreds of volunteers from several congregations throughout Carmichael, Fair Oaks and Orangevale, people who are contributing to a solution, although temporary, to housing the homeless during the winter, it's been inspiring. I met a friend, a new friend, on New Year's Eve, the first night of our operation, and this young man worked full-time, from dawn to dusk, working a hard construction job, and he asked if he would be able to make this work with his schedule coming back from his job site. And he said, "I've got a plan. I want, I'm hoping to use this program to save up enough money to get a place of my own." And I'm very happy to say that after our 14th night in a row with that friend, he stopped coming. And I soon found out it's because he found his own place. That was great, but not everyone can do that on their own without assistance and professional guidance. The hundreds of volunteers that I've worked with over the last few weeks, for the dozens of members of our community experiencing homelessness, we can only do so much. And having focused, professional, meaningful services in those parts of the county that have really not had that service before is critical. And so I stand here to support the staff's recommendation, and thank you for your focus on this problem.
Before you leave, Brian, you attended one of my community meetings-
Yes.
-a week or two ago, and in your other, the other hat you wear, Working for the Hospital Association.
Yes.
You mentioned something about the programs that the county is doing that are affecting the emergency room rate.
Yes.
Would you mind repeating that to the whole board so they could hear it?
I think Susan's fishing for a compliment because-
Yes, I am. Don't, you recognize it.
Because, yes, I represent the hospital council of Northern and Central California, and I made mention at one of her community meetings that there are some real improvements that are occurring. We've worked closely with many of you in recent years to really refocus our efforts on improving homeless services, but really the mental health services. And the county's taken some significant steps that we're starting to see the fruit of in the last few months with the Mental Health Urgent Care Center that opened up in December, the crisis residential facilities that are coming online and expanding. They're hugely important, and they're critical elements of this whole continuum of overlapping problems in our community, homelessness, mental illness, substance abuse. They are conditions that people share and experience and have, anything we can do to layer solutions on those layered problems is welcome. And so I want to commend the county for what has been a series of improvements in the last few years.
And to be clear, you think it's affecting the emergency room-
It is.
-numbers in a positive way.
We are seeing, the hospitals are doing much of their own accord as well to improve operations and throughput and services and outreach, but we also want to acknowledge that the county's efforts have made a difference. And so the partnership that we were experiencing and the ongoing efforts to find additional solutions are going to be needed because frankly, the problem's growing faster than the solutions are growing. So thank you, and I want to acknowledge what you have done, and I want to invite you to continue partnering with so many members of the community to keep going forward.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Tiffany Mott Gorman, or Goman, and John Foley, and then Nick Jows, Jowz. Is Tiffany here? Yeah, there we go. Good afternoon.
Thank you. My name's Tiffany Mott Goman, and I'm a volunteer with Carmichael Heart's Winter Shelter, and I'm also going to be a host for the county's Winter Sanctuary Program later in March. I am here to speak in support of funding for both Sacramento Self-Help Housing and Wind Services. It's incredibly important that the county continue to find new investment money for expanding our resources and refunding the defunded navigation services, I think is very important in the unincorporated areas. But I really feel like I have an obligation to point out that meaningful navigation to any housing resources is less than probable, given the state of available and affordable housing in our county. And I'd like to urge the board to push staff now to begin looking at creative strategies to promote new housing developments and to look at zoning and building barriers to innovative solutions to housing in our county as a part of planning for the next fiscal year. I know there is a housing plan that's going to be coming before you in the fall, and I would urge you to have staff do legwork now because it is inconceivable that that plan would not suggest new housing, and we could get a leg up on that by staff looking at some of the issues that are holding us back from affordable and available housing to actually rehouse people with, because we don't really have that. So we're kind of, we've got the cart, but not the horse. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. John Foley, and then Nick Jows and Bridget Alexander.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. The proposal that we made is modeled after the work that we do in some of the cities in your county, in Citrus Heights and Elk Grove and Folsom, where in a partnership with law enforcement in each of those jurisdictions and community-activated through this Heart groups that have developed, we're able to be pretty effective at the outreach. We met with, I think, some real success in helping people get off the streets and certainly in helping them to get services. As Tiffany was just saying, housing is a huge issue, and I know you're planning to address that as a board. Part of how we end up doing it is through shared housing. We just, it's hard to find apartments inexpensive enough that folks on the street can actually afford to get into them. And so finding landlords, and maybe you know some landlords that can help us on this, landlords willing to let us master lease their homes and then have, you know, four or five people share that house is a way to cut the costs, and we really depend on that kind of innovative housing to help people get housed. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Nick Jows? I may be mispronouncing, it looks like J-O-W-S is the last name. No?
Nikki Jones is not here.
Oh, is that Jones? Okay, well, but he's not here either way, right?
He's not.
Okay. Then Bridget Alexander.
I was mentioning-
And Perren, Susie Dotson, Kate Hutcherson.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of speaking for all three of us. I'm Bridget Alexander. I'm the Director of Waking the Village, and we're one of the other youth providing agencies that is awarded funding under the Grant for Wind. And you might have saw, we were really excited about that '99, that's the first we've heard of that. But I think we're excited because it represents years of hard work, building a partnership and working together to move our field and making sure that youth are getting served. It's, you know, we live in, the last decades have been a big focus on the chronically homeless, and it's been hard to get our community to hear how important it is to move upstream and to reach people sooner when they become homeless. Because when you reach them sooner, they can spend more time going to college and connecting to work and experiencing less trauma, so there's less to heal with. So we're very excited at this opportunity. We're also excited because we find it hits a moment in time when we have an opportunity to really take this amount of money and maximize it, because we have this opportunity through the vouchers and the promise zone that we've been working with. I also wanted to point out, too, that when we think of transition-age youth, we often have pictures of single youth in our mind. Lutheran Social Services and Waking the Village both work with primarily families that are headed by young parents, and we too, about 90% of our clients are single moms and their children. And we find that by investing in them and catching them in this moment of early parenthood, they're in a space where we can wrap support around and greet it every day with wellness services, employment services, school services, and we see that huge change happens really quickly. Again, we are so grateful for this, and we will, you're going to be proud of the work we do.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Grace Loscher. Grace? Then Shelley Huberthis?
Hey, I'm Grace Loscher, youth advocate with Waking the Village. County supervisors, exciting moment. You have before you today three worthy programs and unique populations that are each deserving- You have before you today three worthy programs and unique populations that are each deserving of these funds. And I could stand here and make a compelling case about the desperate needs of transitional aged youth experiencing homelessness, but nobody can ask you to choose between the needs of homeless youth and adult homeless women. This isn't why we're here today. It can't be a battle of whose lives are more worthy of your dollars. St. John's and all the good work they do for women and children should be supported, and so should we, Waking the Village, WIND, and Lutheran Social Services. Each time I submit a grant that isn't awarded, and there have been many, it doesn't make my cause less worthy. It means other good work is being done elsewhere in the community. And today, other good work is being done in the community, and we invite you all to celebrate with us, where we continue to work together in the fight for mutual liberation of all peoples experiencing homelessness. The team of youth advocates and allies working to combat youth homelessness is a team of relentless fighters. Most of our efforts are not rewarded. This is the mercurial nature of grants. And so what do we do? We get creative, we pool resources, and we work harder. When our youth street outreach grant wasn't renewed, we built our own street outreach team, and now youth currently experiencing homelessness, some of these youth, go out every other week to do the outreach work that should have been funded. When we spent months working on the HUD Demonstration Project grant, and it wasn't funded, we asked why, we took feedback, we made changes, and we're applying again. It wasn't luck or connections that got us this money. It was hard work, innovative ideas, and collaborative approach to positive youth development. I can't stand here with conviction and say that this side of the room's needs are greater than that side. But I will say that this group of young people have been fighting tooth and nail for this funding for years, and they did it. And any person housed through any program is a success for us all. We support all of the work you do to each program here, and we really appreciate you investing in our program and in our youth today. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Shelley? Billy here?
No.
Okay. Then Fatima Bradley Martinez, and then Jamie Hampton.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Fatima Bradley Martinez, and I'm the Director of Housing Services with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. With this funding, we intend to provide innovative and cost-effective homeless outreach and housing location assistance for our unsheltered community members in unincorporated parts of the county of Sacramento. Through assertive outreach, in-person-centered service provision that boosts participants' self-determination, we anticipate success in assisting our unsheltered community members who are very vulnerable with finding and maintaining permanent housing. We collaborate heavily with community members, businesses, law enforcement, and local community groups such as the homeless assistance resource teams throughout Sacramento. And we provide similar services in Citrus Heights, Folsom, and Elk Grove, which have been quite successful, and we anticipate having that same success in the unincorporated areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jamie? Then Tiffany Mines, then Jasara Williams.
Hi, I'm Jamie. I'm with Waking the Village. I was experiencing homelessness for over five years, and Waking the Village gave me a way out of that lifestyle. It's given me hope, family, and a new way of living. For a long time, I felt like I wasn't saving, but they proved to me that I was. And I've overcome a million odds that I had against me with the help from all of them. Waking the Village saved my life. We are deserving and extremely grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Tiffany? After Tiffany is Jasara Williams, and then Lucinda Peterson, and then Kate Hutchison.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Mines. I'm with Waking the Village. I believe that this funding should go to youth experiencing homelessness. This program saved my life. For the first time in my life, I have a home, and without this program, I don't know where I'd be. It has changed me, and in this community, there aren't programs that could have helped me. Waking the Village gives me hope and understanding that there is a way out of no way. Without this funding, more people like me would not be able to have a home in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiffany. Jasara?
Hi, I'm Jasara Williams. I'm a mother of one, and without Waking the Village, I don't know where we would sleep, have a home for him, or anything. So I really do thank Waking the Village. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jasara. Lucinda Peterson, Kate Hutchison, Boba Mulvaney.
Hi, my name's Lucinda Peterson. I'm here for support of St. John's. I was, I'm a mother of three. I was homeless for over five years in a domestic violence relationship, on drugs, and just lost, really lost. And St. John's was my enough is enough. I went to them, and it was a safe haven for me and my girls to live and to learn and to... I was able to be sober. I've been sober now for six years. And I could never have done it without St. John's. St. John's taught me how to be a mother. It taught me how to be in a healthy relationship. And so many good women and children have came out of St. John's. I felt, I found so many friends. And it's not just a place to house you. It teaches you how to live the right way. Because I didn't know how to live the right way. I was, I lost my mom when I was 10. I was in and out of foster home. And these women at St. John's, they taught me that. And I just want to thank you for hearing me today, and please support St. John's. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. Kate Hutchison?
Hi, I'm Kate Hutchinson with Lutheran Social Services, part of the partnership with WIND and Waking the Village. And to everything they said, I say ditto. And I want to acknowledge all of the staff, the clients, and advocates who are here today who want to stand up, who are supporting services for youth in Sacramento County, and I want to thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Boba Mulvaney, and then Jaclyn Thomas, and that's the last speaker I have to sign up to speak.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me be part of your conversation. I know most of you, and as you know, for over 30 years, I've lived and worked in this community and have been dealing with this homeless issue. I think what's most important to me that I want to express is that I'm a big fan of all these programs and more. I'm not a big fan of low barrier. I don't believe in it. I have set high standard for myself, and for my family, for my staff. I expect it from other people. I think number one thing is important is to keep a family together. And St. John's has the ability to take the whole family in, and in doing that, we can reach fragile teens, boys and girls. We can reach children at risk by keeping these families together under one shelter that gives them the opportunity, that has programs, to help them to heal, to give them a safe place to be, to feed them so they're not food insecurity, and to educate them, and give them the opportunity to learn the tools to be chronically resilient. And that's what we need to get through our day-to-day lives, is to be resilient and not have things thrown in your pathway that can stop you or be one paycheck away, and not have the hope that you can figure it out and you can move forward. My mother always taught me, you have to teach people to love and be loved. And I think St. John's offers that. They offer these women a place to be loved and to teach them then to be able to love, and that just multiplies from generation to generation. A lot of this has to do with multigenerational poverty, as you know. So this is a great opportunity to stop that cycle, and having a low barrier and opportunity for drugs and alcohol is not a good place for women and children. So please, please, keep that in your heart.
Jaclyn Thomas? Jaclyn Thomas? Ah, thank you.
My name's Jaclyn Thomas, and I'm speaking on behalf of St. John's. I actually was just sitting there and just listening, and both sides have wonderful arguments. However, I'm alumni from St. John's. I have almost four years clean and sober, and they saved my life. I had a CPS case when I came to St. John's, and I hear a lot of good points on both sides, but I just wanted to bring up the side about CPS. I had a CPS case when I was at St. John's and actually reunited with my son. If St. John's wasn't the program that they were, then I would have never reunited with my son, because I have 20 years of domestic violence in my history, drug addiction, alcohol abuse, you name it, everything. Okay? And I know that you guys probably won't, you know, I have a funny feeling that they won't get the funding. However, I'm hoping and urging you that you will somehow find a end budget or whatever, however that goes, I don't really know, to partner with them still, because both sides have wonderful points. However, I can just only speak on the factor of that, and I'm really nervous, I'm sorry. I just can't speak on the factor of what they've done to save my life. And I have my children, and I have my own apartment, I'm clean and sober, I have a full-time job, I have my own, I mean, man, the list goes on and on. And I just really wanted to kind of put a face for you guys for the program that helped save my life. So hopefully, you'll be able to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. She's the last speaker I have today. Did we miss anybody? Okay, thanks. We'll close that part of the hearing and go to Board comments. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question before I make some comments. As I understand the staff report, I want to be clear on this point, and I indicated to staff I was going to ask a question, that under the request for proposals, we have the ability to, unlike when we had the conversation back last summer, fall, to fund three proposals? Is that correct? We could do that up to three?
The RFP did say we could fund one, two, three programs. And as I stated earlier, the funding availability covers all of one and part of two.
Right, okay. So that answers that part of the question, maybe this other part of the question then. Do we have the ability to augment the amount of money in the event this Board chose to do so?
I don't have any further allocations in my department.
This is a general fund allocation, anyway.
Ms. County Counsel, can you respond to that?
What you're asking for, is there additional general fund money? That would be a question for the...
No, I'm asking, can we put that in there?
Oh, but under this RFP, it has parameters, and I'm sure a funding stream upon which it's based.
I guess I want to know, can the Board put more money in the pot if we chose to do that today? Are we restricted? Because what I heard before, we were restricted. This is general fund dollars, and if we don't, you know, and we have a recommendation, we can fund up to three, so do we have the ability to do that?
Supervisors, my understanding that because we put out an RFP for up to $540,000, potential respondents responded based on that amount, and if there's additional funding provided, I'm not sure if that is allowable or not, because other funders, other agencies may have wanted to submit a proposal if it went beyond the $540,000. But I defer to Counsel on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'd like to have an answer, though, because I had, we had the answer back last fall. We couldn't augment, we couldn't fund more than one. People put in what they thought they could use and what they needed. And so I guess I just need to know, can we or can't we augment this under the consideration before us today?
Paul Lake said what I meant to say, and what I hear you saying is, can you do something in addition to this?
Right, exactly.
The terms of this RFP are set as they were competitively bid. That's your limitation for this. Can you do something, something different, something additional, separate and apart from the RFP at a separate time? Yes.
Okay.
Would it be subject to an RFP?
Well, a competitive bid would be recommended based upon the competitive nature of the services requested.
Okay, so here we are, five months later, I'm going to express some frustration, we're in that we had additional proposals irrespective of who's being recommended, and we had an amount to bid to... You're telling us, either for what Paul said or from legal counsel, that we can't augment that and either fund more to the two that are recommended, or fund a third? Is that what I'm understanding? We cannot do that today with, by adding additional dollars. I just want to be clear, because...
You were clear, that's a question.
No, I know.
Could someone answer the question?
This was bid as a finite amount. The flexibility came within that amount and within the bidding process. Could it be, could it be divided by thirds? That was proposed. That was what was reviewed, that what was independently rated. But now you're coming to the point of the recommendation and doing something different. So changing the dollar amount would be, would be, would be setting it back. If you want to not, not bid, or rather not grant, and have a new proposal, yes, you could do that.
Okay, I...
So if I understand what she's saying is that this proposal is limited out, so there's not a way to add money to this proposal?
Not at this time.
Yeah. Unless she rejected the bids.
Unless she reject it, right.
Okay. At some future date, I want to have a conversation about the limitations for this Board, because we, when we go to a fair competitive proposal, and if we were to say that we wanted to fund more to the two that, even we took out the third out of the consideration, you're saying we don't have the ability to augment that on a four-fifths vote of this Board right here and now? And I find that terribly distressing, and again, that may be the legal advice we get, because I've truly thought we could have that conversation here today. I asked the question yesterday in another session, I didn't get the answer, I got here today. And that, to me, is very distressing, that, recognize, there's process. I'm not saying cut anybody out of the process. I'm saying if we want to add more, because we hear compelling need. And there's compelling need in this room, as represented by all the folks that weighed in. And so what I'm being told, as a Board member, the entirety of the Board, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just want to be clear on this, because this is a very important point. I thought we got past this last fall, when we said we're going to put money out there, we put an amount. I thought, again, using process, we could change that. But you're telling me that we can't stop...
That was in an RFP process, Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, it was. It was...
And we had an RFP process, and today we have the results in our staff report.
I understand that. But the last time we had this discussion, we had an RFP process, we were limited, because we only had, the RFP said you could only award to one party, and that we couldn't augment and to fund a second party. Now I'm going to say, we couldn't even fund more to the second party here.
I'm not limiting the Board's discretion whatsoever. I'm limiting it to the terms of this RFP.
Yeah, but you are limiting the Board's discretion, because what I'm hearing is that we don't have the ability to augment, and that's very frustrating to me, because I guess I want to just say my comments if I could, then we can turn to the Board members. Is that, my view is, is that when you have a public hearing, you hear from the parties that are in an RFP proposal, that you hear from the parties about what's being recommended, their support for it, or doing something else. And we've heard compelling need by the folks that, all the folks that have spoken here. And so we gave ourselves the opportunity to fund up to three. And I cannot, for the life of me, understand why we couldn't augment that if we chose to. I'm not saying anybody else even has it in their mind. And that is very, very frustrating to me, because, and I'm going to say this, because this is what I believe, is that in a fair process, folks are being recommended, but I also see where, and that's why I asked Ann earlier, about how this was determined in the RFP, and what the criteria was. And one of them was that we could expand capacity or enhance services. And I would think that if we wanted to do that, and a lot of it was being recommended by staff, staff made those determinations. And so now, we're at the point where we make a determination, we're being saying, no, you can only divide the pot, you can't add to the pot. And for the life of me, in the years I've served on this Board, I can't understand why you can't add to the pot of money. And that's distressing to me, because I think we are basically missing the mark when it comes to women and children.
Okay. Patrick Kennedy?
I have to respectfully disagree with my colleague, and I understand your frustration, because we're all frustrated that we don't have more to work with and can't help all of the fine organizations that come before us. But, and someone who has represented many, many organizations who have responded to public RFPs, changing the rules at the end of the game is simply not fair. Everybody responded to the same RFP, and changing the dollar amount changes the response to the RFP. You won't respond the same way with a different dollar amount. So by changing it now, we make it completely unfair to those who have responded, and even those who chose not to respond. So, you know, I think that we set the rules, and we stick to the rules. And changing the rules now is something that not only I don't think it's legal, but I don't think it's out of fairness.
Thank you. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Just to Mr. Natoli's point, I want some clarity, too, because I think I know the answer, but I... the answer, but I want to hear it from County Council. It may be the case that we have limited ability to adjust the amount in the context, now, in the context of this RFP, but, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we were even at this point is because last fall, there was another contract award, there was ample discussion by this board, there was an intent expressed about wanting to do more, that set in motion this process. So, my understanding is that if, again, not suggesting, I'm just saying, as an example, the board could say, well, we still haven't done enough, we want to have yet a third process, or we want to have a separate discussion later to do even more, that's maybe specifically targeted to a particular subpopulation of the homeless community in Sacramento. Could we not?
That's exactly what's been put in place, yes.
Okay. Just for clarity, I just want to make sure that that option's understood by everyone.
Sure. You want to make a motion out of effect, I'll second it, I'll make the motion, that sounds good to me.
I think that would come back to budget time. If you're talking about putting more money out.
Well, we did it the last time, right out of the process, we could say we wanted to go for...
It was part of the budget process.
It was part of the RFP award, if I'm not mistaken.
It was, it was a week after the budget, but it was...
Yes, it was.
We had some ability at that point to move some funds. We identified in the budget process, the dollar amount, then we did the RFP award, and in the process that, we just discussed, we went through that.
Now, are we limited, though, in terms of our ability to forecast another opportunity here? And does it always have to, I think I also know the answer to this, too, does it always have to take the shape of a competitive bid process? It cannot be an intention expressed here today for some kind of sole source consideration later, right?
Well, as I said in the fall, competitive process, a fair and open process is the most recommended, the most defensible. Here, we would be looking to, if you're, if you're going to address specialized services, you would, you know, look for addressing a need, and for any and all prior services to be fiscally cleared and a correct fiduciary action taken on behalf of the board.
Right. So, because we are at, what, February, and, you know, our budget activities, you know, they begin in earnest here shortly, I mean, this is a conversation that we could have at budget, is it not?
That is correct.
Supervisor Frost?
Ann, I wonder if you can, it's my understanding that we're still working through some, some issues with prior contracts, a prior contract with St. John's. I wonder if you can give us an update on that, and if County Council can possibly chime in on that.
Sure, there are two processes underway. One, where Mr. Ferguson, the chief financial officer for the county, and myself and my team have been working to address some issues that were raised last September, I believe, or during the budget process. So we're working through a fiscal and program review with St. John's, and that is currently underway. We also are attempting to resolve some invoicing issues with a different contract that we have with St. John's. We are, we thought we would have a meeting this week, but it's now, looks like it's going to be either next week or the following week, a meeting with the State Department of Social Services, DHA, USDA, Food and Nutrition Services, and St. John's to resolve some of those issues.
So at this time, could we award St. John's funding based on the situation at hand?
The letter from the state advises that county general funds would be at risk if they're made at this time.
I would not recommend it until we resolve the issues that are pending.
Okay. Anything else?
So, with that, I'm prepared to move staff's recommendation. I think Saint, the work that St. John's does is great, and hope to be able to work with St. John's again in the future with different contracts. I think at this time, we're still working through some issues, and we have some specific needs that we have identified in the RFP, and so, based on the staff's recommendation, I'm happy to move approval.
Second.
Hey, we have a couple more comments. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I'd like to, just to follow on to Supervisor Serna's line of questioning, so if in fact, this was going to move forward as the motion suggests, then I would, for one, would like to, allow us to have a focused conversation pre-budget about other gaps in services, and certainly as it relates to what I said a moment ago, I believe, when it comes to women and children, that it was identified in this particular staff report, so I'd like to have that conversation about what money we might at least begin to take a look at, obviously for this board's discussion and decision in the June timeframe. So I would like to have us do that, and again, that doesn't necessarily incorporate in a motion, I'd be fine if they didn't make a motion, would be willing to incorporate that. Again, it doesn't minus anything, but it certainly gives us the ability to take a look at it, keeps the focus on it, and...
Let's hear from Mr. Serna first.
I was going to make the similar suggestion, and maybe put a finer point on it in terms of have that conversation well ahead of a budget with a particular focus on women and children, and that, you know, how that is understood as a particular gap here in Sacramento County.
So that would be a second, an additional motion?
No, no, it's an agreement with Supervisor Natoli, and I believe he's issuing that as an amendment, right, to the motion?
I don't know whether it was an amendment, I thought he said second, I thought he said it would be a second motion. I may have misunderstood.
No, no, I was going to say, I would like to see it incorporated in a motion, I suggested they make a motion.
Yeah, right, so I'm agreeing with amendment to the...
Are we amending my motion?
Yes.
So, you know, the challenge I have here is that the county has some very specific programs that we're working our way through to get, we're trying to get things going as quickly as we can with the money that's already been appropriated. So are you saying you, you want to add funding to that?
No, no.
Because we haven't even put to work what we're working on now, so...
It's about expressing an intent with this motion to approve staff recommendation, but that we have a...
A workshop?
An open session, board conversation about specific gaps, and I'm, in our continuum of care for our homeless community, and I'm saying that I'd like to have a specific conversation about the gap as it affects women and children. Right.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, as am I.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Please vote.[1087.08][1087.08](APPLAUSE).
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that ends our morning session. I had said, it's still, yeah, 2:10. I had said earlier, we were going to move the planning items to 2:00, but now we're going to move those to our next meeting, which is two weeks, I think.
On March 6.
Pardon me?
March 6.
March 6, okay. And...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought it was February.
February the 27th.
February 27th. Sorry, we're still in session, could you please leave quietly?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a...
To continue?
Motion to drop order.
It says a continue or drop?
Continue.
Continue.
Move to continue, second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
The closed session is canceled until that same...
Will be rescheduled.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could, the item on TOT is an internal staff item, we can take that as a last item in the afternoon, if you want to take the 2:15 item first.
Okay, so we'll be back, well, we're not coming back in seven minutes.
Take nominations.
Okay, we can take nominations now, but then I think we'll come back in session at 2:45.
Okay.
Okay, nominations are item number...
53.
Three. Ask security to get the doors closed, please. Hey, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay. For your nominations, today you are continuing to March...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay.[1186.58][1186.58](APPLAUSE).
Just get the door closed. Thank you. Go ahead.
You are continuing to March 6, the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and today we have the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Keep the filing open and continue to March 20, please.
Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Have the filing remain open and continue to March 20.
County Planning Commission, Mr. Serna?
I'd like to reappoint to Karen Martenson and waive the process.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Ms. Peters?
District 3, nominate Peter Titishi and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Ferrocks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Nominate incumbent Alyssa Sabatini, incumbent Raymond Irwin, and incumbent Rebecca Friedman.
Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Please recommend Navinder Kairay for family general practitioner seat, filing to stay open for remaining seats, and continue to March 6.
Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Frost?
Move to February 27.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Mr. Serna?
I'd like to nominate Ashley Jun and waive the process.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes your nominations.
So when we come back, we're going to go to item 52?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got 35 minutes to inhale lunch.
35 minutes, yes, for lunch, and we'll be back.[1298.42][1298.42](APPLAUSE). I'd like to call this meeting back to order, February 6, 2018, of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item 52, the Sacramento County Hotel Worker Protection Act of 2018, introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 4.75, Title IV, to the Sacramento County Code, requiring hotel employees assigned to work in guest rooms to be equipped with portable emergency panic button or notification device, waive full reading and continue to February 27 for adoption.
Ms. Planning Director?
Good afternoon, Leanne Moffett, your County Planning Director. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I do have some introductory remarks. We are here today with an ordinance that would apply to hotels and motels within the unincorporated county that have, as proposed, 25 rooms or more in each facility, and this ordinance would require that each hotel provide their workers with a hotel panic button or panic device that would be available to call for help from a hotel manager or other appropriate security folks in case there is harassment of the hotel worker occurring. And it would also require each hotel or motel to have written sexual harassment policies in order to protect workers from such harassment. So the ordinance is attached to your board materials, it's a fairly brief ordinance, very, very targeted, and is being introduced today for your consideration.
Okay, questions for staff? Quite a few people signed up to speak.
I just had one comment.
Oh, you do have a comment, sorry, I didn't see your name come up just now. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff, our CEO, and planning director for bringing this back to the board. You'll recall that I asked that this be brought before the board at the end of our calendar year, last year, in fact, at the conclusion of our last hearing last year, having done some research about what other jurisdictions had pursued, including the city of Chicago and the city of Seattle, to institute similar policies requiring panic buttons and hotel guest sexual harassment policies. And that's really was the genesis of the thought process about how that might apply here in Sacramento County. I'm going to get to hear from the people that took time out of their busy days to join us here in chambers, and look forward to a healthy discussion by this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
So I wanted, I had a couple of questions. I went on the county website, and it listed some of the sexual assaults in the last year, around 144, only nine of those were hotel motel. And I am curious as to, I know other jurisdictions and other states have done this, I guess, passed an ordinance like this. I know that the state legislature is working on this very type of ordinance, right, actually just initiated the process at the state level. So I'm not sure why we're going into this now when it could go through several iterations before it gets to an end result at the legislature. But the question I have, the specific question I have, is relating to, do we have a problem? Because if, out of 144 sexual assaults that happened in the county, in the unincorporated county, only nine of those were hotel motel, three of those were from the Courtyard Inn, and none of them were hotel employees. They were, you know, people who were staying at the hotel, or incidents that happened outside hotel employees. So I wanted to, you've made a recommendation that we have this ordinance, and I'm wondering, do, what do you base the need for this on in the unincorporated county?
I do have to admit, as staff, we have not done independent research on the number of assaults that have happened in hotels, so I don't have a specific answer for your question. We'd have to look into that.
If I could, just on that note, I think the nature of our recommendation is, we got a request from a supervisor to look into it, and as we looked into it, we did see merit to bring something back, that if this is an issue, realize this is the six that you just brought up, is to encourage our hotel folks to comply with any of the sexual harassment policies, a panic button. So that was the nature of why we brought it back, and we're not suggesting by bringing this that there's a widespread issue that assaults are there. I think we have testimony today that could shed more light to it, but ours was more, there was a request made, we looked at the different ordinances, what could we do with it, and that's the nature of what we brought back, if the board is so inclined to do, here's a framework for you to put some policy in place. So that's why, when planning looked at it, that's why we brought it back.
And then, so my other question is, why are we singling out the hotel industry? Because when we make, when we pass an ordinance like this, it's not just a matter of them purchasing, I guess, this wristband that has this noise maker on it, it's, they have to put together a sexual harassment policy, which, you know, I'm sure that's not a bad thing, but this creates an expense to the hotel industry, and it singles them out, but there are other industries where, I mean, there's sexual harassment everywhere. We have those kind of situations in every business. So to single out one industry, I wonder if that's fair? I'm wondering why we're singling out that one industry unless we have a problem in Sacramento County that we can say, you know, that we're responding to. So I wonder if there's a way that we can get a report back from the sheriff to identify, you know, in the unincorporated county, you know, what are the stats on sexual harassment as a whole? And so that's something I would, information I would like to see, and I guess that's right, that's all for now, I'll wait to hear the rest.
Just one...
Can I, can I offer some, some information that is relevant not to Sacramento County, to fairly state that? But in the city of Chicago, for instance, there was a survey taken, so it was a survey that was administered to a population of female house... taken, so it was a survey that was administered to a population of female housekeepers, hotel housekeepers. So it's not based on police reports, because oftentimes, we'll find that there's no reporting, because there's a real reluctance to report. So these were, this is a survey instrument that was applied, that found that 58% of women surveyed, again, female hotel housekeepers, had been sexually harassed or assaulted, almost 60%. 42% had experienced being exposed to by a guest. And to me, even though that's in a different part of the country, one would have to assume that somehow sexual assault and harassment is somehow isolated geographically, which I personally don't believe that to be the case. So I just want to be clear, that was a lot of the inspiration for, again, my own thought process on this, and the reason why I asked for this to come back to the board.
Okay. I'm sorry, Patrick, can, Ms. Kennedy?
I just want to chime in there as well and say that, you know, as far as reporting statistics, this is an area in which reporting statistics are about as inaccurate as you could probably get because of the lack of reporting. You know, and we're talking about some of the most vulnerable members of our society, of our workforce, who are there, who have reason to fear reporting. So I think by, just by the fact that you don't see it in the statistics online, we would be foolish and irresponsible to assume that that means it's not taking place.
Okay. Anything else before I take public comment? Okay, my first speaker is Beth Hassett. Then Enriqueta, and Jenny, and Maria.
Good afternoon. I am Beth Hassett, the CEO of Weave, and we are the Rape Crisis Center for Sacramento County, and work regularly with victims of sexual assault, as well as sexual harassment and sexual abuse. And I can tell you, sexual assault and rape are grossly under-reported crimes. Sexual harassment, especially in the workplace, and especially when it's perpetrated by males with power over females who have no power, is never reported. And the thing that I like about this ordinance is, you can give somebody a panic button, and that in and of itself is just a tool, but when you pair it with policy that provides protections and safety for those workers, so they feel comfortable coming forward and saying something, and feel that their jobs are not going to be in jeopardy, and a change of culture in that workplace. And let's bear in mind, a hotel or motel is a very personal, strange workplace, if you really think about it. Where else do employees go into people's bedrooms and bathrooms on a regular basis? It's just rife for people who are wanting to perpetrate this type of violence against someone. So I look forward to continued vetting. I love statistics, and I fear that there won't be the rich stats that we'd like to see, because it is such an under-reported and invisible crime. And I look forward to partnering in any way with the county as you move forward in making the right decision for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Enriqueta?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Enriqueta.
So my name is Enriqueta.
Yo he trabajado por los últimos doce años en hoteles muy reconocidos.
So I've been working 12 years at hotels that you guys are very familiar with.
Aquí en el área de Sacramento.
Here in Sacramento.
He tenido muy malas experiencias.
I've had bad experiences.
En una ocasión, un guest pidió algo y yo lo llevé.
At one time, a guest asked for something, and I went to take it to them.
Él me dijo que me sentara con él en la cama y me empezó a enseñar bastante dinero.
So he told me to sit on the bed and showed me a lot of money.
Inmediatamente me salí.
And immediately, I left.
En otra ocasión.
In another occasion.
Otro guest más agresivo.
Another guest who was more aggressive.
Estuve tocando el cuarto, nunca me contestó.
I was knocking on the door, and nobody answered.
Cuando abro la puerta, el señor estaba completamente desnudo en su cama.
So a man opened the door, and he was completely naked.
Y nada más me volvió a ver como sonriéndose, y yo inmediatamente.
So when I looked, he just was laughing.
Cerré la puerta.
Closed the door.
Lo repartí a mi supervisor.
So I reported it to my supervisor.
Platicando con mis compañeras.
And I talked to my coworkers.
Ese mismo guest.
That same guest.
Le ha pasado con varias compañeras cosas.
And had did, that same guest had did things to other coworkers of mine.
Muy desagradables.
And things that are not, I'm sorry.
Muy malas.
Yeah, bad things.
Y yo siento que no es justo que vayamos a trabajar con miedo.
So I feel that it's not fair that we go to work with fear.
Que no sabemos cómo nos van a tratar los guests.
That we don't know how guests is going to treat us.
Lo que vamos a ver, qué nos van a decir.
And what are we going to see? What are they going to tell us?
Me gustaría, me nos encantaría que ustedes pasaran esto.
So we would want you guys to pass this?
Para sentirnos seguras en este área de trabajo.
So that we can feel protected in our workplace.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thanks. Is it possible? Jenny Amaya?
Can we just ask if they're in the city or the unincorporated county to identify that?
Could you respond to that?
Yeah, with the Sacramento.
In Sacramento, city of Sacramento.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Amaya.
Y hoy estoy aquí.
I'm here today.
Para pedirles a ustedes que.
To ask you today to support us.
Y voten sí si pueden pasar una ley para nosotros los housekeepers.
And to pass the law for us housekeepers.
Yo trabajo 17 años en un hotel muy reconocido del área de Sacramento.
So I worked, I've been working 17 years in a very familiar hotel here in Sacramento.
Y yo he sido acosada constantemente.
So I've been sexually harassed consistently?
La última, la última vez que fui acosada.
The last time I was harassed?
Yo estaba limpiando el cuarto.
I was cleaning a room.
Y yo sentí que el guest del siguiente cuarto abría la puerta y me vigilaba.
So I felt a guest open the door and kind of was like, looking at me.
Y yo, este, estuve miedo, seguí vigilando.
So I was scared.
Limpié un cuarto y.
I cleaned one of my rooms.
Él salió desnudo.
And he came out naked.
Entonces cuando él miró que yo lo estaba vigilando, ver qué iba a ser.
So when he saw me, watch him, what he was going to do?
Me moví a otro cuarto.
I went to a different room.
Él seguía vigilándome.
So he kept on watching me?
Cerré la puerta.
I closed the door.
Llamé a mi manager.
I called my manager.
Inmediatamente me mandaron a seguridad.
Immediately, they sent me security.
Y el hombre se fue en ese momento.
That man left at the moment.
El hombre no tenía equipaje en el cuarto.
So he didn't have any luggage in the room?
Él había comprado comida con tarjetas que no tenían fondos.
He used credit cards that didn't have funds to buy food?
En ese momento bajaron y chequearon las cámaras.
So at that moment, they came and checked the cameras?
Esta persona no fue reconocida porque se tapaba la cara al salir y entrar al hotel.
So this particular guest was, on the video, it showed that he covered his face when he would go in and out of the hotel.
Inmediatamente me movieron a otro piso y me dijeron que no regresara.
So immediately, my manager sent me to a different floor to do my work.
Porque esta era una persona, era un delincuente.
So it was a delinquent.
En otra ocasión.
Another occasion?
You passed your time. If you could, please wind up your comments. Thank you so much.
Okay, si quieres nomás decir un resumen del fin. Pues eso me pasó tres veces.
So this happened to me three times.
Ahorita últimamente, el último le toqué tres veces, no.
The last time, I knocked three times on the door?
Y él ya estaba desnudo a un paso de yo entrar a la puerta.
So as I would go into the door, he was naked.
Masturbando.
He was masturbating.
Y otra vez pues, no, mi seguridad subió y me quitó.
Again, security came and took me to another room.
Please wind up your comments.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Maria? Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es María Segoviano.
My name is María Segoviano.
Tengo ocho años trabajando para un hotel muy reconocido aquí en Sacramento.
I've been working here in Sacramento at a familiar hotel for eight years.
Yo tuve una experiencia con un cliente pues desagradable.
So I had an experience as well with a bad guest.
And was this hotel in the city or the county?
Was the, in the city. County, it's the same either way.
No.
Well, county, I'm sorry.
We're the unincorporated area.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Me preguntó, en la mañana llegué, saqué mi carrito y me preguntó que.
So the guest asked me, I got my cart ready.
Que quién iba a limpiar su recámara.
Asked who was going to clean his room?
Y le dije que yo.
I said, I'm going to clean it.
Entonces se fue, yo vi cuando se fue y yo acudí a limpiarle su recámara.
So I saw when he left, and I went in to clean the room.
Cuando entré.
When I went inside.
Entré al baño y.
I went to the bathroom.
Pasaron como cinco minutos.
It was about five minutes.
Escuché la puerta.
I heard the door.
Y dije, hello.
And you said, hello?
Entró él y le digo, oh, necesita algo, me salgo.
And I asked him, do you need something?
Porque yo necesito que se salga para yo limpiarlo.
I need to, I need you to leave so that I can clean your room?
Y me dijo, sí, solamente voy a tomar mi teléfono.
He said, oh, I just need to get my phone.
Entonces yo tomé la puerta.
So I kind of held the door.
Para que él se saliera.
So he could leave.
Pero él entró así hacia la recámara y no se salía.
So he kind of came in and went to a certain area of the bed.
Y salió solamente ya con ropa interior.
And so when he came back out, he was only in his underwear.
Yo no le dije nada, solamente me salí.
So I didn't say anything, and I just left.
Me salí y ya pasó eso.
And that happened?
A lo mejor fue mi error que no, no lo reporté.
So I didn't report it.
Mi compañera me dijo, pues pasan cosas y nunca hace nada.
My coworkers made a comment and said, well, things happen, and, you know, sometimes they don't do anything about it.
Al día siguiente, yo creo.
The next day.
Él sale con su maleta para irse.
I saw that he left with his luggage to leave.
Dijo, bye.
And he said, bye.
Y le dije, bye, que tenga buen día.
I said, bye, have a good day.
Me fui a limpiar su cuarto, toqué, no había nadie.
I went to go clean his room. I knocked the door, nobody was there.
Pasaron otra vez cinco minutos.
About five minutes, six minutes, he came back.
Y le digo, olvidó algo.
I said, did you forget something?
Oh, sí.
Yes.
Me olvidó decirle.
I forgot to tell you.
Que yo la puedo llevar a donde usted quiera.
But I can take you anywhere you want to go.
Yo le dije, yo, excuse me.
I said, excuse me.
Dijo, sí, ¿cómo me dijiste que te llamaba?
He said, oh, what did you say your name is?
Could you, could you wind up your remarks?
Yep.
We have a two-minute limit, and you're almost at three.
So she's just saying that she went to kind of sign to where her name tag was, and he touched her there.
Y tocó mi, mi pecho.
And that he touched her breast.
Yo aventé su mano.
And I said, hey, don't do that.
No touch me y me salí.
And then she left. Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Espero que, que nos ayuden, porque es duro nuestro trabajo y.
She said, my, our job is very hard, and I hope that you help us.
Y estar aguantando todo esto. Gracias.
Thank you. Julia? Would you mind telling your other speakers that there's a two-minute limit, please?
Madam Chair, my name suggests that we give three minutes when they have.
Hold on.
When they have, okay, when they have the.
Yeah, middle story.
So my name is Julia Gonzalez, and I work in housekeeping.
In city or county?
County.
Okay. Unincorporated area?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Let's see this.
Tuve una experiencia hace unos 20 años.
So 20 years ago, I had an experience.
Toqué housekeeping.
So I knocked, said, housekeeping.
El guest me dijo que me pasara a hacer su cuarto.
So the guest told me, okay, you can come in to clean my room?
Él se metió al baño.
He went to the restroom, the guest?
Y yo agarré y le tendí la cama.
So I started making the bed?
Y yo pensé que luego se iba a salir del baño y se iba a ir.
And I thought he was going to leave the bathroom and leave the room.
Sacudí el cuarto.
So I started cleaning the room.
Y cuando yo regresé, el cliente estaba dentro del baño, pero estaba abierta la puerta.
He was still in the bathroom, and the bathroom door was open.
El espejo era muy grande al pasar yo.
And the mirror was really big.
Te lo vi por el espejo que estaba masturbando.
And I could see him in the mirror, he was masturbating.
Y yo agarré, me fui y ya no regresé.
So I got my stuff and I left.
Me fui a hacer otro cuarto.
I went to go clean another room.
Estaba lavando la tina y sentí que alguien me espabila.
And I was cleaning the bathtub, and I could feel somebody watching me.
Cuando yo voltea, era el mismo guest.
And when I looked, it was the same guest.
Me asusté.
He scared me.
Vi al hasmen allí que andaba aspirando.
I saw the houseperson vacuuming.
Y le dije lo que había pasado.
And I told him what happened.
Me dijo que no me preocupara que allí andara.
And he told me, oh, don't worry about it, and I'm going to call somebody.
Y otra ocasión.
Another occasion?
Otro cliente le toqué en otro hotel y le dije.
Another hotel, I knocked on the door, asking for the guest?
Que iba a hacer el servicio.
That I was going to give him service, and he told me, come in?
Que nada más el baño le hiciera.
Did just to clean the bathroom.
Entonces, este, yo le, le iba a hacer el baño.
So I was going to clean the bathroom?
Cuando él se acercó junto a mí, yo estaba contando las toallas.
When he got close to me, and I was picking up the towels?
Cuando yo voltea, él estaba encuerado.
And when I looked, he was naked.
Le dije, I'll be back.
I'll be back.
Avente todo.
And she dropped everything, and I left.
Ya no regresé.
And I didn't come back.
No le di servicio.
And I didn't give him service.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. Roxana?
Hello. Hi, my name is Roxana Tapia. I'm an organizer with Unite here, Local 49. Many other housekeepers have faced bad treatment from hotel guests, but they are embarrassed and scared to speak out. Many told me the same story. The guests don't answer when they knock on the door, and when they come in, the guest is naked or even masturbating. One of our housekeepers told me that she was, that she saw a guest leave the room and went into the, to start cleaning. While she was cleaning the bathroom, the guest returned. And with her stuck in the bathroom, he stripped naked and start, and began masturbating, right in front of her. She was able to run out of the room, but no one should be treated like this when they are just trying to do their job. Many of our members have been touched inappropriately by guests. Some have been asked where they live, what time they get off of work, and even follow around the hotel. Some guests even try to bribe housekeepers with dinners or money if they, if they do special favors for them. Housekeepers work alone on the empty guest floors, often with no one to hear them if they are called out. Many of our members have told me that they will feel better if they could get help immediately when they, they trap with this guest, sorry. We hope you vote yes today. Housekeeper's safety matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina?
Hi, my name is Gina Longo. I'm a lead organizer with Unite here, Local 49. As you've heard some of the testimony today, I just wanted to make it clear that Unite here has spoke with many, many of our members regarding sexual harassment in the workplace. Here locally in Sacramento County, you know, we have many hotel workers that we've talked to, and this is a problem countywide. We would, we are proud and are in full support of the Hotel Workers Protection Act, and we encourage you to vote yes today. Our Unite here has been a big role in the Me Too movement all over the country, but countywide, we believe that our workers in the industry need protections, and we are in full support of this.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you for translating today.
Thank you.
Erin? I'm just using first names, because several people said they didn't want me to use their last names, so.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm Erin Mori. I'm the board president of My Sister's House, the local organization that provides culturally responsive assistance to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, particularly those of the Asian Pacific Islander descent and all women of underserved color. So today's Supervisor Serna proposal of helping hotel workers, it's an important step, not only for sexual harassment, but for sexual assault. And what is especially significant about this ordinance is that, as we can see today, that it effectively addresses or removes language barriers. And that is what often many hotel workers face. And having this panic button is essential to combat those language barriers. As My Sister's House provides support for women, we see that many of them have had jobs in this field. And. And these women don't speak out for fear of retaliation, and so having this device is essential for them to do their job. So, as part of My Sister's House, I just wanna say that we are in support of the county as this ordinance moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Volma? Volma?
Good afternoon and thank you guys for having us here. I just wanna say, we can see the political climate in this country. And we can see women coming out and saying that they've been abused, women from Hollywood, a bunch of people with power. These folks here with Unite here, they have no power. They have no voice. So, what we are asking you guys is to be their voice and vote yes on this measure to give them peace of mind. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Volma. Fabrizio?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Fabrizio Sasso. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council. We have over a hundred unions affiliated with the Labor Council, 170,000 union members represented amongst those unions, including the hotel workers. We are here to express our support of this ordinance. You know, it's, sitting here and listening to these stories, it's gotta be pretty tough. And, but not as tough as actually living through this experience, through these traumatic experiences. You know, we have to applaud these workers' bravery and courageousness for coming forward today and talking and sharing their stories because they could be saving someone else in the process by letting their voices be heard. You know, the Me Too movement is not going away. It is here. It's all around us. It's at the national level. We hear about it at the Capitol. But we rarely hear stories about, we rarely hear stories about workers who are domestic workers or hotel workers because they are the ones that are mostly quiet about this because they're afraid of retaliation by their bosses. And also, their attackers aren't famous, quite frankly. So, there are thousands, maybe millions more of these types of stories that are being untold, and we can do something about it. You know, it's good to note that these workers are the most vulnerable in the workforce. They are working alone a lot of times. They are working at night. We know what happens in hotels at night. We've all stayed in hotels. We hear what goes on in the hallways and people coming in and out in different states of mind. And so, these workers should not be put in a position where they feel afraid to go to work every day, to be attacked. And hopefully, we can save them from that experience in the future and maybe even save some lives in the process, and we urge you to vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers I have signed up. Is there anyone here that didn't get a chance to speak? Okay, then. We'll move on to comments from the board. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention of something that's very important. We didn't hear from our mayor, Darrell Steinberg. He did, however, submit a letter of support that should have been distributed. It was addressed to me, but it should have been distributed to all five supervisory districts. And in the letter, the mayor not only communicates his support for this ordinance and encourages our iVote, but he's also referencing the fact that there is a similar effort that will take place soon at the city of Sacramento. So, I know there's been a lot of concern expressed by Supervisor Frost about, or interest, maybe not necessarily concern, about where the incidents occurred, whether it was in the incorporated city limits of one of the cities in our county or the unincorporated area. But again, I think this is unfortunately a very troubling trend of behavior, bad behavior. That doesn't respect political boundaries, doesn't respect whether, you know, you're staying in a hotel or working in a hotel in the city limits or not. And that's why it's important, I think, for us not to reinvent the wheel. We're looking, you know, again, the inspiration came from looking at what others have done to address this problem. I'm encouraged to know that the city of Sacramento is already expressing an interest in a similar measure that would protect hotel workers working in hotels within the city limits. Perhaps there's even political will that might emerge in some of the other cities within our county to do likewise. So, I know others may be in the queue to make comment, but I'd like to move adoption of the ordinance for a second.
Ms. Frost, then Mr. Kennedy, then Mr. Natoli.
I wanna start by expressing my appreciation to the women who have come forward to speak today, to have the courage to do so. And I have a little bit of an understanding of your situations, having worked in the emergency room, having had my own experiences in life. At the age of 62, you run into situations that are not good. And I just want to applaud you for being here. I do know that even if these types of situations are under-reported in the hotel industry, they're probably under-reported across the board. And so, I have concern relating to passing an ordinance without having done our research to understand, you know, what the landscape is and who is impacted by these sexual assaults. You know, what kind of impact across our unincorporated county. I'm also aware that at the state level, there is a movement underfoot, and they're working, actually gaining momentum at the legislature for a bill that's going to address this. And so, when we make an ordinance at the county or in one county, unincorporated county, or in one city, it kind of, it creates an uneven landscape as far as, you know, for business owners as to what the rules are. And it makes it more difficult, and it impacts how businesses can understand the rules and regulations of a region. It's, this to me is, you know, I think we need policy that is sensible, that is gonna, all of our employees should be protected at the county here and at every business. There are other businesses where these kind of things happen. I just think we haven't done enough research and that there's stuff going on at a much higher level that will actually filter down to all of us, that we should wait and see how things are going at the state level so that we can all go under one regulation. So, for that reason, I, at this time, it's not that I'm against protecting our employees. I think our employees need to be protected. I just am interested in having all the information before we make a decision on that.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I, you know, obviously, I agree with Mr. Sasso in that the Me Too movement is not going away, nor should it. We have to speak out against sexual harassment, sexual abuse clearly and be vigilant on it. Now, I do think that what we're talking about here is kinda like the Oscars, when the music plays, I have to stop. So, no. But.
I'm sorry, whoever that is, turn off the phone.
So, but, you know.
Thank you.
This is a workforce that is uniquely situated in that they put themselves in harm's way on a daily basis. Walking into a man's bedroom, basically, where the door can be locked behind you is a higher risk factor than most professions for this type of abuse. So, I do see that this is necessary. I do believe that as, you know, whether it's, you know, city, county, or wherever, it doesn't make any difference to me because whether or not everybody got up today to speak was working at a hotel within the incorporated part of Sacramento County. That's not to say that there aren't legions of women behind them in the unincorporated part of the county with the same exact issue. And I feel confident that that is the case. So, I wanna thank Mr. Serna for bringing this forward. Kind of gave me a, darn it, I wish I'd thought of that moment. So, I really appreciate your leadership on this, and that's why I'm supportive. Thank you.
Mr. Natoli?
I have a question before I make some comments. So, as far as enforcement of the ordinance, it's not clear as to who the enforcement entity would be. Would it be through code enforcement? Would it be through business licensing? And would this be a condition of receiving a business license? So, how are we structuring this?
Right. We have not written enforcement details into the ordinance. We would intend to enforce it through the business license process. So, probably the most likely scenario for verifying would be either planning staff verifying it or business license staff, and we could work that out. Alternatively, planning often does use code enforcement as an arm for our field work, so that might be the third option. So, we have multiple options for verifying, but we would seek to check to make sure that each hotel is doing this when their business licenses come up for their renewal.
Okay, so, in that verification, again, not knowing for certain how you would do that, but then you would ask for proof of the, a copy of their sexual harassment and any worker protection policy as relates to this ordinance? And then what about the physical devices that they would employ?
Yes, because it is new, I think we'd have to decide whether we might need to do some field visits to make sure. But we would be looking for proof of the harassment policies, and we'll have to determine whether we need to make field visits or not. There's a limited number of hotels, so that's probably pretty doable.
Right.
It's not a.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to practical terms. It's one thing to put it on paper, but then, you know, to make sure that we're able to follow through on it. Okay, well, I would just say that I'm supportive of what's presented here to us this afternoon. I would have hoped that we would have done a little broader notification. We reached out to the industry and representatives maybe in the audience, certainly, obviously, the workers are represented. Because as a part of this, once we adopt it, then we're gonna send them a copy of it and say, you know, guess what? So, I know my office received a couple of calls from hotel owners or operators that, you know, indicated some question about what we're taking up today. But generally, this makes good sense. I wanna certainly thank folks who've come forward here today and told their stories. Those aren't easy to tell nor to, certainly to recall. But I think they're examples of where, in some of those situations, if there'd been other devices available. As I know, one of the ladies mentioned that she called, and another one had called out to another worker. But in the event that there wasn't a phone available or there were some other trappings, I think this makes good sense for those that work in, again, a very fluid environment as relates to people coming in and out, goings, and most of them are guests in hotel, but not always. And one of the stories kinda recited that we're sure if the person was of nefarious doings or not. But I just think that something like this is, should be fairly simple to address. And, you know, whether they adopt it statewide or not, I guess that's to be seen. And certainly, the industry as well as, obviously, represented workers will have an opportunity in that setting to debate the merits or not. But I think from the standpoint of our community and, again, of those that live and work here and to provide services to folks who are staying in our accommodations and our guests here in this community, I wanna make sure that our workers are safe and certainly our guests as well. So, I'm supportive of this today.
Ms. Frost?
I have a question relating to the device. Does it ring through to the main office or does it just make a loud noise?
They have some flexibility. The key thing is, needs to be able to reach a person that is able to respond, not just another maid. So, what's written in the ordinance is the device needs to reach a manager or a security person or someone who is in a position to be able to come to the assistance.
So, I'm assuming a security because the hotel management probably isn't gonna instruct their employees to respond to a situation like that. That would create liability for the hotel.
Well, it could go to the manager.
So.
Depends on.
It could generate more 911 calls if they don't have security. Do most hotels have security? I don't know.
I would think most of the larger hotels have security.
If they're required to wire it to the front desk, that's hugely, I mean, that's a huge endeavor.
It doesn't have to be wired. It could be a wireless device. There is some flexibility for each hotel to pick a device that reaches someone who can come help the worker.
Thank you.
Okay. I would have preferred to wait for the state ordinance to be passed, but I'm fine going ahead with this, and it would be preempted by a state law. So, we'll just be ahead of the state a few months here, I think. So, I apologize to Guadalupe. We were too far along before I realized I hadn't seen your card. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just one, Madam Chair. I just wanna personally extend my gratitude to the Unite here Local 49 folks that, again, took time out of your day to be here and share some very difficult stories about your experience. But as you can see, it's really kinda carried the day in terms of impressing upon this board and emphasizing the need for this policy. So, again, gracias por todo.
I feel like all women who are working should carry a whistle. I think we've all been in that circumstance, and it is very difficult. So, thank you for that. No further questions, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay, then if I understand, we're going back to item 47?
That is correct.
Okay.
As Troy is making his way down, one of the commitments we made to the board was that last year, the question was on TO funding. At that point, we had recommended for the board set aside a million dollars to do some grant funding. We're back, and as we had committed, we're back to you today to also see if there's interest from the board. We're recommending another million dollars for next budget.
Let's pause a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could leave the room quietly so we can hear our county executive, sure appreciate it. In the front row there. Thank you. Okay.
In January of 2017, we did come to the board, and we made a recommendation of setting aside a million dollars out of our TO, Transit Occupancy Tax, to do some grant funding. And we had set out a process to how we wanted to allocate the money, who should get it. We had success with the process. We came to you in September where the board made some decisions on who should be funded. When we came to you in January of 17, we did commit to come back to you in a one-year timeframe to let you know if we're gonna make another recommendation. And that is the case that Troy is gonna talk about. We're gonna recommend setting aside another million dollars and also what the process should be. What we will be recommending is basically, we like the process that was set in place, the two-by-two, the two-by-two, the subcommittee that was formed. That did help us.
I got a little twitch there.
Gear slipped on me. But we are pretty excited about this process.
When screaming from the room.
So, with that, I wanna turn it over to Troy before I introduce something else that I didn't mean to introduce.
Thank you, Nav. Troy Givens with Sacramento County Department of Economic Development. I do have a PowerPoint. Today, I'd like to, I know it's getting late in the day, I'd like to give you a brief overview and background, talk a little bit about the 2017 process, our recommendations for 2018, and then any proposed adjustments that your board may wanna make as well. At the beginning of 2017, as Nav had mentioned, the board expressed interest in allocating a portion of Transit Occupancy Tax funds through a competitive application process. Based on that direction, staff came back to the board in February. In late February, your board approved a pilot program. As Nav had mentioned, you set aside a million dollars in the budget process to set up this competitive application to provide financial support to non. competitive application to provide financial support to nonprofit organizations and government entities for community-based programs and/or services in Sacramento County. Beginning in March of that year, the Office of Economic Development conducted significant outreach and advertisement. We partnered with several folks, including the Impact Foundry. We utilized the county's website, newsletters, social media, local chambers, P bids, Sacramento Region Community Foundation, and direct mail to over 300 nonprofits. We had a robust response. We had 149 applications. We had 18.5 million dollars in requests. So based on that volume and diversity, the county hired Shelley Willis, a local grant consultant, who helped us with this process. We came up with a two-step process which included subject expert panels, five of them, and then that panel scored applications and forwarded the scores to the TOT Grant Review Panel. As Nav had mentioned, this included two board members as well as three chiefs of staff from the remaining districts. On September 26, your board approved 31 applications and asked us to report back. Those 31 grant applications are in various processes of completion. We've received several invoices. We've processed those and paid those out. We've had two of those 31 grant applications are complete as far as their projects. The others are in process, and we expect over the next several months, we'll be receiving regular requests for invoices and verifying those and paying those out. We do recommend for 2018, 2019, that we continue the program, that your board establishes during the budget process the amount that they wish to fund this at, and that we designate two board members to oversee that TOT Grant Program Application and Review Panel as we did last year, and also include the three remaining chiefs of staff from the remaining board offices to represent that. Ultimately, that group helps formulate the recommendation that's made to your board. As it relates to the potential proposed changes, we have two major changes and three minor changes. As you can see on the left side of your screen, grantees, as it currently stands, must be of nonprofit or government entities. We're proposing that that, based on input from the consultant, from some of the applicants and some of the board feedback that we received, that that be limited to just nonprofit organizations at this point. The 12 applications that we received from government entities were more public works type of applications for improvements of sidewalks and other things of that nature that we thought would more appropriately be addressed in those jurisdictions, public works types of budgets. Proposals...
Just to pause there, Troy.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not particularly against that, but how do you compare that to Health and Human Services requests?
Well, we have Health and Human Services that come countywide as well. That is...
Yeah, well, so do the parks requests and the, you know...
Right.
I think the, one issue with that that we've had is that we have our own issues with sidewalks and roads.
Yeah.
And Health and Human Services is a countywide function that we perform for the whole county. When other jurisdictions started asking for grants or money to fix sidewalks and their potholes, it's where the rub came from.
I was thinking Sacramento County, not other jurisdictions. Okay. Mr. Natoli, do you want to speak now or at the end?
Yeah, just on that one, I'm going to speak to some of these others that goes down through, but since we're on that and have opened it up. Again, looking at that, there's a reason why I think we opened it pretty broadly. The park districts are partners, and so maybe they come in with something that would be joint with other organizations. I think about one that was funded was the Wayfinding down in the City of Gold. I utilized some of the district monies for that, but the idea was, because we talked about economic development, we spent a lot of time this time last year talking about that, and even as it relates to capital projects, you can get to it in a moment, it seems to me that we have our own issues with that, but basically, we're opening this up so folks can seek to do that. Now, I think, as it got ferreted out in the process, that most of those didn't rise in level. Some were very expensive. I remember some of those were multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars in their request, and some of these other limitations that are being proposed could, I think, make it much more difficult for them even to consider applying. But for one, I see park districts and maybe school districts and even other municipalities as being partners in the overall, and when we talk about economic development or community improvement, quality of life, we represent all those citizens as well. So, recognize these are county-generated TO tax, but I mean, we opened it pretty broadly, and unless there was some other problem, besides what you just said, I don't know why we would restrict it. They still got to float to the top as it relates to the committee structure and the analysis the consultant does, and ultimately, by our board making a determination. So I guess I'm not looking to limit it, very frankly, so.
We certainly have that option based on board direction. Okay, thanks. The second is proposals can be used for any public purpose. The one restriction we wanted to make a distinction of here is that, based on the feedback we had, the board wanted to put this money to more immediate use. So we wanted to restrict capital campaign projects that had multiple years of fundraising involved, where the money would just be camped for six or seven or 10-plus years in order to build a large project.
Shovel-ready.
Excuse me?
Shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready, correct.
But they can use it for capital improvements, it's just a capital campaign.
That's correct.
Sorry, I was making a joke.
Oh, sorry. No, I was, I'm sure though, I heard what you said, so they can actually do it. So, I know, I was making a joke.
We had, grant cycle could be used for one or two years. It's been our experience that two years presents a number of different challenges when these projects cross over, so we suggested that it's a one-year funding cycle. Again, shovel-ready, to your point earlier. We had a maximum funding level, or a minimum funding level, excuse me, of $20,000. We would propose to lower that down to 10 to broaden this out to as many groups as potentially possible. The third is, or the fifth is, excuse me, we had a maximum funding level of $500,000. It was our, what we discovered in that process is that if we did that $500,000 maximum, we would be funding a maximum of two projects. We heard clearly from the board at one point in time that we wanted to be as broad and diverse as possible and bring in as many potential organizations, so that cap seemed very high. In talking with the consultant and looking at the types of projects that we funded, we ended up with a recommendation of a maximum funding level of $50,000 that certainly, at your board's discretion, could be raised in this discussion if that is too restrictive. But we wanted to put that on the table for discussion. The last is we have a proposed schedule here. This timeline is based on feedback we received from applicants as well. We started the timeline last year during tax time. It was hard for some of the nonprofits to be responsive during that period, so we've moved it back. This will also allow us, if you remember during the process, I'm sure you all do, you had massive binders of information. We would like to move this entirely online, where we would streamline the information that you receive, so it's more effective and more efficient. It accommodates the timeline for the applicants better, and it would move that entire process, including the ranking that the expert panels go through online as well. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Natoli?
Just want to maybe comment on the maximum. You've, you know, pretty big haircut there, going from half a million. I think your point about if you just funded two of those, that would eat up all the money. But I guess I would suggest maybe make a maximum $100,000. That gives you some flexibility for a project that might be shovel-ready, that might be in any given year, something that they could deliver on, and again, it has to compete with everything else out there. So it seemed to me that that might be a little more reasonable, recognizing that you can't, you can do some things for $50,000, and hopefully, they bring match to the table and all the things we encourage them to do, but $100,000 is going to be a big deal for an organization that really has something spectacular they want to do, and that would be the capper, and we might see fit to fund it. So I would suggest we maximum fund it at $100,000. That's my thought.
Ms. Frost?
It wouldn't hurt my feelings if each of us had $100,000 instead of $50,000 to spend in our respective district. That's what I would like to see.
Is that what Dawn just suggested?
No.
No, district funds versus...
Each, last year, each of us had $50,000 at our discretion.
$100,000.
It was actually, in this process, we had $750,000 allocated to the highest ranking, and then each district had $50,000 to appoint to any one of those 149...
Oh, I think you meant in the budget, the district funds.
If I understand.
You meant the segregation of $50,000 each here. You're saying, in order to address district issues, if each district had a hundred instead of, so that'd take $500,000 off the table.
So it'd be 500 general and then $100,000 each district, but the universe of potential grantees would come from this list, right?
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd go along with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
No comments?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm also, I agreed with Ms. Natoli as well.
Yeah. On which?
Raising the, from 50 to potential 100.
Oh, 50 to 100, yeah.
Just as for maximum flexibility.
Okay, so with those two corrections?
Just one other, so how much from an administrative standpoint, are we still putting $200,000 a year into administering this as well?
The $200,000 is actually for the entirety of the program, not just this piece. So that includes the $7.2 million plus or minus that we administer through the entirety of the programs, including civic and board district monies.
Right.
It was never intended just to be for this piece.
Supervisor Kennedy speaks.
So while we're on that subject, and we kind of talked about this during these discussions, Chair Peters and I did, I'd like to take a look at the process that we have of administering these funds. For example, if I'm going to give $250 to a Little League, they have to fill out some...
20 pages.
Pretty arduous paperwork for such a thing. I mean, I think that we should revisit how we do that. It seems like it could be...
We keep talking about it, and it gets to be more pages.
It could be easier than it is.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Yeah. Plus ugly calls from accounting and finance and all that to the organizations.
I think there has been some review, we're doing...
Why don't you send all of us a copy of what it is? That'll probably help shorten the process.
Absolutely.
Because we've got, some are down to two pages and some are down to a...
They've been reduced significantly.
I've actually had organizations refuse a grant because they couldn't, it wasn't worth it to them.
Let us do this, let us look at it, we'll send you back what the streamlined version will be.
Within a fairly short amount of time.
Within the calendar year. I'm teasing, a joke.
It's late.
How long was shovel-ready?
Of course we'll be...
And one other comment, Troy, that we've talked about once or twice during the year, and that is, the application form was kind of put together on the fly, and I had occasion to talk to the Regional Foundation, who's in the business of administering grants and writing grant applications and that sort of thing, and they thought that there could be some improvements made to our form, so...
We agree with that assessment. We're in process of doing that.
They have big day of giving at the beginning of May, so you're close to running out of time if you're going to meet this deadline.
They've been a very supportive partner in helping us bounce off ideas, so we will definitely implement that.
Okay, terrific. So with the two changes of 50 to 100, and, 50 to 100, yeah, 50 to 100.
Twice.
Yeah, twice, times two.
We need two board members, and tell us...
Oh, it should always be the vice chair.
Don't you think so?
Anyone else want to volunteer?
I think you do.
Well, maybe we'll do it one more time to kind of get the process set and going since we've been through it, even though Crystal did such a great job last year. She organized the heck out of us.
She did a great job.
Yeah. Okay?
A lot less.
That's our intent.
Okay, so I'm looking for the actions. There are recommendations, so we move the staff recommendation with those two changes. Is there a second?
Okay.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
You have to get healthy first.
Thank you.
Just clever, so are we leaving park district, because the library and other government entities, are they left out of the mix with that?
I didn't hear any other comments about it, other than the one you made, Dawn.
Okay. Okay. I guess they're left out.
Any comments from the county executive?
None.
Okay, comments from board members? I do have one I'd like to address today to adjourn in memory of MD Marty Tarsus. Last month, Marty Tarsus, who was Sacramento County's second county executive, passed away at age 99. He served our county from January 1956 through 1968, when he left to take a similar position with San Mateo County. During his tenure at the county, he directed the modernization and reorganization of our county government and completed several major projects, including the planning and development of our regional park system, the planning and construction of Sacramento Metropolitan, now International Airport, and construction of numerous county facilities, including the courthouse. In 2011, Sacramento County honored him by naming a conference room in the county executive's office on the seventh floor. He was responsible for shaping our county government today that serves more than 1.5 million people. I think it's proper that we adjourn today in his memory. So we will close today's meeting in memory of Marty Tarsus.